Good morning and welcome to the New York City Council hearing of the Committee on Zoning and Franchises. At this time, can everybody please silence your cell phone? If you wish to testify, please go to the back of the room to fill out a testimony slip with the Sergeant at Arms and make sure that you put the project number, project name. At this time going forward, no one is to approach today's, I repeat, no one is to approach today's. Chair, we are ready to begin.
Good morning, everyone, and happy new year. Welcome to the first meeting of the Subcommittee on Zoning and Franchises in 2025. I hope everyone had a great holiday. I'm Councilmember Kevin Riley, Chair of this Subcommittee. I'm joined today remotely by Councilmember Moya, Councilmember Abreu, and in the chambers by Councilmember Carr, Councilmember Salam, Councilmember Rivera, and Councilmember Narcisse. Today, we are scheduled to hold six hearings. These include the proposed mapping of a commercial overlay related to property in White Stone, Queens, a rezoning to develop a mixed-use building in Sheep's Head Bay, Brooklyn, a rezoning to develop a mixed-use building in Mount Haven section of the Bronx, a rezoning of formerly commercial site in Windsor Terrace, Brooklyn, a redevelopment plan by the New York City Economic Development Corporation to redevelop several city-owned parcels into a new life science campus in Kips Bay, Manhattan, and a rezoning to facilitate a new commercial life science building also in Kips Bay and across the street from the proposed EDC campus. Before opening the first hearing, I will go over the hearing procedures. This meeting is being held in hybrid format. Members of the public who wish to testify may testify in person or through Zoom. Those wishing to testify remotely may register by visiting the New York City Council's website at www.council.nyc.gov/landuse to sign up. If you are here in person, please see one of the Sergeant at Arms to prepare and submit a speaker's card. Members of the public may also view a live stream broadcast of this meeting at the Council's website. We will limit public testimony to two minutes per witness. Members of the public may also submit written testimony through email to landustestimony@council.nyc.gov. Written testimony may be submitted up to three days after the hearing is closed. Please indicate the LU number and/or the project name in the subject line of your email. We request that the witnesses joining us remotely remain in the meeting until you are excused by myself because councilmembers may have questions. Lastly, for everyone attending today's meeting, this is a government proceeding and decorum must be observed at all times. Members of the public are asked not to speak during the meeting unless you are testifying. The witness table is reserved for people who are called to testify, and no video recording or photography is allowed from the witness table. Further, members of the public may not present audio or video recordings as testimony but may submit transcripts of such recordings to the Sergeant at Arms for inclusion in the hearing record. I will now open the public hearing on LU number 214, 215, and 216 regarding the rezoning proposal relating to a proposed new commercial life science building also in the Kips Bay neighborhood, a block from the proposed Spark development, but this one being located in Councilmember Rivera's district. The applicant, including EDC and a private developer, proposed a new commercial life science building of approximately 359,000 square feet. For anyone wishing to testify on these items remotely, you must register online through the Council's website at council.nyc.gov/landuse. And once again, for anyone with us in person, please see one of the sergeants to prepare and submit a speaker's card. If you prefer, excuse me, if you prefer to submit written testimony, you can always do so by emailing it to landustestimony@council.nyc.gov. And now, I would now like to give it to Councilmember Rivera, see if she has any open remarks.
Thank you so much. Good morning, everyone. Thank you for being here and for being so committed to your community and to your city. I want to thank the Chair for his leadership and everyone at the Council who is involved with this project, 455 First Avenue Innovation East, which is a part of what we see is this larger map of a life sciences corridor, a biotech area that includes Spark and Kips Bay, which is very exciting. Again, I want to thank Chair Riley for the opportunity to say a few words about Innovation East and the city's vision for a life sciences corridor on First Avenue in Kips Bay. Innovation East at 455 First Avenue is one piece of a larger initiative to make the Kips Bay neighborhood a destination for life sciences and the healthcare industry. Life Sciences is a dynamic and growing industry that provides high-wage jobs in a variety of fields, including sciences, research, technology, administration, healthcare, and direct service care. And may I add that we ensure that the jobs to create these buildings are also high-paying and, of course, sustainable. Kips Bay is especially well-suited to serve these industries with proximity to local hospitals such as NYU Langone and Bellevue with Health and Hospitals. This area has also attracted similar investments from life science developers and has become a biotech corridor that includes adjacent bustling parts of my district I have been proud to support. As we review the redevelopment proposal, we must ensure our community and city benefits beyond the project's scope in that economic activity continues adjacent and, of course, beyond the very building itself. There must be investments in the public realm, housing, and quality-of-life improvements that speak to the needs of existing residents, ensure the neighborhood amenities such as Bellevue South Park and our transit system are adequately invested in and never overburdened. Our community must see that this space in the building serves as a meeting place for civic engagement and that the development team and tenants of the building make concerted efforts to partner with public high schools and, of course, young people of all backgrounds to provide pathways for opportunity, apprenticeships, and much more. I appreciate the work that EDC has done with the Community Board and their Kips Bay Task Force, and I look forward to working together to ensure the public benefit of this project is clear and memorialized. Thank you very much, Chair Riley.
Thank you, Councilmember Rivera. I just want to say for the record, we've been joined by Councilmember Powers. I will now call the applicant panel for this proposal, which consists of Ben Bakash and Melissa Sarko. Council, please administer the affirmation.
Panelists, would you please raise your right hands, and then I will ask you in order to answer the following question. Do you affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth in your testimony before this Subcommittee and in answer to all Councilmember questions? Mr. Bakash?
Yes.
Melissa Sarko?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. And for the viewing public, if you need a accessible version of this presentation, please send an email request to landustestimony@council.nyc.gov. The applicant team may begin. Before you begin, I just ask that you please reinstate your name and organization for the record. You may begin.
Thank you very much, Chair. My name is-
Ben, you could just press the button. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Chair. My name is Ben Bakash from Taconic Partners, joined by Melissa Sarko of NEAD Architects. We're here to present Innovation East, a proposed new life science building at 455 First Avenue. Slide, please. I'll introduce the project partners. Of course, the New York City Economic Development Corporation. Innovation East is part of EDC's broader life science initiative in New York City. Taconic Partners and subsidiary Elevate Research Properties. We are experienced developers of commercial life sciences spaces here in New York. Our partners from Divco West, developers of leading life science ecosystems across the country, and the NYU Grossman School of Medicine that will serve as the building's anchor tenant. So the EDC has selected this group of world-class commercial life science to develop a world-class commercial life science facility on this site in the First Avenue Health and Sciences Corridor to complement their broader life science initiative. Slide, please. Innovation East will advance the city's goals to grow the life science sector along First Avenue. It will replace the outmoded Public Health Lab that currently sits on the site. That building was built in 1964 and is not appropriate for a commercial life science use. The new building will deliver commercial life science space for companies in varying stages of development, as well as for the NYU Grossman School of Medicine, all the while fostering job training and creation for a range of education and skill levels. We'll also be providing meaningful ground floor activation with a neighborhood-centered retail cafe and a life science multipurpose space. Slide, please. Our team has conducted extensive outreach to our neighbors in the community, providing informational presentations and answering questions.
Ben, if you could just pause real quick. We have just been joined by Ms. Ellen Lehman, and I just would like to ask Council to please administer the affirmation for her.
Ellen, when you have a moment, please raise your right hand, and I will ask you a question. Do you swear or affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth in answer to all Councilmember questions, sorry, in your testimony before the Subcommittee and in answer to all Councilmember questions? Thank you.
Thank you, Ellen. Sorry, Ben, continue.
Thank you. Innovation East has received support from Manhattan Community Board Six, from the Manhattan Borough President, Mark Levine, and from the City Plans and Commission, bringing us one step closer to realizing the city's long-term plan to create a new public health lab in Harlem and a modern commercial life science building at 455 First Avenue. The Public Health Lab will be relocated to its new purpose-built facility in 2026, after which demolition at 455 First Avenue can begin. And construction of Innovation East would be completed in approximately 2030. Slide, please.
So Innovation East occupies a pivotal site in the First Avenue Health and Sciences Corridor. It's located on First Avenue between 26th and 27th Streets. Some of our immediate neighbors include Bellevue Hospital to the east. We have residential neighbors to the north. And then the CUNY Brookdale Campus future Spark site is located to the southeast across First Avenue. The site is bordered to the north by 27th Street, which is a pedestrian way, and that terminates into Bellevue South Park directly west of the site. The ground floor design of Innovation East prioritizes transparency, activation, and accessibility. The arrows on this image show pedestrian entry points on three sides of the building with service access from Mount Carmel Place. The main building entrance is mid-block on First Avenue. A 9,000-square-foot life science multipurpose space is at the south corner, which includes flexible meeting, training, and gathering space. A neighborhood-centered retail cafe is at the north corner, and that's directly connected to the 27th Street pedestrian way. These ground floor elements, along with a tenant bike lobby at the west side of 27th Street, will activate the street frontage with transparent storefronts and improve the pedestrian experience. Next slide. This site currently contains the 14-story Public Health Laboratory, which, as Ben mentioned, is outmoded for commercial life sciences.
We have the cell phones, please.
This is a view of the existing conditions and of that building from First Avenue and 27th Street. It shows some of the blank facades and the extensive scaffolding that's been installed around the site, which has led to community concerns regarding safety, especially at the 27th Street pedestrian way. Next. This is an illustrative view of Innovation East from that same vantage point at the corner of First Avenue and 27th Street, highlighting the opportunity for a retail cafe to activate this corner of the site. The transparent, well-lit, and active facades along 27th Street will restore the pedestrian experience and safety on the pedestrian way and strengthen the connection between the First Avenue Corridor and Bellevue South Park. Next. These are the existing views of the entry condition for the Public Health Lab along First Avenue. In conjunction with the scaffolding, tall site walls surround the existing entrance and are unwelcoming and give little indication of the activity within the existing building. Next. In contrast, this illustrative view at the First Avenue entrance highlights the improved public realm. The mid-block building entry to Innovation East is flanked in this image by the life science multipurpose space on the left and the cafe on the right. The Innovation East building entrance is set back from First Avenue, providing space for shallow stairs and gentle ramps that facilitate some of the multiple entry points that we have across the sloping site. And these elements, along with low plantings, will visually expand the public realm without encroaching on sidewalk dimensions or space for pedestrians. Next. These existing views highlight the multiple points of vehicular access and loading that currently exist on 26th Street. They also highlight some of the existing building and site elements that encroach within the public right-of-way, resulting in narrower sidewalks and less space for pedestrians. Next. Innovation East will restore 20 feet of right-of-way to the public realm. This illustrative view of 26th Street shows the visual impact of that additional space for pedestrians. The view also highlights the dedicated entrance to the ground floor life science multipurpose space, which will provide flexible meeting, training, and gathering space for building tenants, nonprofit partners, and the life science community. The extent of transparency and visibility supports opportunities to put science on display and will showcase the vibrant life science ecosystem of Innovation East and the First Avenue Health and Sciences Corridor. Next slide, please. Innovation East will be a purpose-built life science facility. Life science buildings have specialized requirements, including minimum floor plate planning dimensions and more robust infrastructure when compared to other buildings. We're also designing the building to support sustainability, resiliency, and wellness. The project's aiming for LEED Gold certification, and the building will incorporate numerous energy efficiency measures, including a fully electric central plant. All critical infrastructure will be located above a project-designed flood elevation for enhanced resiliency and to support research continuity. This stacking section shows the anticipated distribution of life science and mechanical space within the building, along with an indication of the ground floor retail and amenity programming that supports a robust life science ecosystem. Ellen Lehman will review some of the proposed zoning actions that make Innovation East possible. Thank you.
Next slide. Turn on your mic.
Ellen, if you could turn on your mic, please. Thank you.
Yep.
Next slide. The site is currently zoned R8 with a C25 overlay along First Avenue. The applicants are seeking three land use actions to facilitate the project. The first is a zoning map amendment to rezone to a C64 district, which would allow the commercial laboratory use at TAFAR. The second is a zoning text amendment to map the site as an MIH area. And the third is a special permit pursuant to Section 74901 to modify the applicable heightened setback regulations as shown in the hatched areas in these two sections. These modifications are needed given the specialized requirements of modern commercial life science companies.
Next slide, please. Innovation East will stimulate the growth of life science companies and organizations, which together will employ approximately 1,000 individuals in the building, ranging in skill and education level. These jobs will include more technical jobs, like faculty researchers, postdoctoral fellows, and lab technicians, and related jobs, less technical ones, business managers, administrative assistants, and building service workers. We're committed to active participation with MWBE contractors during construction, as well as EDC's higher NYC program, connecting job seekers with construction and permanent jobs. Slide, please. Through partnerships with nonprofits, including the Lower East Side Employment Network, New York Bio, Hypothecids, and Life Science Cares, the workforce development and educational programming at Innovation East will connect local residents with life sciences and related jobs, job training and construction jobs, connect local K-12 and college students with hands-on educational opportunities, networking, and internships, and connect the life science community with the local community generally. Slide, please. The 9,000-square-foot ground floor life science multipurpose space includes flexible meeting, training, and gathering space for building tenants, as well as our nonprofit partners to offer programs open to the public. These will include things like life science conferences, lectures, and seminars, networking and career exposure events for interns, for students at Spark, for other life science programs across New York. There'll be job fairs and training for local residents, as well as programs that engage K-12 students and inspire the next generation of life science graduates. Things like community science fairs, a demonstration lab putting science on display. We'll also host volunteer-based events and drives that allow the life science sector to give back to the local community. Slide, please. Overall, Innovation East will provide significant community benefits by substantially improving the public realm, fostering a vibrant life science ecosystem that's interconnected with the surrounding neighborhood, and creating quality jobs for a range of skills. With that, we're happy to take any questions you may have.
Thank you so much, Ben, Melissa, and Ellen. Just have a few questions, and I'm going to see if Councilmember Rivera has any questions. Given the similarities, can you explain why 455 First Avenue is going through a separate application from the Spark Kips Bay application?
So Taconic and Divco West are separate from the Spark effort wholly. We're not involved in that rezoning. We responded to an RFEI purely with respect to 455 First Avenue, and were thankfully selected to develop a commercial life science building on that site alone.
On a related note, Spark is seeking a special permit for the proposed UG7 laboratory use, whereas you are not. Can you explain the differences between the types of uses and clarify why you are not seeking the same special permit?
Yeah.
The, we can't speak for Spark, but the planned commercial laboratory use at 455 is permitted as a right in the C64 district. It's a Use Group 7 laboratory, and so no use-related special permits required.
Do you have an agreement with the NYU Grossman School of Medicine for the space they intend to occupy, and for how much space in the building?
We have a LOI with NYU, and we anticipate they'll occupy between 150,000 and 200,000-
For the general public, can you explain what a LOI is, please?
Sorry, a letter of intent. And we anticipate they'll occupy between 150,000 and 200,000 square feet, which is approximately 40% of the building.
Thank you. Have you entered into any agreement with any other prospective tenants for the new building? If yes, what type of businesses?
We have not, and that's purely a function of the timeline of the project.
What information can you share about the demand for these types of life science tenants you are seeking for this development in this location?
So relative to other active life science markets, New York City is drastically undersized in terms of available suitable space for life science companies. EDC has a fantastic initiative to grow the market here in New York City, and even once that's fulfilled, when, you know, an additional, I believe it's 10 million square feet are brought to market, we'll still be only 25% of comparable life science markets, as is the case in, say, Boston. So I think we, as a city, have a lot of catching up to do, and we're happy to be part of that effort.
What experience does this development team have with building, marketing, and tenet in this type of special-purpose development?
So Taconic and Divco West have a vast experience in the life science sector specifically. Separately, we have a lot of experience working with EDC successfully on projects. Speaking for the development partners, Divco West developed Cambridge Crossing, which is a massive life sciences development. In the Boston area, Taconic has West End Labs, which is on West End and 65th Street, the Hudson Research Center, which is on 54th Street and 10th Avenue, and is planning others as well.
In particular, can you tell us about the lease-up experience with that, those other sites that you just did?
Sure. We have, we have some really exciting tenants, including the New York Stem Cell Foundation, which does very exciting work developing therapeutics to treat varying diseases and ailments. And then there's other companies, like, for example, we have a tenant called C16, which develops a synthetic palm oil product, which is great in that palm oil is used in a lot of consumer goods and is largely sourced from deforestation efforts, but they have a product where they can develop it synthetically. And there are other tenants as well, but those are two of the noteworthy ones.
You spoke about a LOI. Was the LOI with the city?
The letter of intent is between, I'll have to confirm, I believe it's between the development partners and NYU.
Okay. All right. I'll defer to Councilmember Rivera to see if she has any questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Chair Riley. All right, I have a few questions for you. I have a couple of questions for, they might take the expertise of EDC, but let's see how we do. Okay? Thank you for your testimony. Thank you for being here and for the presentation. Let's start with, can you explain the necessity of the special permit you're requesting, and did you consider other design alternatives to achieve the space requirements you need?
Sure. We'll see on that.
Sure, I can take that one. So life science buildings do have certain kind of minimum planning dimensions and requirements for the space to be efficiently and effectively deployed from a life science standpoint, from a planning standpoint. And so one of the challenges of a building that has kind of a typical sky-exposure plane, which the C64 zoning would have, is that the building gets narrower as you get higher up in the, in the building. And therefore, as we looked at it, and we did study multiple options, the upper floor plates just become so small that you don't get the appropriate minimum dimensions between the core of the building and the perimeter to support laboratory uses. And then coupled with that, you know, there's a significant mechanical plant that's typically at the top of the building that kind of drives all the airflow through the building. And then as the building gets narrower at the top of the building, the footprint that you have available for that mechanical system is just insufficient. So it was kind of the combination of those two things that really drove us to request the heightened setback waivers that we have applied for.
Thank you. I appreciate that. Community Board Six, as you know, you've been working with, and there's a task force, and I'm grateful for that because, you know, we're all experts in our own neighborhoods. We walk them every single day. Just want to know if any of the requests that they made are being met, specifically improvements and protections for Bellevue Park South, and then Mount Carmel Place, which is that small street adjacent to the building, just a design that reflects the mixed-use character of the neighborhood. They're also concerned about that, that space and ensuring that the community can utilize it for other uses. Can you speak a little to their concerns and some of their recommendations and how far you are along the process in meeting them?
Sure. So with respect to Bellevue South Park, you know, the team, as part of the environmental analysis, did an in-depth look at the vegetation, the utilization, and the effect of the building's massing on it. And the outcome of that was that the building had no significant adverse impact on, on the park or its use or enjoyment. In terms of Mount Carmel Place, you know, right now, it's very much home to double-parked vehicles, in that the 27th Street corridor is going to be, which is the pedestrian way which links First Avenue to Mount Carmel and is kind of a connector to Bellevue South Park, in that that will be significantly more activated than it is today. We anticipate that is going to also help activate Mount Carmel Place and are certainly happy to work more with the Community Board to better understand their, their concerns on Mount Carmel. And then lastly, on the multipurpose space, we're very much willing to host the Community Board for, you know, 10 times a year for their use, to use that, as well as, you know, to the extent there's appetite from other groups to use that space, to offer it at a discounted rate.
I appreciate that. May I ask one more question, Mr. Chair? Okay, so, well, this, the community groups, a lot of them are, they're not for profit, so I hope the discount is like free, you know? That would be most helpful. We're starved for space, we're even starved for open space. That's why the, the protection and investments in Bellevue South Park are so important, and so I hope that we can come to that conclusion because that is incredibly important. My last question is just about, and I'm sure Councilmember Powers is going to get to ask EDC about looking at the adjacent areas for housing, since this site, we were looking at for housing, it didn't become that, that is not the RFP, but we have asked them to identify.
Councilmember Rivera, I have to call up EDC to come up for that question.
Oh, I don't, all right, but I don't want to ask them this, but they're going to answer it when they get up there, I'm sure.
Okay.
I want to ask you all, when do you begin applying for the RFEI, the RFP, a little bit about the development process, and just go back to the construction timeline and completion? Thank you very much. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
I was not personally involved in the RFEI process and response timeline, so I'm going to have to get back to you on that. I don't have those dates. In terms of the demolition and construction timeline, upon vacancy of the existing building and when the Public Health Lab moves to Harlem, we would then start the demolition process. That will take between six and 12 months. Demolition now, right, is more like dismantling. It's done in a careful way. Our intent is to be as least disruptive as we can to our neighbors. And then subsequently, we'll build the building, which we anticipate will be about three years.
Okay. Thank you very much, and I look forward to you coming back around with, with the answers to that. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Rivera. Are there any other colleagues that have questions for this panel? Thank you, Councilmember Rivera. Are there any other colleagues that have questions for this panel? Thank you. There being no questions, this applicant panel is excused. Counselor, are there any members of the public who is to testify regarding this rezoning proposal remotely or in person?
Thank you. Chair, we do have a number of online witnesses to testify, but first we want to see if Caitlin Schuster is available in the room to testify.
There are approximately, oh, sorry. For members of the public here to testify, please note that witnesses will generally be called in panels of three. If you are a member of the public signed up to testify on the proposal, please stand by when you hear your name being called and prepare to speak when I say that you may begin. Please note that once all panelists in your group have completed their testimony, if remotely, you will be removed from the meeting as a group, and the next group of speakers will be introduced. Once removed, participants may continue to view the live stream broadcast of this hearing on the council's website. Members of the public will be given two minutes to speak. Please do not begin until the sergeant-at-arms has started the clock. The following individuals who have tested, excuse me, who signed up to testify should not come to the witness table. We will begin with Caitlin Schuster. I'm sorry if I mispronounced your name.
Good morning, Chair Riley, Councilmember Rivera, and members of the subcommittee. My name is Caitlin Schuster. I'm here on behalf of SEIU Local 32BJ. 32BJ is the largest union of property service workers in the country, representing over 175,000 members across our 13 states, including tens of thousands commercial property service workers, security officers, and residential building staff in New York City. I'm here to report that 32BJ is in active discussions with the development team over an agreement to ensure the provision of dignified wages and benefits to the future building service workers and security officers who will staff Innovation East after the property is constructed and which would memorialize the development's team, the development team's commitment to labor peace at the site with respect to those same workers. 32BJ maintains productive relationships with both Taconic and Divco West, which together employ over 200 of our members across their respective portfolios. So, we're optimistic that we'll be able to arrive at a written agreement in the near future and hopefully before it's considered by the full council. Thanks so much for your time.
Thank you so much. Are there any questions for this panel? There being no questions, this panel is excused. I also have a list of people who signed up to testify but did not put what they want to testify on, so if you do want to testify on 455 and I did not call you when you're present, please just indicate to the sergeant-at-arms. I'm now going to the online testimony, and I'm going to call a group of four for online testimony. We're going to begin with David Garza, Marissa Mitchell, Elizabeth Fassberg, and Chris Kiesel. I will begin first with David Garza. David, if you can hear me, please unmute, and you may begin.
Yes, thank you so much. My name is David Garza. I'm the president and CEO of the Henry Street Settlement. I thank the committee for the opportunity to testify. I want to acknowledge Councilmember Rivera for her support of the Lower East Side Employment Network. I am here today in representation of the Lower East Side Employment Network, who is a grateful and proud partner and enthusiastic partner with Innovation East. We know that the life sciences sector will bring, is a high-demand sector that will bring educational opportunities to our community. The Lower East Side Employment Network is eight organizations that work collaboratively to create a single point of access with economic development opportunities to help the residents of the Lower East Side and beyond access those employment and educational opportunities, which we hopefully will ultimately lead to high-wage employment, education, training, skill certification, and otherwise. We already have an MOU signed with Innovation East that was executed last year, and it outlines the responsibilities on both, for both parties and both stakeholders, to create those points of access, to report on the progress, and to leverage the support that is being invested by the development company into our community to help create that ramp to access so that we can provide critical support to the job seekers and training seekers that we serve and our partners at Innovation East and their expanded partners can help provide those opportunities, that platform for the engagement of our residents. So, I'm grateful to be here today to speak on the reality of that MOU, and we're excited to pursue the work as it unfolds. I thank the committee again for the opportunity to testify, and I'm grateful to be here. Thank you so much.
Thank you, David. Next, we'll hear from Marissa Mitchell. Marissa, if you can hear me, please unmute, and you may begin.
Hi, I'm the Executive Director of Hypothecids. We provide low-income and underrepresented New York City public school students of all ages with hands-on education, training, and internship opportunities in science and engineering, setting them on a path toward academic success and well-paying careers. I'm thrilled to express our support for the Innovation East project at 455 First Avenue. We have already established a robust relationship with the developers of this project, and we're excited to continue this partnership at Innovation East. At another of Taconic's life science developments, West End Labs, we've benefited very much from their generosity. They've hosted our educational and training programs. They provided lab tours to public high schoolers that expose them to high-tech work environments and career paths, and they've donated space for a major fundraiser, which allowed us to direct more of our funds toward helping, towards serving students in need. We anticipate that Innovation East would help expand the impact of Hypothecids in similar ways. For example, assisting with internship host recruitment among the building's life science tenants to give high school students real-world work experience and a leg up, and hosting a speaker series with life science professionals from the building, and providing space for hands-on STEM programs for our elementary students from the community, including those in public housing. From the beginning of our relationship, Hypothecids has been very impressed with Innovation East team's care for the surrounding community and the willingness to take time out of their workdays to help our students learn and grow. We are confident that when this project comes to fruition, they'll demonstrate the same level of commitment to helping those residents who could most benefit from their resources.
Thank you. Your time has expired.
Expertise.
Thank you.
I'm done, anyway.
Right on time. All right, next we'll have Elizabeth Fassberg.
Hi, everybody. Thank you all for having me here today. I'm the Executive Director of Life Science Cares New York, and we are a nonprofit devoted to activating the financial and human capital of the life science industry, and we partner with nonprofits to disrupt the cycle of poverty and inequality in our communities. And we're committed programming partner in proposed Innovation East life science building. We also have benefited from the generosity of Innovation East in different programs at West End Labs and really appreciate that, you know, as a nonprofit, they have been incredibly generous with our students. We hosted a full day of Life Science Cares Day with 50 students from low-income high schools around New York City. And they, we had lab tours and met with different professionals in the building, had lunch, and really had an incredible day. We've also done some other fundraising events at the beautiful space and, you know, feel that it's going to continue in the same fashion at this building. We're particularly excited about the ground floor because it does open up many opportunities for the neighborhood and the neighboring schools to be able to participate in programming as well as their proposed interesting and healthy food options that they plan to have available, which is exciting for me as a public health nutritionist. But we're, we're definitely in support of, of this 455 First Avenue project and believe that it will be super beneficial to the community and are excited to be a part of this program. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, last, we'll hear from Chris Kiesel.
Good morning, Chair Riley and members of the committee. Thank you for the opportunity to speak today. My name is Christopher Kiesel. I'm here on behalf of New York Bio and the New York Bio Institute, which is dedicated to workforce development in the life sciences sector. I'm here to express strong support for the Innovation East project at 455 First Avenue and to respectfully request that the Committee Board Six recommend approval for the necessary zoning actions to enable the development of this transformative new life sciences building. The demand for modern lab space in New York City continues to grow as life science companies seek locations where they can innovate and thrive. New York is home to the largest and most vibrant biosciences community in the world. It supports more than 75,000 direct biotechnology jobs, produces the highest number of life sciences PhDs in the country, and hosts over 25% of all clinical trials in the United States. At New York Bio, we focus on fostering innovation, supporting the life sciences industry, development, and connecting our members and the community. Innovation East aligns perfectly with these goals. It will be a cutting-edge facility designed to accommodate businesses of all sizes, from startups to established research and development firms, while also serving as an anchor for the NYU Grossman School of Medicine, a leader in the field. The building's location alongside First Ave, Health and Science Corridor, is strategic, replacing the city's outdated lab space while fostering collaboration among medical, research, and academic institutions. This project also complements the LifeSci NYC initiative led by the New York City Economic Development Corporation, which aims to position New York City as a global leader in life sciences. By supporting the project, we will not only create a facility that meets modern laboratory standards, but also contributes to creating thousands of jobs, accelerating discoveries of new treatments, and building a healthier, fairer city. New York Bio is committed to building a strong biosciences ecosystem through events.
Your time has expired.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Chris. You can submit the rest of your testimony online. Are there any questions for this panel? There being no questions for this panel, this panel is excused. There being no other members of the public who is to testify on LU's 214, 215, and 216 regarding the 455 First Avenue rezoning proposal, the public hearing is now closed and the items are laid over. I will now open the public hearing on LU number 217 through 224 regarding the proposal by EDC to create a new life science campus located in Councilmember Powers' district in Manhattan. The proposal seeks to redevelop approximately 4.75 acres of land owned by the city in Kip Bay. This new campus will rebuild Hunter's College outdated Brookdale's campus into approximately 2 million square feet of a state-of-the-art academic, healthcare, and life science space. The proposal involves several land use application, which EDC will walk us through, including a related city map application. Please silence your phone if you're in the chambers. Thank you. For anyone wishing to testify on these items remotely, you must register online through the council's website at council.nyc.gov/landuse. And once again, for anyone wishing to testify in person, please see one of the sergeants to prepare and submit a speaker's card. If you would prefer to submit written testimony, you can always do so by emailing it to landustestimony@council.nyc.gov. I will now call the applicant, oh, sorry. Before I begin, I would now like to give the floor to Councilmember Powers to give his open remarks.
Thank you. Welcome. Thank you, everyone, for being here today. I'm City Councilmember Keith Powers, representing the site that we are discussing today, the Spark, the proposal for the Sparks Kip Bay campus. I want to thank Chair Riley for giving me some time to speak today on this proposal. I know you have a long day, so I'll try to keep my version short, but it's certainly an exciting and interesting project for the Kip Bay area and Borough of Manhattan. Want to first state my excitement for the idea of substantial investment in the life sciences field that's being introduced here in Manhattan and in my district, something that I think anytime we have a large investment and opportunity to grow our economy here in the city is something we should celebrate. I want to note that the, there have been former plans on this project, the community long opposed, so we are grateful to see a project that brings a lot more investment and a lot more consensus to the table, and we deeply appreciate that. The proposal here today is a campus that would bring much new life sciences and education opportunity and healthcare services to the Kip Bay neighborhood. Brand-new high school that will be partnering with the campus to introduce students to aspects of the life sciences field, a new state-of-the-art facility for the Office of the Chief Medical Examiner, a new NH, NH Ran Ambulatory Care and Wellness Center, a new CUNY Healthcare and Public Health Campus that brings together programs from three schools, Hunter Borough of Manhattan Community College, and the Graduate School of Public Health and Policy, Public Health and Health Policy, and we believe will deliver 13,000 construction jobs and potentially 3,100 permanent jobs once it's fully operated. One acre of new and enhanced public realm and a publicly accessible central open space. Every time I read those things, I feel like I left something off, so you guys will probably tell me which part I left off. And I think that we have seen that forming a physical cluster and network of life sciences is essential for the success of this industry, and this is one of the several city-led projects in that area to encourage the growth of the life sciences industry to help attract talent and jobs. This is expected to deliver 1 million square feet of life sciences space, which will be crucial to, I believe, our 2030 goal of 10 million. I believe that's still our goal, and that will be a major dent in it. I want to thank my staff, both Pat and Ben, who are here today, for being actively involved in this, and all members of the community who have participated in our task force and offered critical input at all times about how to make this project. That will be their permanent neighbor, a successful project for the community. Myself, living only about footsteps away from this project, I know how important it is to make sure this is a good neighbor as well. I want to commend Councilmember Rivera here as well, and the other electeds who have been participants in that project. And I'll, of course, take the opportunity to ask questions after the presentation as well, so thank you, guys, for being here today.
Thank you, Councilmember Powers. Counsel, please administer the affirmation.
Panelists, would you, panelists, would you please raise your right hands, and I will ask you in turn to answer the following question. Do you swear or affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth in your testimony before the subcommittee in an answer to all Councilmember questions? Cecilia Kushner, EDC. Julianne Herskowitz, EDC. Andrew Wallach, New York City Health and Hospitals. Mitch Gibson, CUNY. Isha Seth, New York City Public Schools. Robert Van Pelt, Officer of the Chief Medical Examiner. Thank you.
Thank you. For the viewing public, if you need a accessible version of this presentation, please send an email request to landustestimony@council.nyc.gov. And now the applicant team may begin. I'll just ask that you please reinstate your name and organization for the record. You may begin.
Good morning. I'm Chair Riley, Councilmember Powers, and member of the Zoning and Franchise Subcommittee. My name is Cecilia Kushner, and I am the Chief Strategy Officer at the Economic Development Corporation. And I'm very pleased to be presenting the Science Park and Research Campus, also known as Spark Kip Bay, project today as part of our YULUP application, and I'm joined by Julianne Herskowitz from EDC and a number of my colleagues from city agencies and CUNY. Next slide, please. Spark Kip Bay is a generational project. It is a first-of-its-kind education, workforce, and industry hub made possible through an unprecedented partnership between New York State and New York City. The project was announced in the fall of 2022, with the city and the state putting together $1.6 billion of funding into Spark, which will leverage more than $2 billion of private investment on the campus. Next slide, please. This historic partnership brings together five different public entities dedicated to education, workforce, healthcare, and life science. First, New York City Public Schools, with the creation of a new high school educational facility, offering health and life science pathways. The City University of New York, with three schools coming together and offering more than 60 degrees and certifications for healthcare, public health, and life science careers. New York City Health and Hospitals Bellevue, with a new ambulatory care center for patients and simulation training center serving H&amp;H staff. And finally, the Office of the Chief Medical Examiner, with a new facility which will provide nationally leading forensic research. The site will also provide 1 million square feet of commercial life science space. The entire campus will be centered around a brand-new open space and will connect to the waterfront via a new bridge across the FDR, which were two important community priorities. Next slide. This partnership with agencies and community stakeholders culminated in the release of the Sparks Kip Bay Master Plan in the fall of 2023 and led to the site plan. The site organizes educational uses with public schools and CUNY on the eastern side of the campus, which will be built by EDC. This building is part of Spark's first phase of construction, which will also include public realm and pedestrian circulation improvements, allowing EDC to deliver the new and universally accessible pedestrian bridge as soon as possible to the community. The current dorms on this site will be replaced by CUNY, one-for-one, at the centrally-located Hawkins Way dorms at Lexington Avenue and 51st Street, close to the Hunter Main Campus and about 20 minutes from Spark. Moving west on the site, H&amp;H and OCME will occupy the podiums of the privately-developed life science buildings. of the privately-developed life science buildings. One of our priorities for this project, as well as Innovation East across the street, is to activate First Avenue with retail and community use. Next slide, please. The city has been investing in the Kips Bay Science District for nearly fifteen years, since the Alexandria Center for Life Science opened in twenty-ten, followed by the opening of Deerfield Cure in twenty-twenty-two. Innovation East and Spark will continue to cement the Kips Bay Science District as the anchor of the city's life science ecosystem. Next slide, please. Through Life Science NYC, EDC coordinates the city's vision for the life science industry, which is becoming one of the fastest-growing and top-performing sector of the innovation economy in terms of company growth, revenue, and job creation. At the end of twenty-twenty-three, the life science industry represented more than fifteen-hundred companies in New York City, a fifty, uh, sorry, a forty-six percent increase since the LifeSci NYC program began in twenty-sixteen. And in twenty-twenty-four, the life science ecosystem employed over forty-two thousand workers and contributed sixteen-point-five billion dollars to New York City's economy. Next slide, please. Spark will be a model for workforce development and career-connected learning, all within the same city block. And to make sure we are capturing on this momentum, EDC convened the Kips Bay Science District Education and Workforce Task Force, which gathered fifty industry, workforce, and education experts to develop a plan to connect the next generation of New Yorkers to family-supporting jobs in the Kips Bay Science District. The task force insight and expertise have culminated in a report called Empowering Kips Bay Futures Workforce, which we are proud to release today, and we have copies for members of the panel. Next slide, please. The community has long advocated for improvements to the public realm in Kips Bay. This project will deliver one-point-five acres of new and improved public realm in the first phase of the project, and integration into the Kips Bay Coastal Resiliency Project. Earlier this year, we procured the world-class design team of ENIAD and Dattner Architects, who will design the east building of the campus. The design team and EDC consulted with the community to develop the community design guidelines to ensure that the public realm improvements reflect community priorities. Next slide. Since we began the project in twenty-twenty-two, we have engaged the community through a variety of approaches, including walking tour of the site and district, including visits to the aging city facilities that will be replaced through Spark. We hosted a neighborhood open house welcoming nearly a hundred-and-fifty community members to learn more about the project and the master plan. And we have held countless other community and tenant association meetings to garner feedback and share information about the project.
Thank you. My name is Julianne Herskowitz. I'm a senior vice president at the New York City Economic Development Corporation. Next slide, please. To make this generational project a reality, EDC is seeking approval for seven discretionary land use actions that are crucial to achieving the full breadth of the Spark Kips Bay vision. Next slide. Our final requested land use action will allow for the replacement of the East Twenty-Fifth Street Pedestrian Bridge. This is a longstanding community priority, and we are pleased to deliver this important infrastructure project within the first phase of the Spark Kips Bay project. This new bridge will provide full ADA access, replacing the currently inaccessible pedestrian bridge, enhancing this important connection for Waterside Towers residents and the community between the neighborhood and waterfront. The bridge will be designed to universal design principles and enhance connections to public open space at Spark Square and the Manhattan Waterfront Greenway. Minimizing interruption of the pedestrian bridge during construction is a major priority for both EDC and the Department of Transportation. And to that end, we recently brought on the world-renowned construction firm, Skanska, to serve as the construction manager for this project. Skanska will work with the design team to diligence concept design options with a particular focus on minimizing construction impacts and expediting project delivery. We will, of course, continue to coordinate with the community on the bridge design as it progresses. Next slide, please. In June of last year, the Spark Kips Bay Community Task Force, co-chaired by Councilmember Powers and CB six Chair Sandy McKee, released community design principles to inform and guide the design of Spark Square and the project's public realm. The design guidelines will also be included in the future developer RFP for the project's second phase to be released this year. Recommendations include making better connections to nearby public open spaces and designing Spark with a variety of spaces to encourage a range of programming and use. Next slide, please. And EDC also kicked off the Kips Bay Science District's Education Workforce Task Force last spring. As Cecilia mentioned, this brought together fifty experts in healthcare, life sciences, and public health, working across education, workforce, and industry, including our project partners of CUNY Health and Hospitals, OCME, and New York City Public Schools. With support from Councilmember Powers, the task force aligned on a vision for career pathways, programs, and partnerships needed to ensure that Kips Bay provides equitable access to family-supporting jobs within the city's life sciences and healthcare ecosystem. Next slide, please. And as noted, we released the report today. You should have copies before you. And these insights and expertise culminated in four key recommendations. Scale and fund exposure-based learning opportunities. Strengthen New York City's student career pathways through dual enrollment, transferable credits, and work-based learning, all things that will take place at Spark Kips Bay. Develop sector-specific, industry-driven training programs for talent into priority occupation career tracks. Create an independent organization led by Spark's anchor tenants to drive district-wide training and engagement. This report sets a concrete framework for the next steps of developing impactful career pathways connected to establish and growing job opportunities in health and sciences in the Kips Bay Science District and beyond. Next slide. Spark Kips Bay will become a national model for place-based economic development. We're building new, modern facilities for our very best public education institutions with CUNY and New York City Public Schools. State-of-the-art training space for career-connected learning in the healthcare, public health, and life sciences industries paired with private industry, which will occupy one million square feet of new, modern life sciences space. It will grow New York City's economy with over thirty-one hundred well-paying jobs in future-forward industries and twelve thousand union construction jobs, resulting in approximately forty-two billion dollars of economic impact to New York City over the next thirty years. This project will also be built smarter and cleaner as the largest municipal project in the country to deploy sustainable and circular construction methods. Finally, Spark will invest in the Kips Bay neighborhood, addressing longstanding community priorities to add new open space and improve the public realm and infrastructure for New Yorkers of all abilities and ages. Next slide. Thank you so much for your consideration of the Spark Kips Bay project. We are proud of the engagement that we have done on this project as reflected in the very strong support shown in CB six and Borough President's Resolutions and the CPC's unanimous vote for this project. The team is available to answer any questions you have. Soon you will hear from a number of our project partners and stakeholders who will also testify on behalf of the project. Thank you.
Thank you so much. I just have a few questions, and I'm going to turn over to Councilmember Powers. Uh, most of the floor area in Buildings B one and Buildings B two are, oh, excuse me, are allocated for office and laboratory space. Understanding that this project is several years out from completion, have you received interest from any life science organizations eager to move into these spaces?
Thank you so much, Chair, for that question. That is right. We are planning to build a million square feet of modern, cutting-edge life sciences space at this project. We were pleased, uh, earlier last year to release a LifeSci Innovation Anchor Tenant RFEI, so a request for expressions of interest for the site. Understanding that we are still quite a ways out, looking at project completion in twenty-thirty-one, we were able to put forward as part of this request for expressions of interest a hundred million dollars to support the build-out of a modern life sciences space, um, specifically trying to attract, uh, a world-class tenant that is working within life sciences industry and the intersection of AI and tech. So that is an open, you know, request for proposals that I can't speak to the details of right now, but just part of our commitment to ensure that we tenant up the space and are actively working to attract this life sciences industry to the future Spark Kips Bay campus.
What types of retail are you hoping to attract in the ground floors?
Sure. Thank you for that question. So I think everyone is familiar with, uh, the blocks along First Avenue in this part of Kips Bay. There's really a dearth of, uh, retail activity, surprisingly, considering the number of residents that live in this area, as well as the workers at, you know, Health and Hospitals Bellevue, NYU Langone, and other places. So we really want to attract, um, a number of different retail tenants that will be open, uh, throughout the day and then into the evening as well. So this is a priority of the project. It's something that came out through the master planning phase. We heard loud and clear from Community Board Six that this is their priority as well. Um, I am also happy to share that as part of the Health and Hospitals Bellevue leasehold within the First Avenue building, they also will have healthy concessions, a healthy concessions cafe. So definitely a range of programming, but really trying to improve and increase the retail offerings in this community, uh, and throughout the day and into the evening.
Okay. You propose to demolish and rebuild the East Twenty-Fifth Street Pedestrian Bridge, which crosses over the FDR Drive and connects to Waterside Plaza. When do you anticipate a final design for the bridge, and when would it be open to the public?
Thank you so much for that question. So this is a longstanding community priority to finally bring an ADA-accessible pedestrian bridge to Twenty-Fifth Street, which is such an important lifeline for the Waterside Towers residents and the broader community to the waterfront and the east side of Manhattan. As noted, we brought on the Dattner-ENIAD design team earlier this year and have been just in the beginning of the concept design process with them, working with Department of Transportation as well. So to that end, we're hoping to advance the concept design this spring. Um, but, you know, we anticipate and are planning to build this prod, this pedestrian bridge as part of the first phase of the project. That means it would be completed in twenty-thirty. Uh, and we are working with, as noted, Skanska, our construction manager, to identify all opportunities to expedite that project delivery uh, and to minimize interruption for this community during that time.
Was there a reason why a design for the pedestrian bridge wasn't finalized prior to certification?
It has to do with the timeline. So as noted, we, we just brought on, uh, the design team uh, earlier this year and are working through concept design with them. Um, so yes, we, we don't have the final design yet as part of that mapping application, but we'll continue to work with the Borough Topol Office, our partners at the Manhattan Borough President, Councilmember Powers, the community, uh, to keep everyone super-engaged as we have been, um, as that design further refines and, and finalizes.
What alternatives are nearby for the public to use to cross the FDR Drive?
Sure, certainly. So, um, right now on Twenty-third Street, there is additional access, uh, underneath the FDR crossings. And we are, you know, discussing with the Department of Transportation opportunities to make crossings safer, uh, along the streets within this area. One thing we didn't know before, but is important to note, Twenty-Fifth Street, for example, is an important pedestrian connection and one in which will be made much safer through our project with a raised crosswalk and bumpouts, uh, along that corridor, especially enhancing connections to Asser Levy Park just across the street from our project site.
Okay. My last question, if I turn over to Councilmember Powers. Uh, you are requesting a special permit to allow Use Group Seven laboratories in a commercial area where they are not currently permitted. Can you talk more about these laboratories and why other laboratories under Use Groups permitted in commercial districts are not compatible?
So we are looking at a long-term investment in this commercial life science building, and so we wanted to have the zoning, um, proposal in, in front of, of us that was the most nimble possible to be responsive to changes and evolution in the life science sector overall. What we're saying, we're seeing a tremendous amount of, um, evolution right now, especially as, as Julianne mentioned, as it relates to our RFEI, the intersection of AI, tech, and life science. And so we just want to make sure that land use is as broad as possible to allow for whatever changes may happen in the next five, ten years that we may not be aware of today. And so this is why we're seeking the special permit.
Thank you. Councilmember Powers?
Thank you, and that's a good jumping-in point for me, because I have some questions on the special permit. Uh, thank you for the testimony. Thank you to Chair Riley for those, uh, questions, helpful to the, to the, some of the questions I was going to ask. Um, there has been some discussion around the site and the uses around life sciences. The site across the street, I know they had said they had as-of-right laboratory, uh, space based on their zoning. Am I correct to say that you can do lab, what, what is the difference between what's the as-of-right uses when it comes to laboratory space and what you're asking for when it comes to a special permit?
Sure. Thank you for the question, Councilmember. So as Cecilia just noted, we are, you know, working with a rapidly-evolving industry, one in which we don't know how it will continue to change and grow. Um, but we want to pre- prepare for that growth. And specifically, the special permit, what it allows for is the potential for production-based activities, which although we understand may not be happening at a large scale within New York City, we see real opportunity at a smaller scale, especially when it comes to, uh, you know, early-stage development, whether that's of medicine, cell and gene therapies, vaccines, and bi- biologics. So we want to prepare for that, and that's why we are actively seeking this special permit for life sciences use.
Got it. And as you're noting, it's in a rapidly-evolving area with a lot to still be seen by twenty-thirty-plus, where this is all headed. Um, we could be in a totally new world based on how rapidly we're evolving right now. Um, can you, what, what is the per, like, what, what is the anticipated perception of those, those, those properties around the life sciences, uh, buildings to be used for that type of manufacturing capacity? Yeah, I think you might have said it might be a smaller footprint in there. What, what's a percentage that we anticipate might be, uh, allocated towards that usage?
I think it's hard to put an exact pinpoint to how much space could be utilized for production within a facility. Um, but again, this is why we're seeking the permit. The permit would enable the entirety of the building to be utilized for production. We think that likely it would be smaller. Um, but want to, again, provide that availability and flexibility for a future anchor tenant, uh, to be able to do production if that is desired in-house.
Um, so look, I, I certainly think it would be helpful if we had a better understanding of exactly what we're talking about, because that's a specific zoning action relative to the counterpart across the street, without a clear understanding of whether it might be utilized. It's my understanding that because of that special permit, we also lose some opportunities to do housing and affordable housing on this property, which has been something the community's been asking for and others have been look, asking for as part of this site. And certainly recognize the complicated nature of putting different, uh, school buildings and healthcare facilities and life sciences in one place, and then trying to mix in housing as part of that, and whether that would even be desirable for someone to live on top of a lab or space anyway. But, but it still seems like we're getting restricted by that, and perhaps flexibility does benefit us in case the world does change in a way that we might want to add that in later, or, or, uh, or housing becomes a, a new set of priorities. We have a state of the city right now. We're talking about a Manhattan plan that certainly talks a lot about that. Uh, talk, can you talk to us about, about specifically the choices around the special permit, uh, for housing and why there's, that choice was made? Also, why, um, what it precludes, I guess, when it comes to housing? And does it preclude housing there as a result of putting a special permit on? If thought processes change even in the next few years, or priorities change, or, you know, thought process around that?
Yeah, so I'm happy to address this question. The Spark Kips Bay and Innovation East is part of a long-term economic development investment that the city is making, that is building on another generational investment that the city has made with Alexandria and with Deerfield Cure. So we are fully committed to this development, be a life science, commercial development. What we've learned, um, through all of our years really trying to grow the sector in New York City is that clustering deeply matter. And so the Kips Bay Science District is the premier current healthcare research and life science district in New York City, which is why we really want, um, the Spark Campus to be primarily a science campus with, uh, commercial life science. So we have never wavered on this really strong city commitment, which is backed by all of the partnership that we have around us to really create like a comprehensive and well-rounded project. Again, the choice of the special permit for us looking into a project that is very long-term, for which we will seek a developer in twenty-twenty-five for a request for proposal, is to be able to give, um, the development community and the life science community the most flexibility, uh, in their, uh, envision of tenancy and uses at the site. So that's, that are, that's our approach, and that's the one that we are presenting here today.
And, and have there been potential applicants for this? Or let's not even say potential. And, and have there been potential applicants for this? Or let's not even say potential, with your engagement with the industry, is that a need that they are stating they, they clearly need right now? Is that differentiated manufacturing space?
Yeah, absolutely. I mean, as part of the life science initiative that EDC has been leading since 2016, we have a life science advisory council, which is made of prominent scientists, including a Nobel Prize, you know, who is one of our co-chair. And so, we are continuously in dialogue with them around how the industry is changing. And we are in regular dialogue with the Department of City Planning and the Department of Building as well on how city land use regulation actually respond to changes in industry. And so, I think it was everyone's strong recommendation that we be as flexible as possible on this block and that the inclusion of the newly created special permit for the city of yes with city planning was a good idea.
Thanks. Understanding that answer, and I know Councilmember Vera had this question, so I'll just repeat it, is have you looked at other, other opportunities in the area to do additive housing? It could, you have two councilmembers here, so I know she's talked to some of, to you about some of them. And have, can you, can you talk about what those identified opportunities are around Community Board Six and where that, that conversation lies right now?
Yeah. So, I think we, we first are very enthused that CB Six is a very strong pro-housing community board that has been asking for the city repeatedly to look at housing in their districts. And so, that's a commitment that we are making with city planning as well, which is to sit down and to look at different opportunities, both like from an area-wide rezoning corridor-wide approach or specific sites that are of interest and to do this work moving forward.
And what's the timing of that?
I think we would be ready to sit down with the community board as soon as they so wish. We could sit down with them right away.
Okay. Few more questions. You took about a hundred million dollar commitment to help build out this property for life sciences. Is that city is putting a hundred million dollars to assist with the building out of it to then have a tenant take that over and the RFP would be essentially being the tenant and the city would be doing a hundred million dollar commitment for, for building it? Is that correct?
That's right. So, I want, in the spring, we released an IFEI with a hundred million dollars of capital attached to it that is really geared towards developing a center of excellence, ideally at the intersection of AI and tech and life science in one of the commercial life science tower. We are reviewing application. We, life science is a very expensive industry to develop. Labs are extremely expensive. The technology that supports AI and tech is also extremely expensive. And so, the capital money, which is up to a hundred million dollar, is there to support any need that an anchor tenant, be it an academic institution or corporate institution, may have and be able to develop and open the center of excellence at this location.
Got it. And has the city entered into any agreement with unions regarding to the construction jobs there? And can you talk to us what that arrangement is right now?
Yeah, that's exactly right. We have a project labor agreement with unions for the construction of the future project. So, in total, that'll be 12,000 union jobs, which we're very excited to deliver as part of this overarching project.
And have you had a dialogue with the building service workers about inside the building too? Is that an ongoing conversation right now?
Yeah. So, the building service worker conversation would be about the commercial life science towers that are to be developed. And that's something we're actively looking at.
Okay. And I support that. Just be on the record that. I want to talk about the dorms. I know we have CUNY here and then I'm just going to try to save Kevin Riley from a long day, but appreciate it. We had a discussion early on about what's the existing user there, which is the dormitories for Hunter College and CUNY, which currently reside on the campus, though I think probably far out of the, far out of the modern condition that many would want to live in. I don't think they've been updated since my, my mother herself once lived in them as a nursing student. And we know there's an agreement that students would be, made there be space, space would be available for students in my district at Fifty-first and Lexington Avenue. I just want to recognize and appreciate CUNY for taking that as a serious issue. And I have to go to Thanksgiving dinner, so I have to look at some Hunter students in the eyes. But can you just share with us exactly the status of that, timing of it and just the details of that agreement?
We are involved in conversations with the, with the owner of that project. We have, we have an agreement with them. We're tweaking it as we go along. But, the bottom line is our, these, these new dorms will be available in August of this year to accommodate our students moving from Brookdale.
Got it. And the students that are there today would move over there this fall? Or is that for new students moving in and would move directly there versus Brookdale?
All students related that go to Hunter will have the opportunity to take, to get a dorm room at this location. Certainly will accommodate all the students that are there. We will also make special accommodation for those that were at the location when we announced the project two years ago.
And, and how many rooms are we talking about total right now?
We're, well, the whole project at the dorm will, the new dorm will be around 950 dorms. That will replace all of the dorms that are presently at Hunter, Brookdale.
Got it. Okay. Appreciate that. And have students who are there today been notified about this? And have they, have, what's the communication been to, to, to CUNY campus community?
All the students, yes, we have a standard communication that makes available the opportunity to get a dorm room to all of our students and certainly those that are there will get special attention to make sure that they're aware of the opportunity. Most of them are already aware.
Okay. Thank you. Just the last few, we talked, Councilmember Riley talked about the retail. I, I heard the answer, but I want to maybe just get a more specific thought process on exactly what type of retail. You are completely right. It's an area with noticeable lack of, went from Twenty-third to, I don't know, Thirty-fourth Street, some spots in between, noticeable lack of open space, I mean, retail space. I would encourage food eating, things that would be available for the people that are working there. But is that, is that what you're envisioning or are there other uses that you're envisioning?
That's exactly right. Food and beverage, I think, is definitely a priority considering the number of people that are already in the area looking for a good place to eat. But then also all the students and, and workers who will be operating of the Spark Kips Bay campus, in particular with the two life sciences buildings. So, on First Avenue and then also on Twenty-sixth Street, we have a real opportunity to influence and encourage more retail within the ground floor of those spaces. As I also noted before too, as part of Health and Hospitals leasehold, they will also have healthy concessions, so a healthy cafe, and then a pharmacy within their ground floor space closer to Twenty-sixth Street. So, really excited to really make the entire campus more active and, and more permeable, as we know, and accessible than it is today.
Thank you. Thanks for that. We have a, as part of this, a new high school coming on board. And that's an exciting, exciting opportunity for a lot of folks who live in the area, the Borough of Manhattan and potentially citywide and with the connection and integration to the rest of the campus. One, can you just tell us how many seats we're expecting in that, in that high school? And second, as I talk to parents and they hear about a new school building open up, I think for the many young parents, the first thing they ask is about new pre-K, three-K opportunities in the area. In, in where I live in Stuyvesant Town, been a lot of discussion about trying to convert existing programs that are not universal three-K, pre-K programs into the pre-K, something people are very eager to have. We've talked about it with you. Can you give us an update on where that stands right now?
Hi. Good morning. My name's Yisha Sheth and I'm here from New York City Public Schools. We believe that this building could serve approximately 1,000 students at capacity. And we are currently planning to focus the building exclusively for the high school educational facility. Based on our data, there are actually sufficient capacity within the ZIP code for that area for early childhood. And we believe that there are actually open seats in that ZIP code right now. So, we are not prioritizing early childhood for this space.
Big ZIP code. So, let's talk about that. What is the, what is the amount of open seats right now? And, and yeah, give us the information about the three-K, pre-K in that, in that ZIP code.
And I just ask if you guys could do it in a very short answer because we have a lot of people.
Yeah, apologies. Apologies.
If it's all right, I would like to call in my colleague from District Planning to speak to that question, Eric Harmon.
Sure. I'll, I'll actually save us the que- if you could follow up with us after the earring.
Absolutely.
I also want to be clear, like, the neighborhood I'm talking about is 10009, 10010. It's two ZIP codes. I grew up in one. I live in the other, right across the street. And I think analysis has to go a little bit beyond just the ZIP code, to be fair, and what parents are kind of asking for and thinking about. I think this is the prime, with the whole three-K strategy and app, three-K strategy seems to be lacking in that regard about really sort of drilling down. So, I'll, and, and I have to give a credit to Eric Harmon, who I played Little League with growing up and knows this neighborhood very well. Nice to see you. And I'm very fond of. So, nice to see you. Why don't we have an offline conversation because I want to save us the time. But we'd like to talk more about that. So, thank you.
Chair Riley, can I ask one quick question?
Yes, I'll call on.
Is that any?
Right. Hold on, hold on, Councilmember. Hold on one second. All right. Thank you so much. I'm going to call on Councilmember Narcisse to ask questions. And then after, if you did not sign, if you want to testify on this, I only have three names. They're Michael Jordan, Michael Pizzarlo, and former Councilmember Stephen Levin that's going to testify. If you do want to testify, I did not call your name in person, please see one of the sergeant-at-arms to notify them that you're here, all right? Sorry, Councilmember Narcisse, you may go.
Thank you, Chair. One more question. Is there any reason, particular reason, you're not considering others part of this, I mean, part of the city instead of Manhattan? Because some of the good problems can go to some other part of New York City. And is that any reason that you're not considering other part of the city to build? Because we love some of the problems to spread out.
That's a really good question. So, what we found over about close to a decade of investment in life science is that this industry wants to cluster around medical research centers, many of which are located around the First Avenue corridor in Manhattan. There's also some life science developments on the west side, around some really large hospitals on the west side, as well as Columbia Hospital up to the north in West Harlem. There is a little bit of life science development in downtown Brooklyn in the Brooklyn Navy Yard, in part because there is production space available and also large hospitals in downtown Brooklyn. So, what we found is that the industry is most successful and can be attracted in places that really center around scientific research and long-term investment in medical research that the city and private sector has done over multiple decades. And this is really what drives the location of this project here in Kips Bay.
Thank you, Chair. Thank you.
Thank you so much. There are no more questions for this applicant panel. You are now excused.
I just want to, our colleagues from HNH, CUNY, OCME, and New York Public Schools are also here to testify on behalf of the project.
Okay. You guys should have did that before we did the questions.
We thought, we wanted to be respectful when questions started. We didn't want to.
Yeah, you guys should have did that before we did the questions. Just give me one second. Okay. Can you guys submit this in writing, please, if, if possible? All right. Thank you so much.
Happy to do that. Thank you.
All right. This panel is now excused. Thank you so much.
Thank you, guys.
All right. So, for this panel next, I'm going to call on Michael Jordan, Michael Pizzarlo, former Councilmember Stephen Levin, Cleveland Cyrus, and Michael Barron. Can you please come up to the dais, please? Okay. Thank you so much. For the members of the public, you will be given two minutes to testify. At the end of your testimony, please just wait to see if councilmembers have any questions. After we fulfill this in-person testimony, we will switch to online testimony on this project. We will begin first with Michael Barron. Michael, can you just please press the button?
Okay. We're on. Good afternoon, everybody. So, my name is Mike Barron. I'm here to testify on behalf of myself. Although professionally, I'm a partner in Pfizer's Venture Capital Fund. I travel the world building biotech companies on behalf of Pfizer and other institutional investors. I'm in favor of this project. But one thing that I just said that's problematic is I said travels the world. And we should be building these biotech companies here in New York City. And that's why I support, that's one of the reasons why I support this project. So, just three other quick points. First is around geographic dispersity. We do have lab space in the city across all the boroughs. And part of the reason why that's not working, and myself and colleagues often build these companies in other cities, is because it takes a long time to get from the different parts of the cities, the Bronx to Queens, wherever, right? So, what you have here is you have everything in one spot and it's already happening organically, right? You have NYU, Bellevue, Alexandria, Deerfield there. Spark just adds to that. And then you have all the scientists together and that's how good things happen. Number two is I'd, I'd like to emphasize the importance of the high school. You need to build a, a, a physical infrastructure, but you need talent to, to be there also. And at the moment, I feel that the next generation looks at other professions as, as a, as a better way to go, such as management consulting, technology, medicine, law. So, now we'll have these kids and we'll be able to catch them early and interact with them and show them that, you know, science is a viable career path. And then point number three, I had to slip this in. You have the building, you have the talent. How do you get them to stay here? You have to make it easy for them. You can't make it hard. And so, also as a resident, I'd like to, you know, say something negative. I'm not in favor of this congestion taxing, congestion tax. You know, we need to be doing the opposite on, when it comes to this Spark project. We can't be charging people $10 to come to work or $9. We have to make it easier. We should do the opposite. We should give them tax incentive. So, that's it. I'll yield my one second. Thank you for, for the time.
Thank you. Next, we'll hear from Michael Jordan. A very unique name.
I was going to say, I cannot believe Michael Jordan is in the house.
I disappoint all the time. Good, good afternoon. My name is Mike Jordan. I'm a business representative for Local Union Number Three of the International Brotherhood of Electrical Workers. Local Three represents nearly 28,000 members in construction and other related electrical industries, including maintenance and manufacturing. I am responsible for the Borough of Manhattan and the several thousand Construction Division members who work here. I am here today on behalf of business manager Chris Erickson and the offices and members of Local Three to express our support for the Science Park and Research Campus Project at Kips Bay known as Spark. The Spark Project is a win-win for New York City, our residents, and our future. This project will ensure our city's growth as the center of critical industries like life sciences and healthcare. Vitally important to my union is that the project will be built by Building Trades affiliated union labor. And once built, this project will strengthen the pipeline from New York City's public education system into top-notch careers for our current and future generations. With the commitment from the city and the EDC to build this project with union labor, the tradesmen and women will earn good union wages and benefits, allowing them to support themselves and their families. It also ensures that our union pension funds can make investments in projects like Spark and others, bolstering the money already committed by New York City and New York State. This project truly encapsulates everything good about New York City, building our key industries to strengthen our city's position, recruiting the best talent while creating pathways for residents, and investing in local public education, all while building, built and maintained by the most talented, productive, and safe union construction workforce. And thank you for your time. And again, on behalf of Local Union Number Three's IBW offices and 28,000 members, I urge you to support this Spark project.
Thank you. Next, we hear from Michael Pizzarlo. Sorry, Mike.
It's all good. Good afternoon, Chair and members of the Subcommittee on Zoning. My name is Michael Piccirillo. I am the Area Standards Manager of the New York City District Council of Carpenters, and I'm a proud resident of New York City. I'm here today to express our strong support for the Spark Project, a visionary development that promises immense benefits to our city and its residents. I just want to note, we were asked today to come and support the Spark, and I'm happy to do so. But it takes a lot of gold for EDC to schedule a similar project with no guarantee for good wages on the same day. I know the council deeply cares about labor standards, so I hope they'll note the difference, even though it's the same kind of project. First and foremost, this project will create hundreds, if not thousands, of good-paying union construction jobs during its development. Jobs that provide fair wages, benefits, and opportunities for hard-working New Yorkers to build a better future for their families. Beyond construction, the Spark Project will also bring permanent, good-quality jobs in science, research, and operations, diversifying our city's employment landscape and securing long-term economic growth. The Spark Project is a bold investment in science and innovation, positioning New York City as a global leader in research and development. This facility will drive advancements in fields like healthcare and technology, attracting This facility will drive advancements in fields like healthcare and technology, attracting top talent and fostering partnerships with local universities and institutions, including CUNY. These contributions will not only elevate our city's status on the world stage, but it will also ensure that New Yorkers reap the benefits of groundbreaking innovations and develop, groundbreaking innovations developed right here. The Spark Project is more than just a building. It's a beacon of progress, opportunity, and hope for the people of New York City. As a lifelong New Yorker and a representative of a proud union that values quality, safety, and community, I urge you to approve this project. Together, we will ensure that the Spark Project sets a new standard for growth and benefits everyone. As a New Yorker, I take pride in the opportunities our city provides. The Spark Project exemplifies what we can achieve when we invest in our people. Thank you, sir.
Thank you so much, Mike. Next, we hear from Cleveland Cyrus.
Good afternoon, everybody. My name is Cleveland Cyrus. I'm a journeyman electrician and member of Local Union Number Three of the IBW. I'm here on behalf of 28,000 union sisters and brothers to express support for the Science Park Research Campus Project in Kips Bay. It's clear this project is necessary to keep growing in New York as a hub for the critical life science, sciences industry. And important for my union and me is that that will be built by the skilled tradespeople of the unions affiliated with the Building and Construction Trades Council. While many New York City schoolchildren will join the life science, sciences, and healthcare sector in the future because of this Spark Project, many public schoolchildren will also join the unionized building and construction trades, including Local Number Three. The Spark Project encapsulates both of these futures: solid life science, infrastructure built under a project-life agreement by unionized tradesmen and women. Thank you for your time, and on behalf of my union sisters and brothers, I urge you to support the Spark Project.
Thank you. And last, we hear from former Councilmember Stephen Levin.
Thank you very much, Chair. Chair Riley, Councilmembers Powers and Narcisse, nice to see you all. Good morning. I'm Steve Levin, CEO of Solar One. We are a nonprofit environmental and education organization where we focus on K-12 education focused on renewable energy, green workforce development, and solar technical assistance for nonprofit and other affordable housing. In addition, we are long-term stewards of Stuyvesant Cove Park in Councilmember Powers' district, and we are currently in the final stages of construction on the Solar One Environmental Education Center at 23rd Street in collaboration with EDC, which is scheduled to open in the coming months. I'm happy to issue my strong support for the Spark Project. I've been engaged with the Spark Project for over a year now, and since January of last year, I have served on the Spark Task Force, where I and a diverse set of other community stakeholders met a half dozen times. As a former councilmember, I've been impressed by this level of engagement at the earliest stages of the project, and I look forward to continuing to work with the city. Through the many meetings that we had, I learned just how transformative the Spark Project is. It's a tremendous workforce development opportunity. It truly, it is truly unique in that it will bring students and industry onto one campus. As you have seen many times in developments in New York City in recent decades, this kind of cohabitation leads to great innovations. Students will be exposed to the life sciences industry, meet people, get internships, and learn what it takes to enter the industry. Industry will have the opportunity to have a robust pipeline of talented New Yorkers who can make up their future workforce. And the neighborhood will benefit from the energy of a campus full of ambitious youth and innovators through a new high school, the community facilities, health and hospitals, OCME, and private industry partners. I'm also thrilled that the project will be using cutting-edge construction techniques like circular construction, which will result in emissions reductions equivalent to taking thousands of cars off the road. Obviously, at Solar One, we focus on environmental science as opposed to life science, but we see a strong complement in the Spark Project to our mission of engaging young New Yorkers in the sciences and the related industries, and we are long-term stakeholders in the Kips Bay community. We could not be more thrilled to welcome a Spark to the neighborhood. We strongly encourage the council's support, and we look forward to continuing to collaborate with the city on this project. Thank you.
Thank you. I have no questions for applicant panel. Councilmember Powers?
Sure. Just a quick statement. One, I want to welcome my friend and colleague, Steve Levin, to the chamber, who has shorter hair than when he was here. As a councilmember, I also want to, just IBW, I know there was a, you lost a member just a few weeks ago at the Waldorf Astoria, so, no? Oh, it wasn't one of you guys? Okay, I'm sorry. Well, my condolences to the family. Okay, thanks.
Thank you, Councilmember Powers. Go ahead. Okay. Councilmember Narcisse, you have any questions?
No, I just want to say welcome to our former colleagues. Thank you.
All right. There being no questions, this applicant panel is excused. I'm going to now move to the online panel. That will consist of Santos Rodriguez and Jennifer Rosati. I'll begin first. You guys, excuse, you guys go. We'll begin first with Santos Rodriguez. Santos, if you can hear me, please unmute, and you may begin.
Thank you very much, Councilmember Chair Riley. And just off-topic really quick, Councilmember Powers brought it up. This is obviously why it's important to highlight trained, skilled workforce. You know, the construction industry did suffer a loss last week, unfortunately, non-union, unfortunately untrained. I don't want to digress right from the beginning, but thank you very much for acknowledging that loss to that family. Our hearts go out to them. Good afternoon, members of the Subcommittee. My name is Santos Rodriguez, and I'm here to testify on behalf of Gary LaBarbera, President of the Building and Construction Trades Council of Greater New York, to express strong support for the Sparks Kips Bay Project. The BCTC is an organization of local building and construction trades unions that are affiliated with 15 international unions of the North American building trades. Our local union affiliates represent approximately 100,000 union construction workers. The BCTC's mission is to raise the standard living for all workers, to advocate for workers' conditions and collectively advancing workers' conditions for our affiliates, members, as well as all workers in New York. We believe that the Sparks Project represents the principles and innovation, economic development, and community enhancement, enhancements. This transformative initiative will establish a state-of-the-art science healthcare and public health hub in the Kips Bay neighborhood, revitalizing 2 million square feet of space by positioning New York City as a leader in the life science sector. Spark will not only drive scientific advancement, but also foster sustainability, economic growth in the region. Our crucial aspect, a crucial aspect of this project is the commitment to create thousands of union jobs. The city and EDC have ensured that these opportunities will be accessible to skilled union workers, which align with our mission to promote middle class that support families and communities. Furthermore, the commit, we commend...
Thank you. Time's expired.
Sorry. Can I have two more minutes? I did start with...
Just finish, you can finish up, Santos.
Thank you so much. The inclusive approach ensures that the voice of Kips, the voices of Kips Bay represents the heart or heard, and the project's benefits will extend to those who live and work in the area. The BCTC projects like Spark are aligned with our shared vision improving the lives of New Yorkers, forcing economic opportunity and enhancement of the city's infrastructure. We urge the Subcommittee to approve this vital initiative, which will undoubtedly be lasting benefits at Kips Bay. Thank you once again for the opportunity to testify there.
Thank you. Next, we hear from Jennifer Rosati. Jennifer, if you can hear me, please unmute, and you may begin.
You may begin.
Jennifer Rosati, are you online? If you are, please unmute, and you may begin. You can press star six. Jennifer, if you can hear me, press star six to unmute yourself.
Yep.
There you go.
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you. You can begin.
Okay, thank you. My name is Jennifer Rosati. I currently serve as Chair for the Department of Sciences, Program Coordinator for the Forensic Science Undergraduate Program at John Jay College, CUNY. Our forensic science program has a longstanding history of excellence in the field, and John Jay College itself has a history of education and justice. We provide, we pride ourselves in being an MSI-serving institution, and we have demonstrated a longstanding commitment for serving STEM students with experiential learning opportunities. We currently provide three degree programs, our forensic science program, some molecular biology, and toxicology, with experiential learning opportunities at the undergraduate and graduate levels. Spark would be an integral component to not only support the current educational experiences we provide our students, but it also improved the impact of these experiences across all three of our majors. It is notable that the current OCME facilities need many upgrades, which can be financially cumbersome on older and outdated instrumentation. Spark would allow for upgraded and new instrumentation to be utilized, which is integral to maintain and build upon OCME's current reputation within the field. The project would provide students with access to cutting-edge technology and instrumentation, and with an unparalleled opportunity to further develop their research and practical skills. An important aspect of our program relies on the recognition that students learn best through their experiences. Spark would build, nurture, and reinforce the theoretical lecture-based and practical lab-based skills students learn through their academic pathway provided through our programs. More recent focus for our STEM programs or institutions and the county community is to provide students with career and industry-specific skills to be employment-ready upon graduation. Spark would provide students with a realistic opportunity to gain workforce-related skills, such as the ability to work in a team-focused environment, understand workflow and workplace directives, and to develop their job-related responsibilities and communication skills.
Thank you. Time's expired.
I provide my support on behalf of the Forensic Science Program and Department of Sciences. Thank you very much for allowing me to testify.
Thank you so much, Jennifer. There being no questions for this panel, this panel is now excused. There being no other members of the public who is to testify on L use 217 through 224 regarding EDC's Spark proposal, the public hearing is now closed and items are laid over. I will now open the public hearing on L use numbers 208 and 209 for the 2185 Cole Street rezoning proposal and Councilmember Narcisse, District in Brooklyn. The proposal seeks to develop a residential mixed-use building with approximately 435 apartments in Sheepshead Bay. The proposal also involves the mapping of mandatory inclusionary housing, and approximately 109 of the units would be affordable. For anyone wishing to testify on these items remotely, you must register online through the council's website at council.nyc.gov/landuse. And once again, for anyone for us in person, please see one of the sergeants to prepare and submit a speaker's card. If you prefer to submit written testimony, you can always do so by emailing it to landusetestimony@council.nyc.gov. I would now allow you to turn it over to Councilmember Narcisse to give any remarks.
Good afternoon, and thank you. Thank you, Chair Riley, and thank you for being here, my friend. While no project is without its challenges, we know that for sure, this development at 2185 Cole Street represent an opportunity to bring much-needed housing and jobs to our district, addressing critical needs in our community, which is housing. I am particularly hopeful that this construction jobs associated with this project will be unionized, which I know we spoke about it for 32BJ, so thank you for that. We have to make sure the workers are protected, the wages are in place, right? We have to have the vision of this community while we're doing all of that. As we move forward, it is crucial to support the hard-working individuals and families who will benefit from this project. And I want to thank you, because you've been a great friend, we've been in conversation, and I love the community engagement. So, I'm looking forward to make sure District 46 benefit from this project. So, thank you, Chair Riley.
Thank you, Councilmember Narcisse. And just want to say for the record, we've been joined by Councilmember Hanif. Council, can you please administer the affirmation?
Mr. Bass, would you please raise your right hand and answer the following. Do you swear or affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth in your testimony before the Subcommittee in an answer to all Councilmember questions? Thank you.
No, you're not allowed to say that one more time, Richard.
Now...
Just say, "I do."
I do.
Thank you. Thank you for the view in public. If you need a accessible version of this presentation, please send an email request to landusetestimony@council.nyc.gov. And now the applicant team may begin. I'll just actually please reinstate your name and organization for the record.
I'm Richard Bass. I'm with Aikman LLP. I represent the applicant. Chair Riley, Councilmember Narcisse, thank you for the kind words. Good afternoon, good seeing you all. I have hard copies, if that's helpful.
We, you can save it. We have it on our iPads, so we're fine.
Because that's there, and I want to look at you, I'm going to look at my printed copy, so I'm not disrespectful. Can we go to the next slide, please? The site is a 96,000-square-foot lot. It's a former closed supermarket. It's located between Coyle, Avenue V, and Bragg Street. Coyle and Avenue V are wide streets. Next slide, please. This is the usual area map showing the land uses. It's a residential neighborhood. To our east and south are six-story nitro buildings in a co-op. Next slide, please. This slide shows the condition of the site, and I'd like to thank the councilmember's staff, who's alerted us to illegal dumping, and we took measures to address that. So, I really appreciate you being our daily eyes and ears there. This basically shows a closed supermarket and a very large sea of parking. The meat of the proposal is on the next slide, please. We're seeking two actions. We're looking to change the existing R4 C12 to three different zoning districts, R6A C24, R7A C24, and R7X C24. There'll be a map next that will show the various zoning districts. The second action is a zoning text amendment establishing an MIH area, and we're doing option one. Next slide, please. As you can see from the slide, the R6A is mapped along Bragg, I blanked there for a second, sorry, which is a narrow street. Coyle is a wide street, that's an R7A, and Avenue V is a wider street, and that's an R7X. We're not including the frontage on Avenue U, but we go within 100 feet of Avenue U. Next slide. This shows the proposed, the existing and the proposed zoning map. As you can see, to the west side of Coyle, there was a recent rezoning to R6A, and on Avenue V, there was a rezoning to R7D. Just to show you what's been approved, the next slide shows the west side of Coyle that was rezoned to R7, R6A. The community, well, actually, just to digress for a second, we met with the community board even before we met with city planning, and their two concerns were height and parking. And they also didn't want us to repeat this urban design where you had a very long, unarticulated building. And I'll show you how we address that in additional slides. The next slide shows the recent approval for the corner of Avenue V and Coyle, which results in a nine-story building. Next slide, please. Our proposed development is for 458,000-square-foot development, 4.77 FAR. It's a mix between the three different zoning districts. We're proposing 263 parking spaces, which is greater than the minimum requirement as a response to the community board seeking more parking. We're going to have close to 415,000 square feet of residential floor area. This would be 430 dwelling units, including 108 or 109 permanently affordable MIH option-one units. The minimum requirement is 193 parking spaces. We're also looking at reintroducing a supermarket and other local retail. This would be on Coyle and Avenue V. The community and the councilmember have urged us, as the Borough President, to reintroduce the supermarket to serve the host community. This would have 47 required parking. As you can see, we've provided more parking. Even though the Borough President and the Planning Commission objected, we're, you know, keeping our promise to the community board. The next slide, please, which is kind of hard to see at that distance. This is the site plan. Next slide, please. And to address the community's concerns, we designed this project to be a varied heights between four and nine stories. And as you can see, we don't have a continuous block wall that you saw from the other Coyle development. Next slide, please. And then in rendering form, you can see how it will look in the future when it's, once it's built. Next slide, please. This is from the corner of Coyle and Avenue V, looking... This is from the corner of Coyle and Avenue V, looking northeast. Next slide, please. We have a signed agreement with 32BJ. Again, I thank the councilmember for helping facilitate that. We have a commitment to at least 25% MWBE contractors and suppliers, and we're going to create both permanent and temporary jobs. The last slide, please. This shows the proposed unit distribution. Because we're at option one, we decided to try to produce more very low AMI units. So as you can see in the lower right-hand of this page, we're looking at 60% of the affordable units at 40% AMI. This is normally deeper than normally having three bands. So we're doing two bands, one at 40 and one at 90. But the majority of the units, the affordable units, will be at the 40% AMI. Now, if I could, whoever is running the slide projector, can we go back to the sixth page? It's the proposed zoning. Keep going, keep going. That one. So it was brought to my attention earlier this week that there seemed to be some confusion about what City of Yes does to this project. The R6A on the right was increased by 11,400 square feet and additional 10-foot height. That results in approximately 11 units. We're not changing the proposed heights of the design of our buildings because 11 units over a 38,000-square-foot zoning district can be easily accommodated. At the bottom of the map, the R7X, it was a 6.0 FAR and 125-foot maximum height. Under City of Yes, it stays as a 6.0 FAR, but they raised the height to 145 feet. Previously, we were at eight and nine stories at 6.0 FAR. With the additional height, we're still at eight and nine stories. We're not going to go to 145 feet because to go to that height, we'd have to do construction with steel, and steel makes this project unaffordable. And with the threatened tariffs by our incoming president, it further makes this project unaffordable. So we will keep our promise of doing eight- and nine-story on Avenue V, and we ask that the R7X be retained. The last district, the R7A, was increased by 15,500 square feet. That's approximately 15 units. In our design, we proposed four-to-seven-story buildings. 15 units can be easily absorbed in those four-to-seven-story buildings. We've spoken with the community board. They have a concern about height. They told that to me three years ago. I think our design and our promise has kept the project between four and nine stories, and we urge the committee and the council to support that. Thank you.
Thank you, Richard. Just have a few questions. I'm going to turn it over to Councilmember Narcisse. There have been two other private applications in the area since 2022. One mapped in R6A district on Coyle Street, and one mapped on R7D district on Avenue V. This application proposes slightly higher density and height. How did you arrive at the mixture of the proposed three zoning district, R6A, R7A, and R7X for this site?
This site versus those two other sites is really different. First of all, it's a 96,000-square-foot lot. It may be the largest lot I've rezoned in my 45-year practice. The other Coyle Street development backed on brownstones, and it was sensitive to the scale of those brownstones, so that's why that was an R6A. And the Avenue V in Coyle Corner was, again, a much smaller lot. Our opportunity to create this amount of housing, and affordable housing, and reestablish the supermarket lent us to go towards these zoning districts. Even though, and I'm going to use a prop for a second, even though the height districts, the height in these districts are higher than we want, zoning is like this cup. Your zoning entitlements bring it up to maybe 70% of the cup. Under the new R7X, it's actually only 60% of the cup. So even though we have the ability to go higher, we're not going to for economic reasons. We're going to do stick and plank construction and not do steel. That's why the heights are between four and nine stories.
You're proposing a building ranging from four to nine stories, but the proposed zoning district allows significantly more height in the R7A and R7X districts. Why not take advantage of this full-higher lot by the zoning then?
Because it doesn't make economic sense. To build higher, we would have to do steel. Steel is much more expensive. If this was a midtown Manhattan site with a view of the Hudson River, I might give you a different answer. But this is in Sheepshead Bay. We want to make the project affordable. The quote-unquote "market rate" units are going to be priced almost at the same level as the affordable units, so we have to keep costs under control.
And lastly, have you undertaken any outreach or engagement with the NYCHA, Nostrian, or Sheepshead House Tenant Association to determine which ground-floor retail uses are most needed in the area?
Yes, and again, I want to compliment the councilmember who gave us those introductions. We've had several discussions with the NYCHA leadership. We know what they would like in terms of retail. This project took much longer than we expected, so we've had discussions with various retailers, including supermarket operators. But until we have an approval and we start getting into construction, we won't be able to nail down the exact tenant, but we know what they want.
Thank you, Richard. Before I call on Councilmember Narcisse, the only in-person testimony I have here is Caitlin from 32BJ. If you wanted to testify on this Coyle project, and I did not call your name, please just indicate to the sergeant-at-arms that you filled out a paper, all right? Councilmember Narcisse?
Thank you, Chair. I want to say thank you to Richard for being, you know, a good team. You know, you want to reach everyone, you want to engage everyone. You're a great team leader of whoever you represent. So I want to say thank you to you. I want to say thank you to Brian and Dana that have been on top of it, that have been helping me to the process to make sure that we represent the 46th district well. And of course, the tenant association from Nostrian and Sheepshead. And Teresa from Community Board that have been on top of it. Having said all that, I want to say that we're going to make sure that we address all the issues that we spoke about, and furthermore, to make sure that MWBEs stay what, that the conversation we had, the percentage stayed the same, unionized workers, and making sure that our community, the District 46, benefit from the project and all the family that are coming on board, of course. So even though I trust you, Richard, you're a lawyer, you know we're going to have to put certain things on papers and making sure that it fit just in case if you, the person that you represent that's doing the projects, decided not to do it anymore. So we have to make sure that we have things on paper to protect our community. There used to be a supermarket at the site of your proposed development, which was an essential community amenity, right? What is the status of your conversations with prospective tenants for the supermarket space? Have you received letters of interest from any, I mean, prospective tenants?
We've had discussions with several operators. Because this project took almost three years to go through the public review process, we have no letters. Once, hopefully, the city council votes in a couple weeks, we can then restart those discussions and get those commitments. We will keep your office appraised of our progress on that, but no one's going to agree to a project that's still not approved.
But you would continue doing the outreach to make sure we have that supermarket?
Absolutely. The economics of the project relies on a supermarket, so it's in our best interest to have a supermarket.
Okay, and you know my chief of staff is not going to let go of that too. Say is in the house listening. It is important that the commercial loading areas for a potential supermarket is appropriate and does not interfere with the circulation of pedestrian and vehicular traffic. What consideration went into locating the commercial loading area on Coyle Street?
Well, the architect and the engineer designed it so there wouldn't be that type of conflict. Also, the community board was quite helpful. They made suggestions that we followed, and so the design we have that we presented today takes into account those concerns.
Do you plan to apply for the fresh tax incentive program?
Yes, the borough president put that in their resolution supporting the project. Yes, it would be silly for us to turn down tax incentives.
Thank you. Now, this question, like I said, I trust you, but we're going to have to go there. City of Yes for housing opportunity increased the height and density permitted in several zoning districts, including R6A and R7A. Can you please state for the record, what is the maximum allowable height and FAR for the three zoning district?
Sure. Let's start with the largest.
Like the R6A, R7A, and R7X?
Right.
And how, where they changed the city, I mean, by the City of Yes?
Okay, the R7X did not change the FAR. It was 6.0 before, it's 6.0 now. The maximum height was 125. It's now 145. At 125, our project was at 80 and 90 feet height. The R6A was a 4.6 FAR. It's now a 5.01 FAR. That increased the potential development by 15,500 square feet. It increased the height, maximum height, from 95 to 115 feet tall. Again, our proposal was 40 to 70 feet on Coyle. And on the R6A, it changed it from a 3.6 to a 3.9 FAR, an increase of 11,400 square feet, and also increased the height by 10 feet from 85 to 95. We're not changing the height of our buildings on Bragg. We will absorb those 11 apartments in the proposed height that we showed you. Again, just, you know, sorry that I keep using the cup. I used to be a professor, and I loved, you know, props. Just because there's a maximum height limit doesn't mean you build to that height limit. Again, your zoning entitlements only will bring you up so far on the R7X. And you have to speak to city planning why they went from 125 to 145. We didn't need the 125 at the 6.0. We definitely don't need the 145. But to go to that height, we would have to change construction methodology, and that is expensive, and that makes us not do the project. So we're going to do a plank building, and we're going to keep our promise of eight and nine stories, regardless of what the zoning district has. And your question is, you know, I've been doing this a long time. Every zoning I've done, the community raises the same issue that your building is X, but, you know, the zoning permits Y. Chairman Riley, you probably have heard this many times.
So that's the reason we're focusing on a square footage. May I ask you, Community Board 15 supports development here, but feels strongly that the height should be no more than the nine stories proposed in your presentation. When this project begins, the proposed R7A district limited development to nine stories. But now, after City of Yes, it allows up to 11 stories. You already straightened that out. You're not going to go higher. We could change the R7A district to an R6A district to limit the height on the Coyle Street to nine stories as originally proposed. Have you looked at this option? We want to make sure the building design you are presented here is what we see actually built. And you heard me before, I trust you, but if your clients sell, we will have to deal with that. That's the only reason I'm asking.
I would never say "trust me" on the record. The difference between what we're suggesting and what you just said in terms of changing the zoning would result in a reduction of over 50,000 square feet of development rights. That's over 50 units, 12 of which would be affordable. I would argue against that reduction because it really gains nothing. It protects this mythology that one could build taller when we're really not going to build taller. The economics doesn't permit us to build taller. The other thing is, besides setting "trust me", we're going to be doing multiple developments in your district with your community board. We're going to be back here before this committee multiple times. If I mislead you today, you're not going to, you know, believe me tomorrow. Our design is what it is based on the economics of it. So just because the zoning allows for a greater height, I'm arguing, don't lose 50 units of housing for no reason.
So thank you, Chair. We're going to further have a conversation because we're in a housing crisis, so we need houses, but thank you, Richard.
And just one further correction. You stated that I was an attorney. I'm not an attorney.
Oh, you're not?
I worked for a law firm. I've been working for law firms for 30 years.
The correction.
I have a master's in urban planning. My mother told me I should have gone to law school, but I just want to make the record.
You did it so well. I thought you were a lawyer. Once upon a time, they thought I was a lawyer too.
I've been doing it a long time.
Thank you.
But thank you.
It's all right, Richard. My mother says I should have been an attorney instead of an elected official, so it's all right. Being that we have no more questions for Richard, you are excused. We're going to start with public testimony, and we're going to begin first with the only person that's here to testify, Caitlin from 32BJ.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, Caitlin may begin.
All right. Hello again, Chair Riley. Hello, Councilmember Narcisse. My name is Caitlin Schuster. I'm here today representing SCIU Local 32BJ. 32BJ is the largest union of property service workers in the country, representing over 175,000 members across our 13 states, including tens of thousands of commercial property service workers, security officers, and residential building staff in New York City. Our union is here today in support of the proposed rezoning and development at 2185 Coyle Street. 32BJ is happy to show support for developers who invest in the communities where they build. I'm glad to report that the developers of this proposal have made a credible commitment to creating prevailing wage jobs for the workers who will permanently staff the future development at 2185 Coyle Street. We estimate that this rezoning will allow for the creation of five to six new property service jobs. Good jobs like these mean prevailing wages, meaningful benefits, and a pathway to the middle class for local community members who tend to fill such positions. In addition to the important job creation that will come from this project as rents reach historic highs and housing availability reaches a historic low, 32BJ recognizes the need for more housing to be built in every neighborhood of New York. This project will introduce 430 new units of housing to Brooklyn Community District 15, at least a quarter of which will be income-restricted and available to low-to-middle-income residents. As the cost of living rises and working New Yorkers struggle to stay in their homes, it's more important now than ever to create affordable housing and good jobs, which uphold the industry standard in the city. For all of these reasons, we're happy to be here in support of the project. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you so much, Caitlin. Any questions for Caitlin?
Just wanted to say thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Narcisse. There being no other members of the public who is to testify on LU number 208 and 209 for the 2185 Coyle Street rezoning proposal, the public hearing is now closed and items are laid over. Okay, we have three more hearings left. We're going to begin first with the Gleason Commercial Overlay, and then following Gleason, we're going to do the 438 Concord Avenue. All right, I now open the public hearing regarding LU's 206 for an application by Gleason Funeral Home located in Whitestone, Queens, in Councilmember Paladino's district. The application seeks to map a commercial overlay to bring the existing funeral home facility, a longstanding neighborhood business, into conformance as well as to facilitate an expansion of accessory parking facility. For anyone wishing to testify on this item remotely, you must register online through the council's website at council.nyc.gov/landuse. And for anyone here, please see the sergeant-at-arms to get a speaker's card. I will now call on the applicant panel for this proposal, which consists of Richard Lobell. We should also have Jonathan Baker, John Golden, Kevin Williams also appearing from the team, but remotely. Council, please administer the affirmation.
Would all panelists please raise your right hand, and I will ask you this question in order. Do you swear or affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth in your testimony before the subcommittee? And in answer to all council member questions, Mr. Richard Lobell?
I do.
Jonathan Baker?
I do.
John Golden? How about Kevin Williams?
I do.
Do we have John Golden?
If he's unavailable, we're able to continue in his absence.
No problem.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for the view in public. If you need a accessible version of this presentation, please send an email request@landusetestimony@council.nyc.gov. Now the applicant team may begin. Richard, just please restate your name or organization for the record.
Thank you, Chair Riley. Richard Lobell of Sheldon Lobell, PC. For the applicant, Gleason Funeral Home. Happy to be here for the Gleason Funeral Home. Commercial overlay rezoning. Next slide, please. This is a very straightforward rezoning, which involves rezoning three lots, 1015, 1025, 150th Street, and 150 1911th Avenue in the Whitestone neighborhood of Queens, from an R two A to an R two A C two two district, which would permit the conversion of one lot, a 5,000 square foot lot, for accessory parking. This will allow for 22 new parking spaces for the funeral home. While the existing lots will provide a total of 36 spaces, this will alleviate much congestion in the area during funeral services. CB seven voted unanimously to approve with conditions, and the Queensborough President also recommended approval. Next slide, please. As the committee can see, there is, on the zoning map, in the shaded areas, in the circled area, existing C two two zoning districts in and around the site. So both on the same block as the site, to the east along Clintonville for 100 feet, as well as diagonally across the site and across 11th Avenue. So this is an area where C two two is commonly known, and the existing funeral home is in existing nonconforming use, which was subsequently enlarged pursuant to BSA approvals. This will enable the elimination of the BSA variance and allow for parking for what is a valued community institution. The funeral home has been there since 1913. The next slide is a tax map, showing the duration and extent of the proposed C two two overlay. The next slide is the area map, which I think well illustrates why this is particularly appropriate. We note the commercial overlay to the east of the site, as well as to the southeast of the site, and large community facility uses abound in the area. The next slide shows pictures of the site. Again, a rather handsome building dating back, the use dates back there again for over a century. There is no proposed development pursuant to this proposal. This would merely alleviate a very challenging parking condition, which exists during funeral services. If you can page through the remainder of the pictures, we would come to the plans and The first plan, merely a site plan demonstrating location of the site. The next slide showing the existing area map. And the next slide showing existing conditions at the site. Note the funeral home in the southwest portion of the picture, as well as the vacant lot to the north, and the parking spaces to the east permitted by BSA variance. And one more slide shows the new proposal with parking spaces now to the north of the site. The final slide shows proposed improvement measures in terms of landscaping. That is the sum total of the presentation, and we're happy to answer questions.
That is great, Richard. Thank you so much. That was less than three minutes.
All good.
Only have one question for you.
Great.
Would the proposed rezoning bring the existing parking on Lot 52 into conformance?
It would, Chair. So the parking in Lot 52 currently exists pursuant to a BSA variance, most recently extended to the year 2038. This would allow for elimination and relinquishing of these BSA approvals.
Thank you. I have no more questions. Councilmember Hanif, you have any questions? All right. Being no questions, your excuse. Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone here that wants to testify on the Gleason Funeral Home? Going once, going twice? Thank you so much. All right. There being no other members of the public who is to testify on LU 206 regarding the Gleason Funeral Home application and map a commercial overlay, the public hearing is now closed and the item is laid over. I will now open the public hearing on LU's number 210 and 211 related to the 438 Concord Avenue rezoning located in Deputy Speaker Ayala's district in the Bronx. The proposal seeks to develop a mixed-use building with manufacturing and commercial spaces and approximately 87 apartments in Mount Haven. The rezoning will also involve the mapping of mandatory inclusionary housing yielding approximately 24 affordable units. For anyone wishing to testify remotely, you must register online through the council's website at council.nyc.gov/landuse. And for anyone here, please see one of the sergeant-at-arms to prepare for a speaker's card. If you want to submit written testimony, you could do so by submitting it and emailing it to landusetestimony@council.nyc.gov. I would now ask council to administer the affirmation, being we administer it for Richard and the rest of the team. I'll just ask him to administer for this one.
Thank you. We also have, I believe, Felix De La Paulera remotely. I'll ask you and Alejandro to raise your right hands and answer the question. Do you swear or affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth in your testimony before the subcommittee? And in answer to all council member questions, Alejandro Waldman.
Yes, sir.
Felix De La Paulera?
Yes, I do. He had to leave, sorry. He's not going to participate.
Okay.
All right. Thank you so much for the view in public. If you need a accessible version of this presentation, please send an email request@landusetestimony@council.nyc.gov. And now applicant team may begin. Just please restate your name or organization for the record. And Richard, let's see if you can beat your time.
Oh, geez. Thank you, Chair Riley. Richard Lobell of Sheldon Lobell, PC, for the applicant. This is the 438 Concord Avenue rezoning. Next slide, please. This is a zoning map amendment, which would rezone four parcels, as well as portions of two other parcels, from an existing M one two district to an M one four R seventy district. This would allow for the redevelopment of 438 Concord Avenue, a site with roughly 25,000 square feet of lot area, to permit for a new 10-story mixed-use building with commercial, light manufacturing, community facility, and residential use. There would be roughly 141,000 square feet pursuant to this proposal, as well as 87, or inclusive of 87 dwelling units. We'll go over a breakdown of the uses in the building, and then Alejandro will very briefly discuss the building program, and then we're happy to answer direct questions. This text amendment would also, this application would also involve a minor text amendment to allow for the R seventy district here to be part of the special MX eighteen mixed-use district, as well as, of course, a text amendment to Appendix F to allow for mandatory inclusionary housing to apply to the site. Currently, the applicant is mapping option one and two, but intends to use option one. The building, next slide, will be a 10-story building plus cellar with roughly, as stated, 141,000 square feet of floor area. While other proposals have come to this committee in the area of the site, particularly across the street, 431 Concord, three years ago, and offered solutions to the local areas' issues with what would be one tool, we are offering a multifaceted tool here. The building itself, in addition to residential, would contain 7,600 square feet, plus or minus of light manufacturing space for light manufacturing makers, artists, 3D printing, et cetera. Would involve 3,300 square feet of commercial retail space, which potentially would be a supermarket, as been discussed with the community, as well as a potential bank branch. This is an area which is very highly underserved in terms of banks, and so that's something that the area, as well as the deputy speaker, expressed interest in. There would be roughly 25,000 square feet of commercial office in the cellar through third floors. This commercial office is really valued by the community and the local area, given the fact that Alejandro has experience in what's called My Hub Studios. This is a studio that he and his partners have opened in Bushwick, which allows for local artists, wellness professionals, and such to use space in the area in smaller quantities and allow for them to open local businesses here. It's really been valued in their community. They've got an over 95% occupancy rate, and they want to use that space similarly here. In addition to this, there'd be roughly 6,600 square feet of community facility healthcare space, and of course, much of the development being devoted to 95,000 square feet of residential. A rough height of 92 feet at the base, going up to 10th floor at 111 feet, with 43 vehicular parking spaces and 52 bike parking spaces. There would also be a breakdown in units of 87 units, which would include six studios and 12 one-bedrooms. I note the units particularly in this case because the local area, and particularly Bronx Borough President Gibson noted the unit breakdown here as being something that was to be valued. 80%, a full 80% of the units in this building would be at two-bedroom or greater, and a quarter of the units would be at three-bedroom or greater. So the Bronx Borough President did note that the opportunity to bring three and four-bedroom units to this community, inclusive of ones that would allow for inclusionary housing, affordable housing within those units, was something that their office rarely, if ever, saw, and they issued a very strong recommendation in favor of the project as is. There would also be, in addition to the units as stated, of course, 25% affordability, and then sustainability pursuant to typical measures. I would merely allow Alejandro to, again, briefly speak to the building program, and then I would just close with a discussion of the land use rationale, and then we're happy to take questions. Alejandro?
Okay. When we envisioned this project, we had several objectives in mind. So the first one was, of course, to increase the supply of housing for the community, market base, as well as affordable units. The second one was to also create new job opportunities. We are estimating the creation of 250 to 300 new jobs through a combination of adding office spaces run by one of our companies called My Hub Studios, that specializes in providing studio spaces to creative of all types, including artists, musicians, wellness professionals, entrepreneurs, et cetera, as well as by adding additional jobs through retail, light manufacturing, and community-related, community facility-related jobs. The third one was to protect existing light manufacturing jobs and strengthen them by combining them with retail spaces. For example, you can imagine a wooden, a wood shop on the back end and on the front end to have a furniture store. Those synergies, we believe, are very powerful. The fourth objective was to offer a community facility to provide health-related or educational services to the community. The fifth was to offer a healthy and fresh food market to the community, which is a longstanding need for the neighborhood. All of this has to be done. The sixth objective was to run the building efficiently and sustainable. So we are offering urban farming at the top of the building and solar panels for electricity generation. So all these objectives can only be achieved simultaneously, only through the proposed mixed-use zoning. We are not only proposing here to build a new building, it is much more than that. We are helping, contributing to build a stronger and vibrant community. And we hope that this project will become an example for the future of the Bronx.
Thank you. To close, if you can just advance the slides to the zoning map, which just demonstrates exactly why we feel from a zoning standpoint, the proposed R seventy is appropriate here. And then we're gonna go to the area map in a moment. But you can see in the general area of the site, there are R six zoning districts, R seven zoning districts, M one two at the site, and M one three. What does this mean? R six districts allow for a maximum floor ratio of 4.8, close to 5. R seven districts, including one immediately to the north of the property, allow for greater of 4.0 with quality housing and greater with inclusionary housing. So we already have floor ratios that exceed four to the north of the site, as well as the existing M one two, which allows for a 4.8 FAR, and to the south and southeast of the site, an M one three, which permits a 6.5 FAR. The proposed 5.6 FAR here is entirely appropriate, given these larger floor ratios available around the site. And I would close just by looking at the area map, which is two slides ahead, to demonstrate that there is an R seventy district, much like we are asking, immediately across Concord Avenue. This was zoned, approved by the council in 2021. There's been no development there. And so the idea with this building is that we're not interested in a rezoning, we're actually interested in a built project. And we're very excited about the fact that we've gotten great support within the local area, the tremendous support of the Bronx Borough President's office, and are offering a development, which not only allows for job generation, over 200 jobs created, but also in terms of the housing, allows for units which have washers and dryers in each unit, which have 80% of them with balconies. This is really a model in terms of a multifaceted, multi-use building. And with that, the applicant's happy to answer any questions.
Thank you so much. Just, I believe, just one question. While this proposal for truly mixed-use development is on, excuse me, while this proposal for truly mixed-use development is on the one hand exciting, it also raises challenges of finding and retaining suitable tenants. Can you please describe your outreach thus far with groups interested in the commercial and community facility space proposed? And furthermore, the community board has expressed that local entrepreneurs, artists, and manufacturers should be given preference for the available space in the development. Can you speak to that specific request and how you might be able to work with the community to find suitable tenants?
Happy to discuss that directly, and then I'd ask Alejandro if he has any additional comments. So we've got an applicant here who is really engaged and has been attending community board meetings since prior to his application, really wants to dig in and see what he can do as far as this community is concerned. The first thing is that he and his partners have experience with similar commercial space with My Hub Studios in Bushwick. Again, over 95% occupancy. They take in local artists, and I think the creativity is they allow them to come in in small studio spaces, 200, 250, 300 square feet. There's recording studios in there, there's wellness professionals. So it's a project which has really been embraced by the local community. Similarly here, given their prior experience, they intend to engage the local community and allow for this local utilization. We heard the community board's opinion in terms of that studio space, and Alejandro and I have talked about the fact that we will make an effort, both within the local community, as well as through the Bronx Borough President's office, to engage local stakeholders and get more local people into that space. Frankly, it makes the most sense for people in the area to use that commercial space, and we're going to make every effort to do so. The second thing with regards to the commercial use generally, Alejandro has already reached out to various potential commercial tenants, most importantly to, he's looked at potential food stores, and also looked at potential bank branches, a particularly desirable use in terms of the opinion of Deputy Speaker Ayala. And so we've made that outreach already. He and his partner have experience with certain banks, and so they've been able to do that. And we also would, just as an aside, bring up the fact that this is in a fresh food-eligible area, and so we've talked internally about bringing a fresh application after potential rezoning in order to ensure a food store will be utilizing the site. So all of that, together with the other uses in the building, we think make this, as the Chair said, a very exciting project, and we're looking forward to further engaging the community in order to do that.
Thank you. There being no questions for this panel, this panel's excused. Is Felix De La Paulero, I believe you said he left early, right?
He left, yes.
Okay. Is there anyone else here that wants to testify on 438 Concord Avenue? No one online? Okay. There being no members of the public who is to testify on LU's 210 and 211 regarding 438 Concord Avenue rezoning, the public hearing is now closed and the item is laid over. All right. I will now open the public hearing on LU's number 212 and 213 relating to the 441 and 467 Prospect Avenue rezoning proposal in Councilmember Hanif's district in Brooklyn. The proposal seeks to redevelop the commercial site of the Arrow Linen Company into approximately 244 apartments. Arrow Linen relocated its commercial laundry facilities, which served many of the city's restaurants, to new facilities on Long Island in 2013. The rezoning will also involve the mapping of mandatory inclusionary housing, and approximately 61 of the units would be affordable. For anyone wishing to testify on these items remotely, you must register online through the council's website at council.nyc.gov/landuse. And once again, for anyone here in person, please see one of the sergeants to prepare or submit a speaker's card. If you prefer to submit written testimony, you can always do so by emailing it to landusetestimony@council.nyc.gov. I would now like to give the floor to Councilmember Hanif for her remarks.
Thank you, Chair Riley.
Thank you, Chair Riley, and good afternoon, everyone. I'm Councilmember Shaana Hanif. I proudly represent the Thirty-Ninth Council District, which includes the 441 and 467 Prospect Avenue rezoning application on today's agenda, also known as the Arrow Linen Development. My office has already received a significant amount of feedback on this application, and I want to assure you that I've been carefully considering the voices and concerns of my constituents as this application progresses through the formal review process. Over the past several months, I have participated in several public hearings regarding this rezoning proposal, including Brooklyn Community Board Seven's two-day hearing on September ninth and September twelfth, and Brooklyn Borough President Antonio Reynoso's hearing on October ninth. I've also reviewed hundreds of letters and heard from many community members. I want to sincerely thank everyone who has shared their views with me, and I am especially grateful to those who have joined us today to testify. While there have been a range of opinions expressed, one priority has stood out, and clearly a shared concern, the urgent need for affordable housing on this site. New York City is facing an unprecedented housing crisis with a severe shortage of affordable options. Despite our population growth and job growth, we are not producing nearly enough housing to meet this demand. The problem is pronounced in neighborhoods like Windsor Terrace, where zoning changes over the past decade have led to no new developments offering affordable housing for local residents. The result has been an escalating affordability crisis, pushing families out of their neighborhoods, out of their communities, and ultimately, out of the city they call home. Housing affordability has been a central focus of my work throughout my career, from organizing as a tenant organizer advocate for NYCHA residents in Queens, to community organizing in Kensington, where I grew up, and now as your councilmember. As someone who was born and raised just a short walk away, I've seen firsthand how families that once called this home are being priced out at a time when we should be providing them with the safety and support New York City's policies are meant to offer. Unfortunately, many are now forced to move to places they can afford, but these new locations don't extend the same sense of protection and belonging. Just last month, the City Council took a major step forward in addressing our housing crisis with the passage of the Historic City of Yes for Housing Opportunity and the City for All Housing Package, securing the largest investment in housing production in two decades, creating eighty thousand new units of housing in New York City. With these critical zoning updates, we now have an opportunity to ensure that this rezoning maximizes the number of affordable units in our neighborhood while protecting current residents and preserving existing homes. That said, while I recognize that this proposal includes twenty-five percent affordable housing through the mandatory inclusionary housing program, I must be clear, this is the legal minimum, not the solution our community deserves. Twenty-five percent affordable housing is simply not enough. Affordable, affordability cannot be an afterthought or a checkbox on an application, it must be a sustained, long-lasting investment in the future of this neighborhood. As we move forward, I will continue to advocate for deeper affordability with a particular focus on those most at risk of housing insecurity. I look forward to hearing more from the Arrow Linen team on how they intend to ensure this project contributes its, its fair share to the citywide and local housing challenges. Many local residents have also expressed concerns about the height of this proposed rezoning. I understand the importance of preserving the unique character and identity of Windsor Terrace, and I believe with the right modifications, this project can add to the fabric of our neighborhood while also delivering much-needed, permanently affordable housing. I look forward to continuing to engage with all stakeholders to maximize affordability and build community consensus. Finally, I want to thank Community Board Seven, Borough President Antonio Reynoso, the City Planning Commission, and my colleagues on the zoning subcommittee for their thorough evaluation of this proposal. I also want to extend my heartfelt gratitude to the residents of Windsor Terrace and all those connected to this community for their continued engagement and invaluable input throughout this process. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Hanif. I'm now calling the applicant panel for this proposal. Council, can you please administer the affirmation?
Panelists, would you please raise your right hands, and I will call on you in order to answer the following. Do you swear or affirm to tell the truth and the whole truth and nothing but the truth before, in your testimony before the subcommittee in an answer to all councilmember questions? Nora Martins.
I do.
Andrew Esposito.
I do.
Nellie Hennessy.
I do.
Thank you.
Thank you. For the viewing public, if you need a accessible version of this presentation, please send an email request to landusetestimony@council.nyc.gov. And now the applicant team may begin. I'll just ask you, please reinstate your name and organization for the record. You may begin.
My name is Nora Martins. I am from Acreman LLP, the applicant's land use council. Good afternoon, Chair Riley, Councilmember Hanif. Thank you in advance for your time today, and Councilmember Hanif, for the many hours and days and evenings that you have spent to date on this project. I'm joined by Nellie Hennessy from Caliendo Architects, the project architect, and by Andrew Esposito from Apex Development, the applicant's development partner. They'll be available for questions at the conclusion of our presentation. This application is brought by Arrow Linen, a family-owned business that has owned and operated at the site of the rezoning for over forty years, seeking to facilitate the redevelopment of a non-conforming commercial laundry in a transit and public resource-rich residential neighborhood, replacing it with a residential development and allowing the relocation of the existing facility to a much more appropriate industrial location within Brooklyn. Next slide. You can see here, outlined in purple, the U-shaped mid-block site with two franchises at 441 and 450, 467 Prospect Avenue. Outlined in red, that is the Arrow Linen site. You can see it is located in the midst of a residential neighborhood, just south of Prospect Park and the F and G trains. Next slide. This aerial view just illustrates the current Arrow Linen buildings and operations, which take up a large part of this block and cover the entire site with parking and building, including the mid-block adjacent to the historic residential context. Next slide. Just an aerial view which further illustrates what I just mentioned. Next slide. While Arrow Linen has been at this site for over forty years, the site has operated as a non-conforming commercial laundry use for nearly one hundred years, previously occupied by Cascade Company. You can see a historic photo here showing a smokestack, which actually has since been removed, but was previously at the site. Next slide. This application seeks two land use actions to facilitate the proposed development, would seek a zoning map amendment to change the existing R-5B zoning district to an R-71 zoning district, and a zoning text amendment to establish a mandatory inclusionary housing area with option one, which is twenty-five percent of the residential floor area at or below sixty percent AMI. Next slide. The proposed development is comprised of two buildings, designed this way because of the unique site and also to maximize the open space on the site, two thirteen-story buildings that rise to a total height of a hundred thirty feet. However, while thirteen stories is the maximum height, the buildings are comprised of four and seven-story base heights. The buildings are highly articulated to reduce the impact of the height from the street level and to, to match the base heights on, on the block, which is something that the R-71 zoning district permits by design. Just under two-hundred-and-fifty thousand square feet of residential floor area. I will note that this project was conceived and designed prior to the City of Yes adoption last month, and so this presentation and our designs still account for the four-point-six FAR. The City of Yes rezoning, sorry, City of Yes text amendment would allow a five-point-oh-one FAR, which would be about twenty-two thousand square feet more at the site. Unlike the nineteen stories that was originally proposed, and I know was a great concern for the community, not something we had ever considered for the project, that maximum is now fifteen stories, but we are still committed to building no more than thirteen stories. The additional twenty-two thousand square feet, which is about twenty units or so, could be accommodated within the existing envelope, given the size of the site. Within the existing height, the envelope would need to change a bit. This would be about two-hundred-and-forty-four dwelling units, again, a little bit higher with City of Yes, with twenty-five percent of those units permanently affordable under MIH option one. Included a significant number of two- and three-bedroom apartments, and that distribution would continue with the permanently affordable units. Lastly, and I think not insignificantly, the project would restore space that is currently covered by building, totally, you know, impervious with nearly half an acre, twenty-one thousand square feet of landscaped open space at the rear of the site, adjacent to the residential rear yards on the block. Next slide. The site plan illustrates the proposed open space as well as the building massings that show the articulation. Next slide. And then a rendering showing the proposed materiality. Obviously, this is still to be designed, but the concept is to break up the massing of the building and to have the base match the existing materiality on the block. Next slide. Just a little more detail on the proposed open space, because we have heard through this process about concerns about stormwater runoff. This would be a vast improvement over the current conditions at the site, adding twenty-one thousand square feet of soft scape, nearly ninety percent of which would be pervious, would make a big difference. And of course, the new development would comply with all stormwater requirements from DEP. Next slide. As Councilmember Hanif mentioned, and as everyone is aware, housing is pressing issue citywide, no less so in Community Board Seven, and particularly in this specific neighborhood, in the neighborhood of Windsor Terrace, where only point-zero-one percent of housing is currently income restricted. The housing stock generally is aging, and only two-point-four percent of the housing in Community Board Seven was built in the last fifteen years. Next slide. This is a unit distribution, I won't go through it in detail, you have it in your packets, but happy to answer any questions. This is showing a potential distribution of the permanently affordable units at forty percent AMI, sixty percent AMI, and eighty percent AMI bands. Next slide. That concludes our presentation. We thank you again for your time and look forward to the subcommittee's questions.
Thank you so much. I have a few questions, and I'm going to pass it over to Councilmember Hanif. The community board voted against this project, and the opposition has centered on objection to the proposed height. Have you explored alternative building designs or zoning scenarios that will reduce height by yield the same unit count?
Yes, we have looked at some alternatives at the beginning of this project and then also throughout this process. One of those districts would be an R-7A contextual zoning district, which has the same floor area, would result in the same number of units, but does have a lower maximum building height. The reason this was not selected from the beginning of the process was, in consultation with city planning and with our input, we found that the articulation and the design of the buildings, particularly given this unusually shaped site, was much better, for lack of a better word, than under the R-71, although the buildings would overall be lower, which we understand is something the community is looking for. There would be a higher building wall on the, on the street wall and less articulation to the buildings.
What would be built on this site if this rezoning were not to be approved?
It would likely, I mean, an as-of-right development here, there is no, currently, and I think it's an important point, there's currently no mandatory inclusionary or even voluntary inclusionary housing mapped here. There is no requirement to provide affordable housing. It could be, under the R-5B, likely condo development, residential condo development.
Have you begun your search for where to relocate Arrow Linen's laundry business, and have you considered relocation to one of Brooklyn's industrial business zones?
Yes. Again, at the beginning of this process, because that is a critical element of the project, the applicant had spoken with the Borough President's Office, reached out to EDC, and also spoken with SBIDC about potential relocation sites. However, until this rezoning process is complete, they cannot fully engage in that, in that relocation plan, but that is absolutely the, the concept.
Since you have presented and committed to using MIH option one, why does the application propose to map both MIH option one and two over the rezoning area?
The reason for that was to preserve flexibility, but the applicant is committed to option one.
Okay. I'm going to yield to Councilmember Hanif. If I have any more questions, I'll come back and ask.
Thank you.
Councilmember Hanif?
Thank you, Chair, and thank you Nora, Andrew, Andrew and Nellie for joining us today. So as you know, over the past few months, Windsor Terrace residents have voiced their concerns very loud and clear during many hearings hosted by the community board, the Borough President, and the City Planning Commission. They've consistently highlighted the urgent need for affordability and raised concerns about the proposed height. The depth of affordability is a top concern for both me and my constituents as we continue to see residents displaced from my district and the city. Can you walk us through your consideration of a one-hundred percent affordable development on this site?
Sure. Again, something that we did review and engaged in affordable housing consultant to take a look at, along with, you know, our experience with affordable housing development, which our firm does a lot of work in that space. Unfortunately, right now, the pipeline for public financing for a hundred percent affordable housing development is quite long. This is a big site, it would be a large financing, a large use of public resources, and this neighborhood and this kind of site is exactly why the MIH program was created. It's an area where market-rate housing can cross-subsidize permanently affordable housing that is privately financed, does not use city resources, and does allow for production of those affordable units far more quickly than if they were a one-hundred percent publicly financed.
Fine. So have you discussed the possibility of financing one of the two buildings as a one-hundred percent affordable new construction project with HPD?
We have looked into that. Again, it's the same, it's the same concern, even though it would be smaller and less units. Again, the pipeline is just very long, and the applicant can't finance one building and start construction and then have to wait five years on the other portion of the site, and then whilst trying to relocate the operations of the facility.
And so this is, just to make sure we have this on the record, the concern is mainly about the timeline?
Yes, yes.
As it stands, the proposal with the base level of MIH affordable units falls, as we've said a lot, short of what this community needs. Are you exploring ways to increase the number of affordable units beyond the twenty, thirty required at sixty to eighty percent area median income?
Yes, absolutely. We are exploring that, and we look forward to presenting, to presenting that to the councilmember.
And if you are willing to provide additional affordable units beyond MIH, can you commit to ensuring deeper affordability for those units?
Deeper than option one of MIH?
Deeper than option one.
That's something we would have to consider, but we will definitely look into that.
It's imperative that we, we recognize that we need units that are forty percent, thirty percent, twenty percent, ten percent AMI, particularly the political climate we're entering and the already existing affordability crisis. Why was the R-71, and I know Chair Riley asked a version of this question, could you just, again, summarize why R-71 was chosen, and have you considered other options? And I know R-7A was considered, but summer, can you provide just a quick summary?
Sure, sure. So yes, like as I mentioned, R-7A was considered, and again, we decided to proceed with the R-71, really due to, to the design flexibility that it offered to the project.
And can you just, for the average person, what is design?
Sure, yeah, no, sure.
Tell us.
Wayne and Nellie can, can jump in as our expert here, but... Wayne and Nellie can, can jump in as our expert here, but basically, there are overall height limitations in zoning, but there are also other building envelope controls, particularly in contextual districts, which are the districts that end in a letter, like R seven A instead of R seven one, that provide for certain minimum street wall, minimum maximum street wall heights, setbacks, and other ways the building is actually masked other than the total overall height. So the R seven one, as a non-contextual district, does not have the same controls. So we were able to lower, for example, the front facade of both buildings to four stories, which would not be possible in the R seven A district.
The difference between R seven one, R seven A is basically the, the setbacks that would be possible with R seven one, whereas with R seven A, no setbacks, and it would be a bulkier building.
Right. There would still be some setbacks, but it would be less flexibility.
Less flexibility with the R seven A?
Yes.
Moving on to environmental remediation, could you talk about what sustainability and resiliency features are included in the building's design and construction?
Sure. So the building would be, and Nellie could jump in too. The building will be designed, obviously, it's a new building in accordance with all current codes and regulations, one of which is D C P's, sorry, D E P's new combined stormwater permit regulations, which require significant, I think, five times more stormwater to be retained on site. So that is something that would be required to be complied with and would be a huge improvement to the current conditions at the site. I would also look into doing bio swales for the tree pits in front of the property. I mean, obviously, there's a good amount of frontage, so that would be, um, that would be significant. And then the open space, just the amount of green open space, twenty, um, twenty-one thousand plus square feet restored to the block.
So this is about the residents who are in the building, they will be protected. They won't have issues that pertain to maybe flooding outside of their building?
Oh, the residents of the new building? Do you want to take that?
This will be for the tents, but it would also, the neighborhood will also be, what's the word I'm looking for?
Benefit.
Benefit from this, because there's, the stormwater, we're going to use different methods. Bio swales can also divert the water from the street, the runoff from the street into this bio swell, so they will contain and seep into the ground as to flood the neighborhood. So that's one of them. We're also going to probably do, not probably, the green roofs and solar ready, because that's the new thing.
And the building will be fully electrified, no gas service, all utilities electric.
So essentially, despite the already existing storms that turn into massive floods, this building would contrib, would not contribute to that flooding?
To increase.
To increase.
Yes.
And you know that flooding is, is a big concern in that neighborhood. My office deals with many, many complaints about flooding, and these are disasters. People have to completely renovate their homes, and the city doesn't, you know, subsidize the funding, nor pay through a program. So how are you addressing the flooding concerns beyond bio swales? You mentioned bio swales, green roof. Are there other, how's the, the park going to contribute?
Yes, that's correct. We're going to be using a lot of the softscapes and materials that will let the water seep into the ground and not just hold and flood the neighborhood.
Given that the site has been assigned an E designation, a phase two environmental investigation is required before the construction, what methods will be used in this next phase of remediation?
So yes, that's correct. There is an E designation assigned, which basically puts the Mayor's Office of Environmental Control in, in charge. That gives them jurisdiction over the site before we can pull, a building permit, have to comply with all of their testing and remediation protocols under their oversight.
So this, you're, you're telling me that the Mayor's Office of Environmental Control would be determined?
Environmental Remediation.
Remediation?
Yeah, I always forget my name.
Remediation would determine, or are they determining the tools or the methods, or how is?
Yes, they have full review. I mean, Andrew's been through it.
Soil disposition, it's typically you'd work with.
We need you to put on mic. One second, sorry.
I was trying to speak loudly for you.
Thank you.
Sorry, council member. So typically, in an ordinary development that did not have an E designation, the environmental agency is New York City's Department of Environmental Protection, D E P, of course. When there's an E designation, that is elevated to the Mayor's Office of Environmental Remediation, O E R, which has heightened standards. So they'll have strict oversight on soil remediation. They may require something called an S S D S system, sub-slab depressurization, which allows vapors out of the soil and/or a vapor barrier below the foundation, things that are not typically required with D E P in an ordinary, non-E-designated development site. So we will be working with their office shortly.
Got it.
And I think just an important thing, too, is that usually there's a construction-related health and safety plan, which is intended to protect workers and the community from any adverse impacts from any necessary remediation.
And then I know you're awaiting the proposal. How long do you expect the environmental remediation to take?
We would have to understand further the scope. I mean, typically, it's in conjunction with demolition and then some of the foundation work. So, for example, when we're excavating for a foundation, the folks from an environmental consultant and inspectors will come and review where the soil goes. There's certain trucking tickets where it's tracked to which facility, so it's very stringent. It's a, you know, in conjunction with the early stages of construction, it could be a six-month process, but then there are components like in the event of an S S D S system, which is a system that is incorporated into the building, and then there could be monitoring even thereafter. So we'll have to understand the extent with O E R. They will, that agency will give us what's called a notice to proceed once they are satisfied with the game plan by virtue of a R A P, R A P or R A W P, remedial action work plan, which, when they're satisfied with what's in it, they'll give us what's called a notice to proceed, and then they'll check that we actually fulfill all those obligations.
And as this work will take place, are there potential risks associated with the remediation?
I hate to be cavalier and say no, but the short answer is no. There are quite a bit of E designated sites. I'd almost go so far as to say many. I probably would not say most, but many, many sites have E designations in the city. There's three different types, hazmat, which is soil, air, or noise. And so it's actually very commonplace in development. In fact, some work that we do will incorporate some of these safety mechanisms like a vapor barrier, even if there's not an E designation, because it's best, best practices. So I say candidly that it's, it's commonplace and something that there's, there's quite a bit of, of mechanisms in place to handle.
Will you commit to providing regular updates on the remediation and construction progress to the community?
Absolutely.
I'm moving on to jobs, and then I have just two more questions. Thank you, Chair Riley, for the time. Are you committed to protecting the existing jobs of current Arrow Linen workers?
Yes, absolutely. And actually, part of what this plan will facilitate is not only the relocation, but also building back the number of workers that they had at, in Brooklyn pre-pandemic.
Understood, and that's, that's good news. Will this development create good-paying jobs for building service workers, and how many jobs are you anticipating?
I don't have the number of jobs right now, but we are in active discussions with thirty-two B J and look forward to, to providing an update on that soon.
Moving on to community facility space, how will you ensure the community facility space meets the needs of the local community?
So with the community facility space, that's something that we did not originally envision as part of the project, but that has evolved as something that would be a huge benefit to the community. So we are looking forward to working with council member, with the Community Board, and with community stakeholders to identify potential uses that would be most beneficial.
So that means at this time, there hasn't?
No, we don't have any.
Discussion with tenants to fill the community facility space. Okay, those are all my questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Hanif. There being no more questions for this panel, this, actually, I do have one question. You spoke about employees at Arrow Linen Laundry Business. How many employees are you anticipating that are going to get their jobs back?
I'm, I actually don't have that exact number on me right now. I will send it to you. Sorry, I have it in my folder. But it will be all the workers that are there now is not intended to decrease them, and like I said, increase that number of workers. So we will provide that information.
Okay. And are they currently, whether they currently work in that, I'm not familiar with the location, so is that business?
They're currently, the, the operate, the facility is currently operating, but at a reduced capacity since the pandemic. One of their main, you know, client bases was Hotel Linens, which obviously took a major hit and has only started to build back up.
Okay, thank you. There being no questions, this panel is excused.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We have a lot of people signed up to testify. Respectively, I'm going to cut people off at two minutes. I apologize. I do not want to be disrespectful, but I just want to put that out there. If you disagree, I just want to say you guys have been doing a tremendous job with approving or disagreeing. Keep it the same way, please, respectfully. Thank you so much. The first panelist group that we're going to call up first consists of Timothy Giles, I'm sorry if I mispronounced your name, or Gills, Laura Holbert, Jacob Walsh, Kate McCabe, and Brigid Odeya. We're going to begin first with in-person testimony. We're going to complete all in-person testimony, and then we're going to move to online testimony. Okay? The following group I'm going to call up, so you could get ready, is going to consist of Luz Luz Torres, Cleveland Cyrus, Caitlin Schutzer, Matthew Wagman, and Samaya Robaya. I'm sorry if I mispronounced your name. We'll begin first with Kate McCabe. Kate, you may begin.
Good morning, or afternoon now. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. My name is Kate McCabe. My husband and I grew up around the corner from Arrow Linen and now live in nearby Kensington. I want to share three reasons for the City Council to amend Arrow's zoning application from fifteen stories with the minimum required affordable units to Housing Not High Rises' proposed solution of R six A and at least forty percent affordable units. Number one, Arrow is exploiting the laws that were meant to help and protect communities. Mandatory inclusionary housing was created to encourage affordable housing, but Arrow is using it as a tool to create tremendous land value. Spot zoning laws were created to protect communities from one owner reclassifying their land to the detriment of the surrounding community. In order to avoid an illegal spot rezoning, Arrow included eleven additional buildings, ten of which are renter-occupied, and composed of forty-four units, six of which are rent-stabilized. That is a misuse of the purpose of the law. If the City Council approves this misuse, the Council is condoning tenant displacement as a tool of luxury development. Number two, Arrow's proposal will displace tenants and transform Prospect Avenue into a luxury boulevard. There are roughly two-hundred-and-one rental units on the block, fifty-nine of which are rent-stabilized. What happens to those two-hundred-and-one families if their landlord can rezone and make twice as much per apartment and add twelve stories to the building as this precedent would encourage? Those renters lose their homes and Prospect Avenue transforms into luxury rentals. Number three, this decision. Whether our City Council listens to the voices of constituents or to real estate lobbyists has citywide implications. Housing Not High Rises organized three community-minded, community-wide meetings with hundreds of attendees. Community Board Seven voted thirty to six against the proposal, and testimony to the City Planning Commission and Borough President overwhelmingly opposed the Arrow application. The voices of our neighbors matter. As Councilmember Hanif has said multiple times, she decides. But the point of the U L E R process is for all parties to be a part of the decision-making. And while this application is for the Windsor Terrace South Slope community, it could be anywhere in New York City. We hope you will recognize
Thank you, Kate.
the important vote you will be making for all New Yorkers and vote to reject this application as submitted. Thank you for the additional time.
Next, we're going to hear from Jacob Walsh.
My name is Jack Walsh. I'm a lifetime Park Slope Windsor Terrace resident, and I support contextual affordable development of the Arrow Linen site, but I oppose Arrow's proposal. While many closed-door meetings have taken place between Councilmember Hanif, Arrow Linen's owners, developer, Open New York, and lobbyists, the community has organized transparently to raise awareness and provide alternatives. We engaged Catholic charities to make a market rate offer based on a seven-to-nine story zoning to build one-hundred percent affordable housing. Arrow rejected it, betting their lobbyists would get their proposal approved as is. Our two community meetings were attended by two-hundred and five-hundred people. Ninety-five percent opposed Arrow's proposal. The C B seven land use committee hearing, C B seven full board hearing, Borough President's hearing, and the City Planning Commission hearings had a combined six hundred and eighty-one testimonies. Ninety-three percent opposed Arrow's proposal. C B seven's full board voted thirty to six against. Calculate all testimonies for today's hearing, and you will undoubtedly find an overwhelming number opposed as well. But as we've heard, Councilmember Hanif gets to decide. I implore the council member to amend the application to R six A designation with forty percent affordability. With a slight adjustment to Arrow's proposed unit mix, R six A allows for up to one-hundred-and-twenty-four apartments at nine stories, doubling the number of affordable units of Arrow's proposal. Arrow will make tens of millions, as they have no land costs, and the remaining one-hundred-and-eighty-six apartments will be luxury market rate. Conversely, Arrow's proposal for thirteen, now fifteen stories with City of Yes, includes sixty fewer affordable apartments, and the remaining two-hundred-plus will be luxury market. Arrow can make tens of millions on a development the community wants, or hundreds of millions on a development with fewer affordable apartments that will trigger a landslide of speculation and displacement. The choice is clear: wildly enrich Arrow's owners, or stand on your stated values of community-driven instead of profit-driven development? And the two-thousand community members of Housing Not High Rises will loudly support you when we vote in June. You get to decide. Thank you.
Thank you, Jacob. Next, we're going to have Laura Holbert.
Hello. My name is Laura Holbert. I'm a resident of Windsor Terrace for thirty-five years. Just to be clear, we're all on board with the City of Yes. We're saying yes, let's create units that enable city residents to stay in Brooklyn. But we're sa, we're not saying yes, let's maximize the profits of the Arrow Linen family or the housing developers. I'm here to urge you to deny Arrow Linen's radical upzoning application. It's absurd to say that fifteen or even eleven-story towers would fit seamlessly into the context of the Windsor Terrace neighborhood surrounding the Arrow Linen site. The surrounding houses are mostly three stories high. The skyscape proposed would be unrecognizable, and the number of luxury units being pursued is out of touch with the character of the neighborhood. Limiting the upzoning of the area to seven stories and increasing the percentage of mandatory inclusioning, inclusionary housing from twenty-five percent to forty-five, or to forty, actually, would serve to bring more affordable housing to the neighborhood. And at the same time, it would deter developers from converting the existing apartment buildings in the neighborhood into luxury high rises. It is a little ironic that the idea behind City of Yes is to prevent residents being priced out of the city. Yet, the upzoning proposal for the Arrow site would displace our neighbors and rent the stabilized apartments. And it has already subjected some privately-owned multifamily buildings to predatory speculators. Yes to housing, but housing for whom precisely? Please vote no on this rezoning application and uphold the Department of City Planning's stated mission to work with neighborhoods to develop sound ground-up frameworks for growth.
Thank you, Laura. Thank you. Next, we're going to hear from Timothy Gills. Sorry if I mispronounced.
Gillis.
Gillis.
Honorable Chair Riley, Honorable Member Hanif. My name is Timothy Gillis, testifying on behalf of the Park Slope Civic Council, the oldest civic association in Brooklyn, where I am a member of the Executive Committee and the immediate past president. The Civic Council takes a balanced view and a balanced approach to land use and development issues. We supported the upzoning of Fourth Avenue in two thousand and three and the Goanis rezoning in two thousand and twenty-one. We are active in Brooklyn Speaks, protesting the multiple delays in building affordable housing at Atlantic Yards. We supported the development of the Fifth Avenue Key Food Site because the developers accepted our demand for more affordable housing and a lower threshold. for more affordable housing and a lower threshold of affordability. We have not objected to any of the 13 or larger-story buildings on Fourth Avenue. We did not oppose City of Yes. We do, however, object to the Arrow Linen upzoning. Our Board of Trustees adopted a resolution in September that I am submitting for the record. Today, I will highlight just two points. First, the only blocks within a half-mile of Arrow Linen that allow 13-story buildings are on Fourth Avenue. From curb to curb, Fourth Avenue is 88 feet wide, whereas Prospect Avenue is just 42. From facade to facade, Fourth Avenue is 120 to 130 feet wide or wider, while Prospect Avenue is just 80. Prospect Avenue is a much narrower street, and it is not a commercial street, yet this upzoning would allow equally tall and out-of-scale buildings. Second, this upzoning request is not a binding development plan. If it is approved, Arrow Linen could withdraw this plan and build something else with even taller buildings allowed by City of Yes. There might be new developers with new plans. One or more of the 11 non-Arrow Linen buildings might be purchased and demolished to permit an even bigger project. The city council should reject this upzoning and insist that the owners negotiate with the community to take advantage of an excellent opportunity to build affordable housing without creating an island of high-rise development on a relatively narrow residential street in a low-rise historic neighborhood. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much. Last, we'll hear from Bridget Odeya.
Hello. Thanks for the opportunity to speak today. My name's Bridget Odeya. I'm a renter. I've lived one block from the proposed site for over 12 years. I strongly oppose this rezoning. Like many of my neighbors, I support new housing at this location, but it must prioritize our community's needs, not maximizing developer profits. Limiting the rezoning to seven stories and increasing the mandatory inclusionary housing requirement to 40% would create more affordable units and protect against displacement of renters. The site is surrounded by 59 rent-stabilized units and pockets of some of the neighborhood's most affordable housing. Allowing 15-story luxury towers will fuel speculative buying, rising rents, and push many of my neighbors out of their homes. Arrow's plan also proposes to rezon 11 privately-owned multifamily buildings, and predatory speculators have already targeted these owners. I've attended nearly every public meeting on this radical rezoning, and I can say that Arrow Linen has not been a good neighbor. Despite owning this property for over 40 years and benefiting from a 25-year taxpayer-funded tax abatement, they spent hundreds of thousands of dollars lobbying elected officials but have made zero attempts to engage with us, the community. Which, as an aside, listening to the other applicants today, it's such a stark contrast to hear some of the other developers who seemingly engaged with the local community, but I digress. Our community deserves better. Limiting this rezoning to seven stories with 40% affordable housing protects existing renters and ensures that housing is treated as a public good, not a vehicle for massive private profit. I urge you to reject this application in its current form and stand with the community you are elected to serve. Thank you.
Thank you so much for this panel, for your testimony and being patient. Your excuse. Thank you so much. The next panel I'm going to call up consists of Luz Torres, Cleveland Cyrus, Caitlin from 32BJ, Matthew Wagner, and Samaya Robaya. All right, first we begin with Luz Torres.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
City Council members, please vote to limit this application to more than seven stories. My name is Luz Torres. I live on Prospect Avenue for almost 25 years. My three-story home is in the Arrow Linen U, sandwiched between the two Arrow Linen driveways. I live on the first floor and rent the other two apartments at below-market rents. I strongly oppose Arrow Linen zoning my land. Arrow Linen has intentionally excluded my involvement, the other homeowners in the U and the Windsor Terrace and South Slope communities. Arrow Linen has ignored Community Board's recommendation to engage the community in discussions regarding the proposed rezoning. Arrow Linen has benefited from 25 years' tax abandonment, which has been subsidized by our city payers. Your constituents. Arrow Linen has continued to meet with our Councilmember Hanif, and other interested parties to elicit support for two 13-plus towers under the guise of affordable housing. Arrow's focus is on selling or renting luxury apartments, which would cause increased rent and market value, making apartments in the area unaffordable to current residents to rent or purchase. In conclusion, I would like to paraphrase Borough President Reynoso, who was a city council member. On May 13, 2016, in a TED Talk, stated, "A basic right of the community is to engage in collaboration and civic engagement." He added that it's extremely important towards the development of an inclusive and empowered community. Councilmembers, from the bottom of my heart, we are asking you to empower us as a community and for our elected officials to listen to our expressed needs and our objections as constituents of District 39. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Next, we're going to hear from Samaya Robaya. I'm sorry if I mispronounced your name.
Bring the mic closer.
Okay, thank you. Hello, everyone. My name is Samaya Robaya, and I'm a proud youth advocate and Kensington neighborhood native. When I was six, my family briefly moved to the suburbs of Philadelphia. At first, it felt like a vacation, but before we could settle into the quiet, we returned to Kensington. The truth is, no place compares to the culture and community that thrives in District 39, especially in neighborhoods like Windsor Terrace and Kensington. Yet, my family's return wasn't easy. My father, an employee of the DOE, and my mother, then a medical assistant, could not afford the city's rising costs. Even then, the cost of living pushed us out. And for many people today, particularly working-class families, the struggle continues. I've seen the effect of the crisis firsthand. Rent increases forces families to crowd into smaller spaces, forcing familiar faces in our neighborhoods to ask around, sometimes even to me as a teenager, if we know of any vacant apartments. This proposal represents a critical chance to ease that burden. The Arrow Linen rezoning plan provides an opportunity to support a significant amount of affordable homes in a neighborhood that has seen little affordable development in years. In a city where working-class families are being driven further from opportunity daily, this is a step we cannot afford to ignore. We must be clear, either we support affordable housing or we don't. I understand that some people are concerned about the height of the proposed buildings. We cannot let this overshadow what is truly at stake. Reducing the height of the proposed buildings would severely limit the number of homes that we can build. This is especially critical in a district where the median income far exceeds that of which many can afford. This proposal creates a space for those families, providing them with the opportunity to live, work, and thrive in the wonderful community that I call home. Maximizing the number of affordable homes is what matters the most, and I urge the city council to support this proposal. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we're going to hear from Matthew Wagner.
Hello. My name is Matthew Wagner. I'm not here to represent any formal group, but rather the interests of young people like myself. For our future, I'm advocating for the Arrow Linen rezoning on Prospect Avenue and any opportunity to ease the housing crisis. I grew up in Windsor Terrace, and I don't know if I'll be able to afford to continue to live there, even in New York City at all. Here are some publicly available statistics which underscore the severity of the situation. I will be happy to share my source with anyone who's interested. Brooklyn housing prices are up around 60% in the last decade, double the roughly 30% CPI inflation rate. The citywide vacancy rate this year is 1.4%, the lowest it has been in 50 years, and less than half of what it was pre-pandemic. In our neighborhood, the median rent within a half-mile of the 15th Street Station is now $3,355 for one bedroom. That is roughly 5% higher than last year, and only affordable to someone making about 120% of the area median income, or over $130,000 for a single person. The only way to address this crisis is to build enough housing to meet the existing demand. According to a study by NYU and Fannie Mae on the NYC housing market, every 10% increase in housing units decreases local rents by 1% over the next five years and also spurs an increase in small business openings. Windsor Terrace desperately needs new housing and has the amenities and quality of life to support it. With more housing, we can support more small businesses, have more leverage to demand improved transit service in schools, and keep the neighborhood affordable to longtime residents. This project is the best opportunity to build in our community. The property is currently a blight on the neighborhood, and converting it to housing will allow us to meet demand without impacting existing homes. While it would be amazing if there are more affordable units in this project, the bottom line is that we need as many units as we can get out of such a good opportunity. I humbly request that the city council not let the perfect be the enemy of the good and continue to approve new housing constructions so we can solve the housing crisis.
Next, we're going to have Kate Schuster from 32BJ.
Hi, one more time, Chair Riley. Hi, Councilmember Hanif and members of the Subcommittee. My name is Caitlin Schuster. I'm here today representing SEIU Local 32BJ. 32BJ is the largest union of property service workers in the country, representing over 175,000 members across our 13 states, including tens of thousands of commercial property service workers, security officers, and residential building staff in New York City. I'm here to report that 32BJ is in active discussions with the development team over an agreement to ensure the provision of prevailing wages and benefits to the future property service workers who will staff 441 and 467 Prospect Avenue after the project is constructed, and which would memorialize the development team's commitment to labor peace at the sites with respect to those same workers. And we're optimistic, and I'm told we're very close to arriving at a written agreement before the project's considered by the full city council this month. And we're also, I want to say, really thankful to the council member for ensuring that the union and our members' concerns were addressed and facilitated during the sealer process. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you. There being no questions for this panel, this panel is excused. The next panel we're going to call on consists of Jay Goldberg, Ford Harris, or Harris, excuse me, Ford Harris, Jonathan Booker, Alex Rotold, and Eric Olson. The group after that will be Sean McCollin, Alex Muza, Olivia Gonzalez, Eric Nielsen, and Gregory Thomas. No, Jeffrey Thomas, excuse me. All right, we're going to begin first with Eric Olson. All right, Eric, we'll begin first with Alex.
Good afternoon, Chair Riley, Councilmember Hanif, and members of the city council. Thank you for the time and opportunity to speak today. My name is Alex. I have lived in Windsor Terrace for over 21 years, my entire adult life. I love the neighborhood, and I'm raising my children here. I'm here today to oppose the rezoning application by Arrow Linen and ask that you limit any rezoning to seven stories and increase the mandatory inclusionary housing in their proposed development to at least 40%. I also request that you use your influence to push Arrow Linen to fully engage with the community about environmental safety, traffic concerns, and most of all, to consider the proposal for 100% affordable housing from Catholic charities. Windsor Terrace is proudly a historically working-class neighborhood populated by city workers and retirees. That includes firefighters, sanitation, and city workers like my husband, and we're getting squeezed from all sides. We are all in agreement about the need for more affordable housing in this city. However, this spot rezoning will accelerate luxury development in South Slope, Windsor Terrace, and Kensington while creating only 61 units of affordable housing and jeopardizing 59 existing units of rent-stabilized housing to development and speculation. If you gain 61 units but lose 59 units of existing residents, that's a net gain of two units of affordable housing at the cost of displacing existing constituents with longtime roots in the neighborhood. Where do these people go? What do they do? Arrow Linen stands to profit hundreds of millions of dollars from this approval. They are requesting a significant exemption to the zoning laws to maximize their profits with luxury development and offering us scraps in the form of trickle-down housing. It was interesting to hear the additional rezoning proposals this morning, where it was clear other applicants had actively engaged the community and provided for their own needs instead of just their own self-interests, like Arrow Linen. As a regular person trying to get by, it's frustrating seeing a business with deep pockets bringing in outside lobbyists to speak on these issues. These are lobbyists aligned with big real estate, and they are coming to our community meetings and melon-ing the people who live in Windsor Terrace who all want affordable housing for all of our neighbors. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you, Alex. Next, we're going to have Jonathan Booker.
Hello, and thank you to the members for this time. I am a 15-year resident of South Park Slope, and I am here urging you to vote against this proposal. We in the community, and I am not in any way against affordable housing, and we believe that it is necessary and something that we want, but this development is not the way to do it. You asked about could they have a lower height limit on this building and have the same number of units, and their answer was very unsatisfactory. They basically did not answer that question. It's clear that you could have a much lower height for this development and still have the same number of units. So they have not in any way answered that question satisfactorily. This is about the profit for Arrow. Arrow is out the door. They are leaving our community. They are leaving Brooklyn. These jobs are going to Garden City where they already are. They don't care about this neighborhood. They don't care about Brooklyn. All they care is maximizing the profit of this transaction. The neighborhood has done plenty to bring new housing to this area. Fourth Avenue is replete with tall buildings. There's a tall building on the other corner of Prospect Park, the huge apartment building that's been built. Gowanus, it's a horosity what's going on in Gowanus, the overbuilding in that area. This is about profit. It's not about benefiting the community. It's not about affordable housing. They are doing the absolute minimum to get this thing built so that they can make the maximum profit. If you deny them, they're not going to go away. They're going to come back and they're going to propose another development that's more in line with what the community wants. I also would note that Arrow didn't show up here. They sent hired guns, people who were paid to advocate for this development. Did they show up? No. Did they show up at our community meetings? No. They refused to engage with us because they have no argument for this except for their own profitability. That's the only thing they're interested in. Thank you for your time.
Thank you so much. Next, we're going to have Ford Harris.
I would just like to say thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak here. My neighbors have all said much more eloquently all the reasons to oppose this rezoning than I can say. So I just want to sum it up with a couple of quick remarks. Firstly, just sitting here and seeing the other possible projects and the involvement that those people have had with the community just speaks volumes to the dearth of that involvement that we've had with Arrow Linen. It's quite frankly been extremely demoralizing. And here's the thing, we all want the same thing. This is a win-win. At the end of the day, the housing crisis in New York City is going to be met with community engagement and compromise. That's all we're asking for. To my neighbors who are for this development, we want the same thing. We want affordable housing units built, but you need to understand, Arrow Linen is not your friend. You really need to understand that. And to Councilmember Hanif, the one thing we're really asking for is just to push back against this profitability model that the developers are coming at. You know, they've got to say, oh, the cross subsidies, it works a certain way, and so based on that, we have to dictate the scope of the project. All we're asking you to do is to push back a little bit on their profitability models to listen to us so that we have a voice. And the scope of this project lies somewhere in a realm that works within the fabric of the community. So at the end of the day, we all want the same thing, and compromise is the way forward. Compromise is what City of Yes is about. It's about a little bit everywhere. It's about all of us coming together to solve the needs. It's not about just giving a windfall to Arrow Linen and having lobbyists, quite frankly, confuse many people who have real needs into thinking that this particular development is their friend. That's not the way to go, and I know you'll do the right thing. We're engaged and we're here with you. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Next, we're going to have Jay Goldberg.
Hi, everyone. Thank you for having me here. I'm Jay Goldberg, and I've lived around the block from Arrow Linen for 18 years. I'm active in Housing Not High Rises, and I strongly support building contextual housing to the Arrow Linen site, seven-to-nine stories at 40% or more Mih. If you view this spot rezoning as a part of the solution to New York City's housing affordability crisis, you are working at cross purposes to your own goals. You say you want an increase in affordability, but what we're talking about here today, approving 15 stories of luxury high rises on one of the most affordable blocks in the neighborhood, is a design to reduce affordability and enrich the Maglioccos who've spent over $350,000 lobbying you and your colleagues in city government. Looking at this application, even the units required as mandatory inclusionary housing would be more expensive than the rents people are paying today on Prospect Avenue. Should you approve it, every future project that directly results from your decision will be another blow to affordability in the neighborhood. We're aware that other council members will look to the local council members' recommendation for their district. Councilmember Hanif, I implore you not to let your political legacy be that you got the ball rolling to replace modest apartments at affordable rents in Windsor Terrace with luxury high rises. Have you talked to my neighbors who rent on Prospect Avenue? I have, and they're scared that this rezoning is going to displace them, as has already happened to them, in Williamsburg, Greenpoint, and Crown Heights. Please limit the rezoning to seven-to-nine stories and require at least 40% Mih. This will yield up to double the rent-stabilized units. This will yield up to double the rent-stabilized units in the Magliocco's application, reduce the profit motive to buy every other modest apartment building in the neighborhood, and reduce the displacement pressure on tenants. The only difference will be the amount of profit the Magliocco's make. Your decision here will send a crystal-clear message about whose side you're on. Councilmember Hanif, the people in your district, the thousands of us represented in Housing Not High Rises, Voice of Gowanus and the Park Slope Civic Council, are active and engaged, and we hope that you do right by us so that we can continue to support you. Thank you.
Thank you. And lastly, we'll hear from Eric Olson.
All right. My name's Eric Olson. My family has rented one block west of Arrow Linen for the past ten years. I strongly oppose this upzoning from five to fifteen stories and over two hundred more luxury apartments in my neighborhood with only sixty or so affordable units. I support seven stories at forty percent affordability. But honestly, councilmembers, I don't think any argument I make today is going to persuade the council. So let me share a couple of things that the public should know when they see this travesty approved. One, Arrow Linen spent three hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars on lobbying to get this approved. This started in 2020 and targeted all key officials in the U-LR process. And you know what? It worked. Everyone targeted has come out in support. In contrast, our own community board voted thirty to six against. Over two thousand residents have signed a petition against it. Two, every public hearing has been burgated by lobbyists from groups like Open New York. These groups are libertarian in philosophy, but clothe themselves in progressive language. They want housing deregulation, and they're funded by big tech and real estate money. Their goal is to spread disinformation and make it appear that communities are divided. Look for these outsiders at your next hearing. Three, this council just passed City of Yes. Windsor Terrace was upzoned from three to five stories with no affordability requirement because it's near a subway stop. We were told a little more housing in every neighborhood, and yet here we are discussing a spot rezoning, three times the allowed height. If the council approves this, they are basically telling constituents that City of Yes was a big, fat lie. Finally, I'd just like to say, whatever this committee decides, it's ultimately Councilmember Hanif's decision. The council almost always defers to the local council member. Whatever she decides is something she'll have to own going into her 2025 election and beyond. So I ask the public to stand with us and let Councilmember Hanif know what you think about this project. Go to housingnothighrises.org, and you can get more info about how to help. Thank you.
Thank you. There be no questions. This panel is excused. The next panel I'm going to call up consists of Sean McCollum, Alex Muza, Olivia Gonzalez, Eric Nielsen, and Jeffrey Thomas. The following group after that will be Nicole Cartenga, David Roche, Stefan, I can't pronounce the last name Stefan, but it starts with a B, Damian Andrade, and Marilyn Copa. All right, we're going to begin first with Jeffrey Thomas.
Good afternoon. My name is Jeffrey Thomas. I'm a homeowner in District Thirty-nine. I go to church about two blocks from the Arrow Linen site. I do support this rezoning application. I think it's appropriate for its block and very much needed in this district. I've testified at the Borough President's City Planning Commission hearings, as have many people here. Out of respect to the council's time, I'd like to add three new things. First off, please do read the Borough President's report. I think it takes community concern seriously, including the concern that we need to see some housing get built, but also many other things you're hearing today, like concerns about the height right by the street. It recommends earmarking more affordable units. I don't a hundred percent agree with the report, but I think it's a good balance, and I think the council would need a very strong case to go in a completely different direction. Second, at the CBC hearing, we also heard about the Concord Ave Bronx project we just heard about today, which is also about thirty percent affordable. The commission asked them, why don't you do more affordable units? And the applicant said, look at the site across the street from ours, which has proposed a hundred percent affordability, approved in 2021, and still has not been built. Now, I completely agree that we have an affordable housing crisis. That's why I want to make sure that the affordable apartments in Arrow's proposal actually successfully get built. That Bronx site, you can go look at it. It's an empty lot with overgrown weeds. I believe they just said that. That is the sad reality of demanding a hundred percent affordability is you get a hundred percent of zero. Opponents of the three and a half million have suggested a smaller hundred percent affordable building run by Catholic charities, who start to write in to say they don't have the funds to build a building there. If the council denies this U-LR, hoping some alternative might still work out, you will get an empty lot with zero affordable apartments for many years. Third, before the CPC voted a couple weeks ago, a DCP staff member made what I thought was an excellent point, which I'd like to quote, "If we have an opportunity to build a hundred percent affordable housing, this density is absolutely appropriate. I would say it's the minimum." So I'm primarily concerned about making sure we get some affordable housing on this site. There is probably room to ask for a little bigger commitment than what the applicant proposed. I'm not here to defend the applicant making a profit. I'm here to defend them being able to build it at all. It would be an absolute shame if at the end of this long process, it turns out we asked for something unrealistic, and we get an empty lot with overgrown weeds. I encourage the council to approve this application. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we will have Eric Nielsen.
Hi. Thank you, City Council, for letting us into this hearing and allowing us to speak today. So my name is Eric. I'm a native New Yorker. I live in Brooklyn. I rented in that neighborhood about twenty years ago, and even then, I had to leave after about a year because of affordability concerns. Later in life, I was able to finally be able to become a homeowner in Brooklyn simply because of new construction in my other neighborhood that I live in now, Bushwick. The, it just seems like there's, my entire adult life, there's been a perpetual housing crisis in New York City because we just simply just don't build enough housing. So that's why I urge the city council to support this project and build it. I know there are concerns for the community about a lack of affordability, but the community has, there just isn't a lot of affordable housing in that community to begin with. So any little bit we can get, I think, is just a win overall. Yeah, thank you for your time.
Thank you. Next, we'll have Olivia Gonzalez.
Hi. Thanks. My name is Olivia Gonzalez Killingsworth, and I'm a resident of Kensington, where I am a co-op owner and a proud constituent of Shehanna, and also a fellow DSA member. Shout out. And I'm here to testify in favor of this rezoning. I think it upholds one of the core values of the city council's fair housing framework, which is more open communities. And, you know, there's been a lot of questions about who the affordable housing would be for. I've actually done some research on this. In the fifty-one to eighty percent area median income range, here are some examples of the types of people who could afford those types of apartments. A New York City public school teacher earning about sixty-four thousand dollars a year could afford one of those studios at sixteen thirty a month, one thousand six hundred and thirty dollars a month from rent. Right now, I think a studio in Windsor Terrace on market rate probably goes for like two, three grand. A parks maintenance worker earning fifty-three thousand dollars, and a minimum wage worker at thirty-three point two thousand dollars a year, together with their combined annual income, would be in that middle-income range, that low-income range, excuse me, and they would be able to afford one bedroom at two thousand thirty-eight dollars a month. These are the current HPD AMI levels. Also, a city accounting assistant earning about seventy-one thousand K per year, and a bank teller earning about forty thousand per year with their five-year-old, that's a three-person household, earning, you know, low income, or what HUD does Danes as low income, would be able to afford a two thousand seven hundred and ninety-six dollar a month two-bedroom. A two-bedroom in Windsor Terrace right now probably goes for about five thousand dollars on the open market. Thank you.
Thank you. I have two names here, but just one person here. Alex or Sean?
I think Alex is online, actually. He had to leave.
Alex Muza?
Alex Maza, yeah.
Sean, you can begin.
Thank you. My name is Sean McGoughlin. I'm a Brooklyn resident, and I'm speaking in favor of the Arrow Linen rezoning. New York is suffering from a severe housing shortage that is leading to substantial rise in the cost of living. This cost of living crisis is impacting residents in Windsor Terrace, across Brooklyn, and across all of New York. Rising housing costs are making it increasingly harder for New York families to stay in their neighborhoods, and for children raised in New York to stay in the city, and for new neighbors from around the world to join our communities. The most effective way to combat these rising costs is to build new housing. This rezoning is a perfect opportunity to relieve the cost of living pressures in this neighborhood. It is important to note that this redevelopment will lead to one out of four new units being permanently affordable. That means lower middle-class residents will be able to live, also be able to live in Windsor Terrace. Reducing the size or scale of this development will not only reduce the number of market-rate units entering New York City's housing market, but many of these affordable units as well. Each of these units that is not built directly leads to a family that could not live in this neighborhood that otherwise could have. Continued delays and modifications to the proposal will also lead to substantial delays that leave these potential residents hanging out for even longer. It is also important to emphasize that this neighborhood is well behind the pace of other neighborhoods in Brooklyn in terms of new units being developed. Specifically, only one hundred and seventy-five units were developed in 2022 compared to the citywide average of four hundred and forty-five. Every neighborhood has to do their part and contribute to fighting our city's housing crisis and take development pressure off of other neighborhoods who have had the most new development in recent years. This rezoning is an excellent opportunity to reduce cost of living in Brooklyn and invite new neighbors across all income levels to join our community. I'm strongly in favor of it. Thank you for your time.
Thank you so much. This panel is excused. The next panel we're going to have consists of Mary Malale, Malale, excuse me, Nicole Tongate, Stefan, with a B, Stefan B, Damian Andrade, and Marlene Copa. So that's Mary, who's replacing David Roche, Marilyn Copa, Damian, Stefan B, and Nicole. Okay. Nicole, you may begin.
Hello. Thank you, first of all, for giving so much time to us and hearing our concerns. I'm here on behalf of myself and my husband as a resident of Windsor Terrace, and I want to say that I oppose this rezoning application because I feel that it is, the project is so out of scale to the area. I taught for many years in a public elementary school in the Gowanus area, and I witnessed firsthand what happened when the high rises went up. Families were driven out completely because the prices for rents and homes became completely out of reach for those families, and the community was destroyed and shifted and changed. Windsor Terrace is a very welcoming community. I think we really would like to see some real work for Yes in providing housing, but at scale and within reason and within affordability. So I really think they should go back and get shifted around and find a way to make housing truly affordable and to the scale of this welcoming neighborhood. And the last thing I want to add, that sunlight is really important in our lives, and I think it's part of what creates a neighborhood as special as this area. And, you know, it's, it could be take a moment to say, let's keep our streets in Brooklyn, some of them, sunlight. Thank you.
Thank you. Stefan? Stefan, last name begins with a B. Stefan? Damian?
Good evening, Chair Riley and Councilmember Hanif. My name is Damian. I am a proud member of Community Board Seven, though I do not represent CBC. A student at Brooklyn College studying political science and a renter, a retail worker, and a lifelong resident of Sunset Park. I stand with my neighbors and fellow working-class families in opposing the application as submitted for Arrow Linen rezoning and have it no more than seven stories. While this project is located in Windsor Terrace, well, while this project is in Windsor Terrace, approving unaffordable developments like this sets a dangerous precedent for neighborhoods like Sunset Park. Developers are already targeting our community with so-called affordable projects that working-class families cannot afford. If we allow this to move forward, it sends a clear message that massive, unaffordable towers are welcome in South Brooklyn, accelerating displacement and gentrification. The developers of this project claim to be affordable, but most of these units are household, are for household earnings between eighty-three thousand dollars and a hundred and eleven thousand dollars, far out of reach. Far out of reach for the nearly eighteen thousand residents in Community Board Seven who make less than sixty thousand dollars a year, according to Data USA. Worse, a hundred and eighty-seven of these two hundred and forty-four units will be market rate, with rents as high as four thousand dollars per month. Only twenty-four of these units are reserved at forty percent AMI, and even those don't meet the needs of retail workers, essential employees, or students like me. Gentrification already has displaced so many working-class families and young people in our neighborhood. These developments bring higher rents, drive out small businesses, and erase the culture and the diversity that makes our communities unique. We need housing that prioritizes deeper affordability, like twenty to thirty percent AMI, and push for the medium mandatory inclusion housing to be at least sixty percent for those who are earning less than forty thousand dollars per year and ensure that young people and working-class families can afford to stay. This is not about one project. It's about protecting our neighborhoods and demanding community-based developments that puts people before profits, and I urge you guys to vote no. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, Marilyn Copa? You Marilyn?
Yeah, I'm not used to this thing.
Okay. And do we have Mary in the building? Mary Malalee?
Okay.
Oh, you just spoke? That was you, Mary? So who was?
Okay.
Hold on one minute. Is Nicole here? Nicole? No? All right, so this person is absent. I'm sorry. Marilyn?
Yeah, I don't want to lose my time. I don't know how this works.
No, you won't lose your time. Don't worry about it. You're Mary. Okay, so I'm Mary. Marilyn, go ahead.
Okay. Good afternoon. My name is Marilyn Copa, and Windsor Terrace has been my home for the past thirty-five years, and I am highly opposed to this high-rise. This is a community that respects our longtime residents and welcomes the new ones. My immediate neighbors include a widow from the World Trade, from, the widow of a World Trade Center hero. Next to me, I have new transplants from the Midwest on one side, and on the other side, an immigrant from Africa and his Asian-American wife. We've had new buildings going up, two-story, two, three-story buildings have gone up on my block in the last ten or fifteen years. One is a condo, one's a rental, and all the newcomers have been welcomed. We've, as a community, we've banded together for causes such as a block-wide yard sale in which we raised money for Ukraine. And my community also includes a lot of non-traditional housing. There's a residence for cognitively impaired, cognitive-delayed adults on my corner. Nearby is a six-story building with at least two hundred and fifty apartments for seniors in which every resident there must be below a certain income level to qualify in order to get in. A block away, there is a homeless shelter, housing many residents who appear to be in need of intensive guidance. And to my knowledge, nobody has protested in the past for any of these buildings that have gone up. Nobody's protested for a homeless shelter that was, I don't know, ten, probably ten, fifteen years ago, put in place, or for any other programs for people in need. Because, quickly, I'm real close. None of these projects included a high-rise of this kind of dimension. And this is really what, we're not objecting to newcomers. We welcome newcomers, but it is the height which is completely out of whack with the rest of the neighborhood, and will just change, it won't be the same neighborhood.
Thank you, Mary.
Okay, thank you.
Oh, not Mary.
It's Marilyn. Close enough. I appreciate it. It's okay. I'm used to it.
I'm sorry. This panel is not excused. There's no question. Thank you for your patience. Next, I'm going to be calling Curtis Weatherford, Luke Levanway, Samir Lavinga, Lavingia, Rachel Fee, Michael Feinberg, and Neil Miller. Okay. First, we'll begin with Curtis Weatherford.
Hi, my name is Curtis Weatherford, and when I first moved to Brooklyn, I tried to move to Windsor Terrace. I worked at a bakery at the time, and one of my coworkers who lived in the neighborhood raved about its convenient access to the F train, which also served the bakery, and its proximity to Prospect Park. I remember how devastating it was when I arrived to tour a just-listed place that was one of the few in the area I could afford, only to find more than fifty people lined up outside. Before getting in line, I stopped to buy a water bottle at the deli directly beneath the apartment. The man behind the counter informed me that the massive line had been there for two consecutive days. "It's crazy," he said. "It didn't used to be like this." When I got to the front of the line, I asked the broker how they would choose who got to rent the apartment. She said what so many Brooklynites already know. The landlord will probably pick the person with the highest income. After that experience and many similar ones, including viewing a two-bedroom apartment where the second bedroom only fit a twin bed, I sadly had to give up on living in Windsor Terrace. There's a massive shortage of housing in Brooklyn, especially in areas like Park Slope and Windsor Terrace that are close to transit and parks. That shortage is making Brooklyn unaffordable for anyone but the wealthiest New Yorkers. The Prospect Avenue rezoning would allow more than two The Prospect Avenue rezoning would allow more than two hundred new homes to be built in an area that has not created many homes and has created almost no new affordable homes in recent years. We all know New York City is in the middle of a massive housing crisis brought on by a massive shortage of housing. We should also be very clear about how we ended up with this shortage. We caused it by, by rejecting, shrinking, watering down, or otherwise preventing every new potential housing project over the course of decades. To fix the shortage in an equitable way, we must build more housing in every neighborhood. Approving this application is what that looks like. Councilmember Hanif, I was thrilled to see you and several other council members support the much-needed City of Yes program late last year. Now it's time to make good on the promise of building more housing in every neighborhood. Please support the Prospect Avenue rezoning, Brooklynites like me who have to spend most of our take-home pay on ever-increasing rents are depending on you. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we'll hear from Michael Feenberg.
Thank you very much for the opportunity to speak. Um, my name is Michael Feenberg, I've been a resident of South Slope for six years, and I'm here to voice my support for the proposed rezoning on the Arrolinen site. As a market-rate renter, I've seen the cost of housing skyrocket over my time in the city. Just last year, I received a proposed rent increase from my landlord of over twenty percent. I know many of my neighbors are homeowners and do not have to face the uncertainties of the housing market each year, but year after year, more and more of our neighbors are being pushed out of their communities. While no proposal will make everyone happy, the proposed rezoning will help create hundreds of new homes that families of all incomes will be able to live in. Preferences around the height of buildings should not outweigh the immediate need for more housing units. Although this is a drop in the bucket over the course of the whole city, each project like this throughout the city contributes to the easing of the housing crisis and creating new homes. I urge the council to approve this rezoning to allow these homes to be built. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we hear from Rachel Fee.
My name is Rachel Fee, I'm Executive Director of the New York Housing Conference. My organization does not take positions on projects, so I'm testifying in my personal capacity as a resident of Windsor Terrace. Greetings to my neighbors here, everyone that's here today cares deeply about the neighborhood, just as I do. I'm in favor of more housing and in maximizing affordable housing. Council District Thirty-nine is ranked twenty-five out of thirty-one in affordable housing production, producing less than half the citywide district average. The main opposition seems to be directed at height, but height is what will give us more affordable housing through MIH. This is not like the building proposed to cast shadows over the treasured Brooklyn Botanic Gardens, which I oppose. This is an unattractive commercial building with an enormous parking lot on a wide street and a large site. No one will be displaced, and this site can handle a taller building than its surroundings. When I look at other residential corners surrounding Prospect Park, I see tall buildings adjacent to store, to four stories, and they are part of the landscape for decades and not eyesores. Prospect Park West, at Garfield Place, and also at Montgomery are examples of fifteen stories adjacent to four. No one notices. I understand the desire to keep the neighborhood as it is because it's charming, but this is a chance to add significant housing that is desperately needed by our neighbors and our city. Just in my block on Sixteenth Street, two families I'm friends with are actively looking and can't find anything in the neighborhood. One of them is expecting a third child and has been looking for more than five months to move. The other, their landlord told them it was time to go because their son needed a new apartment, they can't find anything in the neighborhood. I encourage the council to vote yes for more housing and for Windsor Terrace to do its part in adding needed housing supply. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we hear from Samir.
Thank you, Chair Riley, Councilmember Hanif, and the members of the Subcommittee on Zoning and Franchises for the opportunity to testify in favor of the Arrolinen proposal. My name is Samir Lavingia, and I serve as the Campaign Coordinator of Open New York. Open New York is an independent grassroots pro-housing nonprofit. We have twelve chapters across the state and over six hundred and fifty active volunteer members. New York faces a severe housing shortage. In February twenty twenty-four, the New York City Housing and Vacancy Survey revealed that the rental vacancy rate had fallen to a mere one point four percent, the lowest since nineteen sixty-eight. New Yorkers know these pressures all too well. Evictions have increased, asking rents have skyrocketed, and newly issued building permits have plummeted. Projects like Arrolinen offer opportunities for our great city to welcome neighbors, share ample, ample public resources, and ensure that those who grew up in Brooklyn can afford to stay in Brooklyn. For far too long, many of the most well-resourced parts of our city have been off-limits and have stopped the creation of new housing in their neighborhoods, especially, uh, housing for middle and low-income residents. According to the NYU Furman Center, Windsor Terrace has created no new affordable units since two thousand eight and has created significantly less housing than other nearby neighborhoods around Prospect Park. It is impossible to uphold fair housing principles without every neighborhood being part of the solution, and our leaders are stepping up to the plate. In twenty twenty-three, Speaker Adams championed the fair housing framework and at the end of last year led the council in passing City for All, which will create more than eighty thousand new units across the city. The Arrolinen proposal will not only help us accomplish our fair housing goals, but it will also bring much-needed affordable housing to a transit-rich neighborhood. We support the council member in her efforts to further deepen the affordability of the project. However, we want to emphasize the importance of not reducing the new unit count. If we are serious about solving our housing shortage, we cannot cut the number of new homes being approved. Every New Yorker deserves the opportunity to stay in their community or find a place to, uh, live in the city where they don't just survive, but thrive. Approving the Arrolinen project is one of these many steps we can take to ensure that happens. Thank you for the opportunity today.
Thank you. Next, we're gonna hear from Luke.
Good afternoon, my name is Luke Levanway, I am an eleven-year resident of New York City, and I've lived in Brooklyn for four years. Currently, I live in Fort Greene. I'd like to raise our attention to one specific issue today. That issue is new housing being blocked in all but a small handful of neighborhoods. According to data published by the Department of City Planning, just a handful of neighborhoods, including downtown Brooklyn, Sunnyside, Long Island City, Chelsea, and the South Bronx, account for a majority of new building units added to the city since two thousand ten. There are many other neighborhoods which are a good fit for more housing if we look at their existing resources such as public transportation and school capacity. Windsor Terrace is one such neighborhood, yet Windsor Terrace has added very little to its housing supply. According to the city planning dataset I mentioned previously, the community district, which includes Windsor Terrace, ranks forty-third of the city's fifty-nine community districts in terms of new building units added since two thousand ten. Now, to some, it might not seem like a huge problem to say, we don't want to build in Windsor Terrace for such and such reasons, but the same excuses about why we shouldn't build have played out in a majority of neighborhoods across the city. This is a key cause of the housing crisis, which is subjecting more than half of renters to rent burden and has already displaced far too many New Yorkers, including, on a personal note, dear friends of mine. Concerns about neighborhood context are understandable, however, it is more than fair for the many rent-burdened New Yorkers to ask for such concerns to be set aside so that every neighborhood can do its part to add to the housing supply. So I urge the City Planning Commission, the residents of Windsor Terrace, the neighborhoods' elected, elected representatives, um, to end the cycle of blocking new housing from being built. New Yorkers are struggling, and we really don't have time to waste in adding to our housing supply. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Lastly, Neil Miller.
Thank you to the committee and Councilmember Hanif. I wanted to give a brief comment in support of the rezoning at Arrolinen. Previous commenters have spoken about how the shortage of housing is driving up rents and displacing the neighbors that already live in the city, and I also hope the council considers the people who don't know to participate in this process, but who, decades down the line, if this gets built, um, would find a lovely home and contribute to the neighborhood, the immigrants that move here to seek opportunity, young people who want to stay in the community where they grew up, or couples seeking more space to grow their family. I understand all the concerns that have been expressed by other commenters, but I hope that the council doesn't remove homes and to take away opportunities from all of the neighbors that will add to the neighborhood in the future. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Uh, there being no questions, this panel's excused. The next panel we're gonna hear from is, oh, before I say that, we have about two more panels left, and then we're gonna go to online testimonies, okay? Next panel we're gonna hear from is Madeline Gaither, James Odeah, Maria Scarvalone, Bruno We'll begin first with James Odeah.
Just press the button, you ready to speak? Okay? Starting with Oday?
Yeah, Oday?
Yes, thank you very much.
Sorry, James, go ahead.
Thank you for this opportunity, uh, to speak, uh, in opposition to this egregious, uh, money-grabbing proposal. Uh, I respect and appreciate all the comments that have been made about the need for housing and affordable housing. This is not about whether or not we need more affordable housing or the condition in New York City. This is about a specific proposal, a specific proposal that is antithetical to everything the City Council of New York City stands for and everything that all of the boards and all of the representatives who have been addressed in this and who have the power and authority to address this matter. It's not about affordable housing, that's already been pointed out. You've already heard all the reasons why, why this should be opposed. I just want to point out height. It's not height, sure, height, but it's not the height itself. Maybe it is because in the pictures that were provided in the presentation, they show a seven-story building behind Windsor Place, not a nine, not an eleven, not a third, seven-story building, that's what they showed. In the picture from Prospect Avenue, they take it as though it's from a, a long distance. Prospect Avenue is a very narrow block, as has been pointed out. Not only is it a narrow block, it's the only two-way street from Flat Boucher Avenue to the other side of Greenwood Cemetery that goes from south of Prospect Park and south of Greenwood Cemetery down to the Battery and to the waterfront. It's a lifeline, which is a word that had been used earlier today. I'm just gonna make one other point, that earlier today in testimony, somebody used a cup as an example and kinda said that the cup could be filled. This, here's, here's the point, the cup is our neighborhood, it's our community. You're gonna pour water into that cup, you're gonna keep pouring and pouring and pouring, I got news for you, it's gonna overflow, and when it overflows, that's a flood condition that you are gonna be held responsible for. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Uh, next, we're gonna hear from Madeline.
Push the button? Okay, okay. Thank you, committee. My name is Madeline, and I'm a community member living three blocks away from the site. I strongly oppose Arrolinen's request for the spot zoning change and the proposed development. I do support development that includes sufficient affordable housing while still being appropriate to the neighborhood. Arrow has not engaged with the community at the time the proposal came out, nor now, on a compromise that would provide more meaningful, affordable housing while still being able to develop these sites. As Councilmember Hanif strongly noted, and Borough President Reynoso conditioned his support on, the proposal contains only twenty-five percent affordable units, which is the bare minimum. The representative today said she would consider more than that, but where is that proposal? The proposal's high number of market-rate, I'll say, luxury apartments will push up prices in the area, push families out of the neighborhood, and the rezoning of nearby houses creates a displacement risk for community residents. Given the large size of these lots, I am confident that buildings with forty percent affordable housing can be built at heights that will be at the scale of our neighborhood and still be an attractive project for a developer. Prospect Avenue is not a major commercial thoroughfare which can support thirteen-story buildings. I, for one, don't feel confident from those rote assurances today from the engineer that this building won't contribute to flooding in the neighborhood. I am also one of those people who's had to renovate my building from the constant flooding. The Arrow project renderings are deceptive in that they portray Prospect Avenue as a huge open space and show no contextual surrounding blocks or even the other side of the avenue. All of these surrounding blocks contain three-to-five-story buildings, excepting the Bishop Boardman Senior Homes on Eighth and Sixteenth Street, which incidentally could be a model for the Arrow site. We should see the proposal, the representative said today that they had considered but apparently rejected, with the reduced height and lower setbacks she mentioned. If the requested zoning is approved, it will propel a cascade of building and other requests for zoning changes on Prospect Avenue and the rest of the neighborhood. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
I urge the council to reject this spot zoning change.
Thank you. Next, we're gonna hear from Emily.
Hello, I'm Dr. Emily Gilchrist. I'm an expert in cultural analysis and a resident of South Slope for fifteen years and Prospect Avenue for seven years. Um, I'm completely against this rezoning. Uh, first of all, it in no way supports the goals of affordable housing. It seems many people here are under the impression that there's a housing crisis because there's a lack of housing. There's a housing crisis because of the unregulated and out-of-control development of luxury housing. And it's very disappointing to see an elected official not listening to the voices of those who elected her, um, and honoring what the residents actually want and the reality that the residents are actually living. Um, and for those who are also misled by the phrase affordable housing, this reflects the, I believe, median, uh, salary for the, the district, which in this area is far higher than the average or the median for Brooklyn. So those who think this is housing for the working class, it is not. And that doesn't really even get into the environmental impact, which is quite severe, and I'd be very curious to see the environmental report once they release that. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we're gonna have Bruno.
Hi, I'm Bruno Gransard. Thank you for the opportunity. I live in Park Slope, um, and I believe that this project needs to be downscaled. Converting Arrolinen to housing is not only, you know, uh, desirable, it's a necessity. We all know that, everyone acknowledges that, but it's just out of scale, out of proportion with the neighborhood. Now, if we take every single charming area and put high-rises, does that open up, you know, development on Prospect Park Southwest, on Sherman Street, on Furlough Place? Um, I mean, there's a, there's a wide range of streets in that, in the whole neighborhood. In fact, there's not a single street in, in Windsor Terrace that is landmarked or in the South Slope. So twenty stories, I mean, if I were a developer, I'd go and tear down everything I could because it'd be so profitable. So I just wanted, you know, just emphasize how important it is to, you know, build, but build intelligently. We don't want to make mistakes that we're gonna regret in ten, twenty, thirty years. The one certainty about this project is that it's gonna screw up the neighborhood. Is it really gonna change everything about New York housing? Absolutely not. Yes, we know we need to build more, the City of Yes is a good initiative, it's about putting a little bit more housing in every neighborhood, it's not about putting twenty-story buildings all across the city. So I oppose this, this, this project for three reasons. Its size, it's gargantuan. Secondly, um, it, it opens up development, you know, unfettered development across Windsor Terrace and, and Park Slope. Uh, and then, thirdly, it's a giveaway to the, to the owner, and it's just bad policy. So I urge you not to approve it. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much for your testimony. Lastly, Maria.
I've lived near the Arrolinen-
Maria, you, push the button, thanks.
I've lived near the Arrolinen site for thirty-five years now, and I vehemently oppose this upzoning application. I do welcome truly affordable contextual housing there as Catholic charities proposed. It wanted to purchase the property to develop seven to nine stories and one hundred percent affordable units, but Arrow summarily rejected the idea. Why? Because it's holding out to make even more money when you all okay taller buildings. After benefiting decades from variances and tax abatements, Arrow is now moving its business out, but be, not before it tries to extract one last huge benefit, a grossly out-of-context upzoning from you, our elected officials. This, despite having repeatedly lied to all of us about why it mysteriously included eleven privately-owned townhouses in its upzoning area, or how it had supposedly engaged the community, it actually tried to pass off its private meeting with the Community Board President as community engagement. That's called lobbying, and lobbying is powerful on this subject. Increase supply is the mantra, repeated by loud proponents of this project, many of them barely familiar with our area, and members of Open New York, a registered lobby that has received three point five million dollars from tech billionaire Dustin Moskovitz and has now formed a PAC. The truth is, housing unit growth has outpaced our population growth for the last fifty years, and still housing costs are increasing exponentially. It turns out the law of supply and demand isn't quite so clear-cut in the New York City real estate market. We need only look to Williamsburg and Greenpoint to see that Build Baby Build has led to luxury unit- luxury unit building that has increased rents and forced out lower-income tenants and worsened racial disparity in those areas. By limiting upzoning to 7 to 9 stories, you can incentivize and resurrect the Catholic charities' option and build more affordable units than Arrow has proposed, all within the area's context. That is the win-win solution.
Thank you so much for your patience and your testimony. This panel is excused. The last panel in person to testify will consist of Roger Melzer, Scott Newman, and Michael Barron. If I did not call your name and you want to testify and you're in person, please raise your hand so the Sergeant Arms can give you a speaker's card. All right? We'll begin first with Roger.
Thank you for this opportunity to testify. I am opposed to the rezoning and construction of two luxury towers on the Arrow Linen property on Prospect Avenue. The real intent of Arrow is to build 183 expensive luxury apartments and throw in 61 so-called affordable units that might not be so affordable after all. Arrow has never revealed what they intend to charge for any of the apartments. So I have put together a table of the projected rents based on the proposal they have submitted to the Community Board. I do not have time to explain my table, but if Arrow wants to come forward with their numbers, so much the better. It is my belief that these two luxury towers will be the driving force in rapidly escalating rents throughout the neighborhood. As others may testify, the substantial high-rise developments on 4th Avenue and Park Slope have led to higher rents and displacement for many years. The Arrow Linen Corporation has owned Prospect Avenue property for decades, and they have not paid property taxes for 25 years due to a prior industrial abatement. So they effectively have zero land costs and zero acquisition costs. What a sweet deal. Windsor Terrace is a neighborhood of mostly two- and three-story buildings. A more contextual development with affordable apartments is possible on this site, and it can still be profitable. I urge this committee to vote no on this proposal. And I want to add that I own probably the largest four-story walk-up apartment building in Windsor Terrace, 27 units, mostly one-bedrooms. My average rent in the whole buildings are $2,200, and that's what you get when you have an owner that lives in the neighborhood and cares about their tenants. Arrow Linen is an absentee landlord, they don't care about tenants, they don't care about what happens to the neighborhood, and the rent levels they propose are astronomical. I project their rent levels for the luxuries will be over $12 million, and the
Thank you.
...regulated ones, a little over $1 million. So it's a real cash grab. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much for your testimony. Next, we'll have Michael Barron. Michael? Is Michael here? Going once, going twice? Scott?
Thank you.
I'm sorry, sir. Sir? You have to remain right there until your excuse. Thank you so much. I'm sorry, Scott, go ahead.
That's all right. My name's Scott Newman. I'm here to oppose the rezoning application for Arrow. Like, people on both sides of the argument, they have so many good points that housing is needed. I drew up my notes on the train ride in. A lot of people have a typed-out testimony. I have been a resident on Prospect Avenue, a block away from the development, below it, for 27 years, and in the neighborhood for 30. I'm a musician and teacher, adjunct faculty member at a couple colleges, and I must say that even buying our property in 1997, Prospect Avenue was the one avenue that we could afford to buy a house on. And we bought it with friends. We went in together on a two-family house. And we've had a tenant now in that house, because the other family moved out for 19 years, and we have kept her rent at 40% below market value. I'm not looking for accolades, I'm just saying we've contributed to affordable housing. Arrow Linen is a big site. There is no reason why this thing has to be this high. Everybody keeps talking 7 to 9 stories, it's because of the Bishop Boardman Building at 1615 8th Avenue. The next buildings that are that big, that are near that big are down on 5th Avenue and 15th Street, and then 4th Avenue where they're all 10 to 15 stories high. So it's grossly out of place in our neighborhood. We're, as you could tell, people are in favor of affordable housing, and we're counting on you to take into consideration that maybe the number, the numbers should be brought up of the amount of affordable units that are in the building development, and that the floor plan could come down and go out instead of up.
Thank you so much, Scott. There being no question, this panel is excused. Thank you so much for your patience and your testimony. Going again, is there anyone else that wants to testify in person that did not testify already before we go to online testimony? Please raise your hand. Okay? Being that we have none, we will go to online testimony. All right, we're just going to do a five-minute break, because I have to use the bathroom real quick, so just give me a second, all right? Thank you.
Can everybody settle down and find a seat? We are getting ready to continue. Everybody settle down and find a seat. We are getting ready to continue.
Thank you, everyone. We're about to resume. Shhh. If you could please take your conversations out the chambers. Thank you so much. So we're going to transition to online testimony. We're going to begin first with Susan Lund, Matt Goldberg, Diane Brand, Hafina Allen. Once again, Susan Lund, Matt Goldberg, Diane Brand, and Hafina Allen. We'll begin first with Susan Lund. Susan, if you can hear me, please unmute, and you may begin. You may begin.
Good afternoon, council members. I'm a Park Slope resident with Councilmember Hanif's district, and I am testifying in support of the Arrow Linen Project. With the vacancy rate of 1.4%, we are not producing enough housing. When there is not enough supply, the cost of the supply will go up, and we can see that very clearly with the cost of housing in New York. We are in an affordability and vacancy housing crisis. The result of this is pushing people, families, to leave the city so they can no longer afford to live here. Children that have grown up here are forced to leave. This Arrow Linen proposal is the correct step moving forward, one of many that we must make, and we must build more. This proposal guarantees affordable housing. And according to the Arrow Linen panel that testified under oath, if denied, it is much more likely that this will become condos with no promise of affordability. As another testifier eloquently said, "Do not let perfect become the enemy of good." A critical part of the proposal is also the flood remediation. I know for a fact how many people have been devastated by the floods within the recent years. The fact that this proposal contains flood remediation is a huge and immediate win. I live in Councilmember Hanif's district, as I said. I'm friends with many people who live and work in this neighborhood, who grew up here, and I too want to preserve the character of the neighborhood. And you know what the character of the neighborhood is? It's the people. It's the community. I want my friends, the community, to be able to stay here and thrive here. I do not want this community to be hollowed out because of a solvable issue. Please, I urge the council to pass this proposal.
Thank you. Next, we'll hear from Matt Goldberg.
Good afternoon, community and council members. I speak to you today as a resident of Councilmember Hanif's 39th District in South Slope Windsor Terrace. What we have heard today is primarily from a single family's expensive lawyers and hundreds of thousands of dollars of lobbyists, is that we will provide those updates, or we will look into that, or we look forward to working with stakeholders. None of this is binding, requires no action on the part of the developers, yet us, the residents, will be bound by their actions for decades and generations to come. You should ask yourselves, why won't they commit? The answer is very simple. They do not care about you or any of us. They want as much money as the city regulations will give them. We've heard today from various housing lobbies like Open New York, from lobbyists who live in Bushwick or Fort Greene, not our community. And our community board saw through the charade in their 30 to 6 vote. Councilmember Hanif, we urge you to do the same. How would you consider the alternate proposal that you've heard today? Seven-story zoning with 40% mandatory inclusive housing. This would create affordable units, and an R6A zoning is the only thing that's appropriate for the site. I please encourage you to disapprove of the application. Councilmember Hanif, we elected you to City Council because we believe that you put ideals over corporations and rich out-of-city financiers and developers. Councilmember, you promised to represent us, and we believed you. And if you represent us, we will ensure that you are returned to office in the next election. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next is Diane Brand. Diane Brand? Is Diane Brand there? If you are using the phone, you can press star six. Okay, we'll move over to Hafina Allen. Hafina Allen, if you can hear me, please unmute.
Excuse me. I'm sorry. This is Diane Brand. I must not... Can you hear me now?
Yes, we can hear you. Go ahead.
Okay. My unmute button wasn't working too well. Anyway, my name is Diane Brand, and I've lived in the neighborhood for many years. And I'm here to add my voice to those of my neighbors who are very concerned and against this proposal. It does not, from my view, does not accomplish the intention of affordable housing. Speakers have mentioned at least 200 new homes in the neighborhood, et cetera. That's 200, but the vast majority of those are not affordable or slated to be affordable apartments, in any event. I have no objection to more affordable housing, but a huge development such as this doesn't accomplish that. This proposal, it's a meager proportion of affordable housing relative to its size. And I think that is the height, pun intended, of inefficiency and an inappropriate nod to huge corporate greed. This is just Arrow trying to squeeze the last bit of money that it can out of here. And I'm also concerned with respect to environmental concerns. And yes, I am a homeowner who had flood issues in the last few years, and nobody should go through that, and we should not be increasing the prospect of that. The flood remediation that they spoke to was mainly they were to have a nice big garden. We didn't hear about the rest of it. And when they were asked about compliance and the review by the Mayor's Office of Environmental Remediation, or some title like that, they were being asked about water. They responded in terms of air, noise, and soil. Well, we don't want air pollution and noise pollution and soil pollution either.
Thank you, Diane. Time's expired.
Thank you for this opportunity.
Thank you so much. Next, we'll have Hafina Allen.
Hi, I'm Hafina Allen. I'm a social worker who's lived in Windsor Terrace since 1994. As a social worker who's spent most of my career working in homeless services, I'm well aware of the need for actually affordable housing in this city. However, I oppose this upzoning. The current proposal includes 11 privately owned properties that are not owned by Arrow Linen. If this project is approved, as is, the displacement of the families renting in those buildings will offset the benefit of the new affordable units in this development. As we've seen in nearby Park Slope and other parts of Brooklyn, such as Williamsburg, such upzoning drives up overall cost of housing, and over the long run, leads to the displacement of working and middle-class families. Additionally, without added infrastructure, such upzoning places environmental impact beyond the stormwater runoff issues that were addressed by the applicant. The increase in wastewater in our sewer system poses potentially devastating sewage backup in the basements of surrounding areas. This has been an issue in Navybury Park Slope and has received media coverage in recent years. In regards to the applicant's statement regarding aging housing stock and the lack of new development, I want to remind everybody that the most environmental development is adaptive reuse of existing buildings. Newer isn't always better. To be clear, if you... Sorry. To be clear, I want you to listen to those of us who live in this neighborhood. As a community, we do want affordable housing, but we don't want to see our neighbors displaced and priced out by this upzoning and the inclusion of luxury housing. To be clear, if you approve this application, you're supporting profit of Arrow Linen, not affordable housing for our city.
Right on time. Thank you so much. This panel is excused. The next panel that I'm going to call up consists of Eric McClure, Henry Love, Merrill Bradbart, Gabriel Rich, and Ralph Gado. We'll begin first with Eric McClure. Eric, if you can hear me, please unmute, and you may begin.
Thank you, Chair Riley and Councilmember Hanif. My name is Eric McClure. I'm the Executive Director of Streets PAC. While rezonings are not quite in the bullseye of Streets PAC's mission of reducing reliance on cars, making streets safer, and improving public transportation, projects that create much-needed housing in walkable, bikeable neighborhoods that are well-served by transit certainly contribute significantly to those goals. And the proposed rezoning of 441 and 467 Prospect Avenue absolutely fit that bill. While the Arrow Linen Supply Company has provided gainful employment and unnecessary service for decades, the current land use is anachronistic and incongruous with the surrounding dense residential neighborhood. Turning this underutilized site into mixed-income housing with a large MIH component will help many families find a home in this highly desirable neighborhood, while in turn reducing housing pressure by adding considerably to the supply in the community in which the vacancy rate is low and income-restricted units are nearly nonexistent. Streets PAC strongly supports the creation of this type of transit-oriented development and walkable and bikeable neighborhoods as a crucial policy for combating climate change. By spurring housing creation like that proposed here, it will also make it much easier for New Yorkers to avoid the tremendous financial burden of car ownership, should they choose to forego buying or leasing an automobile. The proximity to the 15th Street Prospect Park F&amp;G Station, just a few hundred feet from the project site, offers a major opportunity. And the proposed 13-story buildings, while taller than what currently exists on the block, are very much in keeping with nearby building heights. Proximity to shopping, dining, and other services also make these sites ideal for new-scale development. Finally, while I'm speaking today in my professional capacity, I'm also a resident of the 39th Council District and Chair of Brooklyn Community Board VI, the adjacent community district. I've seen far too many of my neighbors forced to move away due to skyrocketing housing costs driven by the attendant lack of supply. And the shortage of affordable housing continues to be CB VI's most pressing district need. Streets PAC urges a Subcommittee on Zoning and Franchises and the full City Council to vote in support of the rezoning of 441 and 467 Prospect Avenue. Thanks very much for your time.
Thank you. Next, we'll hear from Henry Love. Henry, if you can hear me, please unmute, and you may begin. Henry Love? No, Henry? Okay, we'll move on to Merrill Brad... Excuse me, Bradbart? Merrill Bradbart?
Yes, Bradbart. Thank you.
Go ahead.
Hi, my name is Merrill Bradbart. I'm a mother and a homeowner in Windsor Terrace, and I'm here to voice my strong support for the rezoning. I don't want to rehash too much of what's already been said. Many of the points I was prepared to share have already been said. But I do want to say that, as we all know, our city faces a dire housing shortage, and this project represents an opportunity to create entirely new homes where there aren't any right now without displacing existing residents. Instead of worrying about who might be driven out, which won't happen here, we should focus on the people we can drive into Windsor Terrace. Young families, essential workers, and neighbors who will enrich our community and keep it thriving. More housing means a stronger, more inclusive Windsor Terrace. So please go in support of this rezoning. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we hear from Gabriel Rich.
Hi, guys. Thank you. I'm a resident of your District Councilmember Hanif. So thank you, guys, so much. I am speaking in support of the proposal. I've learned a lot today from listening to everybody and learning all this. And really, what it comes down to is that it's more housing, and that's what we need. The only way to build denser housing is to go up. Things have to go up. That's the only way that there will be more space. But I've also heard some very interesting points, and I think I'm concerned that it sounded like Arrow Linen was not as involved with the community in building this plan. I'm concerned that they're only doing the minimum amount of affordable housing, and that there may be a kind of net even number of affordable housing units in the area. And I'd urge you, Councilmember Hanif, to push the proposal to guarantee more than 25%. I don't know if that's possible at this point, if the plan is set, and that's how it is. But I would say, as a gesture of goodwill, see if they'll commit to a higher percent of affordable housing, especially having read that it's three different bands, and only really a third of that 25% is going to the lowest-income people, residents, tenants, whatever. So that's kind of where I stand. I still am in support of it, of the development. I think more housing and having to go up is necessary. But I would urge pushing for more affordable housing, even at the cost of the value of the sale. Thank you.
Thank you. We're going to try Henry Love again.
Yes, sir. About that, can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you, Henry.
Perfect. Good afternoon. My name is Dr. Henry Love. I'm the Vice President of Public Policy and Strategy at Wynn, a family homeless provider that's been serving vulnerable communities in Brooklyn for over 40 years. We're the largest provider of shelter and services for families experiencing homelessness in the country, and we operate 16 shelters across the five boroughs. And each night, about 7,000 people call Wynn Home. We support the proposed zoning change for the new development project in Brooklyn, which would create 61 affordable units. These units are critical for families who are struggling to find stable housing. Finding affordable housing in Brooklyn is incredibly challenging, especially for women and children. In a city where the cost of living continues to rise, women are often faced with systemic barriers like low wages, discrimination, and lack of family-friendly housing options. Many of the families we work with are forced into overcrowded apartments or shelters like the two we run in the neighborhood. This project, which offers affordable housing, will directly address the issues and give women and children the stability that they desperately need. The affordable housing crisis in Brooklyn isn't just a local issue. It's a part of a larger national trend of folks leaving New York City for cheaper red states. However, the risk of moving to these states is real. Many of these states have policies that threaten the livelihoods of women and families, especially with harmful agenda of former President Trump and others who push against workers' rights, reproductive health, basic protections for vulnerable communities. New York City is one of the few places in the country that offers real protections for families, especially women, immigrants, and folks of color. We must do everything we can to keep them here and to ensure that they have access to vital, affordable housing that they need. The zoning proposal is a vital step in creating more inclusive Brooklyn, one where families can stay and thrive. Approving this development means giving 61 families a chance at a better future. It's an opportunity to strengthen our community and ensure that women with children aren't forced out of the city they call home. I urge you to approve this project and continue supporting affordable housing initiatives that help families stay in Brooklyn and keep New York City the welcoming place we all know.
Thanks, Henry. Time's expired. Next, we have Ralph Gado.
Yes, good afternoon. Councilmembers in attendance today and Councilmember Hanif. My name is Ralph Gado. I am a professional engineer in New York and New Jersey, with no relationship to the Arrow Linen proposal. However, much like the Magliacco family, my extended family has maintained a long-term presence in the area, in our case, over 100 years. My comments this afternoon are presented in the context of my community interest and my desire to express my opinions and observations. Regarding the Prospect Avenue rezoning, I encourage New York City Council and Councilmember Hanif to approve the Arrow Linen proposal as submitted without hesitation. It's my opinion that the development undeniably presents a well-thought-out transition from the present industrial occupancy to an elegant residential accommodation serving the community's needs for increased housing at affordable rates. The renderings presented as part of the ULR proceedings are intuitively appealing, in my opinion, so much so that I applaud the design team's creativity. I also think that the proposed design fits well within the context of the surrounding and existing adjacent three-story residential buildings, as well as the surrounding area. The extent of the rezoned parcels is conservative, okay, and affords the opportunity for further housing initiatives. But I think that that's unlikely to become part of this development. I don't think that the nine properties were going to be converted to high-rise. Compared to other residential construction on this section of Prospect Avenue directly across the street, the Arrow proposal is an obvious enhancement to the street's presence. For that matter, considering the aesthetics of the proposal, the physical relationship to nearby community services, and close by amenities, the proposal on hand achieves New York City's goals for increased housing in every significant facet and in a manner that is difficult to challenge in a productive manner. I urge the New York City Council and Councilmember Hanif to take advantage of this very unique opportunity to benefit the community before it slips away. Thank you so much.
Thank you. This panel is excused. The next panel we're going to call consists of Alex Weinberg, Alexander Simon Fox, Elizabeth Dennyce, and Joshua Waterman. We'll begin first with Alex Weinberg. Alex, if you can hear me, please unmute. You may begin. Alex, if you can hear me, please unmute.
Hello there. I or we are calling in in support of the Arrow Linen rezoning. I currently reside as a renter directly across the street from the affected site. And I've heard a lot in this meeting about the threat that the development proposes regarding height. That is mostly an aesthetic concern. I personally believe that a building on a site of that size could be really any height, 11, 13, 15, 20 stories. It doesn't really affect me very much. It's mostly an aesthetic concern. The site and the neighborhood are not landmarked. There is no landmark preservation movement. There has been no effort by any community groups to actually make this area a landmarked site. So the idea of preventing this on aesthetic grounds, I don't think is valid. Arrow Linen will make a significant profit on the site, which is how development works. This entire neighborhood was developed by developers, speculators, from the townhouses to the apartment buildings. This has been a speculator's neighborhood since 1890. Also, I understand that Arrow Linen has spent a significant amount of money on lobbyists, which I think is a shame. They shouldn't have had to have done that. They should have been able to finish this rezoning process in a weekend. I don't think that the... Hey, come on, give me a break. I don't think that the long duration of this discussion and consideration is in the benefit of our neighborhood. What I am concerned about is getting the most units possible, as quickly as possible, built and ready for us.
Your baby is so cute.
Thank you, Alex. Does a baby have to testify too? You have a few seconds left. Next, we're going to hear from Alexander Simon Fox. Alexander, if you can hear me, please unmute.
Hey. Oh, can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you, Alexander.
Great. Thanks so much for this opportunity to testify. I'm here today as a neighbor of the proposed site, living about 10 blocks away. I strongly believe in increasing affordable housing options in the city, especially in Windsor Terrace, which is a neighborhood with resources, amenity, and good transit. Any housing built in the area should provide opportunities for New Yorkers of all income levels to enjoy our neighborhood, as our neighborhood already has a wide variety of high-cost housing options available, but we lack options that are accessible for most New Yorkers. This development has the potential to mitigate or exacerbate our area's current affordable housing issue. Minimum requirements for MIH, which is what the developers discussed, are not sufficient for meaningfully addressing our neighborhood's housing issue and preserving income diversity in our area, and I encourage all parties to strive for more and better. I hope that the developers can commit to an option that maximizes the quantity of affordable units and the depth of their affordability. Thanks so much.
Thank you. Next, we hear from Elizabeth Dennyce.
Hello, my name is Elizabeth Dennyce. I've lived literally on just the other side of the boundary of Community District VII, a block away from Windsor Terrace and Flatbush for 10 years. I'm here to speak in favor of the Arrow Linen rezoning today. South Slope and Windsor Terrace are wonderful, vibrant communities, but unfortunately, there has been a net loss of housing in the area and almost no new affordable homes built. The area is becoming much less accessible to families and people at all economic levels, threatening the character of the neighborhood, the people. We need housing of all kinds, and we need more homes in every neighborhood. We especially need them in areas with great transit access, like this project under a quarter of a mile from the subway. Windsor Terrace and South Slope has a median income 75% above the New York City-wide median income. 31.2% of residents in the area make over $200,000 a year, and only 27.4% in the area make less than or equal to the citywide median income. This is well-matched using market cross-subsidization for creating income-restricted homes through MIH in an area where the city's equitable explorer notes that there is the lowest risk of displacement. While new homes aren't built in areas like South Slope and Windsor Terrace, wealthier areas, it doesn't only make it harder for families to stay in their neighborhood there, it directly increases the pressure of the housing crisis on adjacent neighborhoods like mine and Flatbush and Kensington, where tenants are even more vulnerable. The equitable developer explorer notes these adjacent neighborhoods have the highest risk of displacement. I've been a strong supporter of building more badly-needed homes in my own neighborhood of Flatbush, but it's not going to be enough unless every neighborhood is doing their part to fight the housing crisis. The Arrow Linen rezoning, as proposed, would bring 244 new homes of all sizes and prices to be built on what is currently a commercial lot with a surface parking area, as long as this rezoning is approved. I urge you to say no to continuing the cycle of displacement, no to threatening the vibrant nature of this wonderful community, and to say yes to more housing, to say yes to the 244 new families who could live in this wonderful mixed-income community, and to vote yes on this rezoning proposal. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Lastly, we hear from Joshua Waterman.
Thank you, Chair Riley, Councilmember Hanif. My name is Joshua Waterman. I live in Park Slope, about a six-minute bike ride from the future site of the 244 homes that will be built at 441 and 467 Prospect Avenue. I'm not here to convince anyone on ideological grounds that New York needs to build more housing. Of course, we need to build more housing. Majority of members on this Subcommittee voted in favor of City of yes for housing opportunity. Councilmember Hanif voted for it. Speaker Adams has said it plainly, we're in a housing crisis. 1.4% vacancy. We know all that. That's not really up for debate. That is a fact. I'm here to tell you about this site, which is currently a large parking lot and an industrial laundry facility. I'm here to tell you why that should become apartments. This is a very real proposal that will generate over 60 permanently affordable units. Here are a few reasons why the site is well-equipped to handle these 244 new homes. Subway ridership at the nearest subway station, the 15th Street Prospect Park FG, is down 36% over the last five years. With continued low ridership and forthcoming signal improvements to the G train, transit infrastructure could seamlessly absorb the additional rides that would come with the new homes. Similarly, schools in District 15 continue to be under-enrolled, down 25% from five years ago. The families that move into these buildings would be able to send their children to nearby, high-performing neighborhood schools. And then opponents of this development, like we've heard today, have cited recent neighborhood flooding as a reason why the neighborhood can't support more housing. But as Ms. Martin's mentioned in her presentation, the developer was required to develop a stormwater mitigation plan that will involve green infrastructure. It'll be better than it is now. In closing, I want to quote a man that we are honoring today, one of the all-time great American home builders, Jimmy Carter. He said, "One of the basic human rights is housing, the right not only to have a place to live, but to have it be your own. This plan before you will create homes, including permanently affordable homes, for hundreds of families." I look forward to this committee's yes vote. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. This panel is now excused. The next panel I'm going to call up consists of Julia Harris, Paul Tanish, Simon Bankoff, and Betsy Klumpus. Julia Harris, if you can hear me, you may unmute, and you can begin.
Yes, hi. Thank you. My name's Julia Harris. I'm an urban planner. I was born and raised in the neighborhood, and I strongly value livable cities that balance community feedback against the profit-driven interests of the billionaire real estate industry. I oppose this 15-story, mostly-luxury development. I was going to focus my testimony on the complete lack of community engagement, but that's already been covered. I do want to note that in my professional work at DCP and EDC and as a land use committee member for Community Board VII and all the applications we've seen here today, I've never seen such a gross refusal to engage with the community as we've seen from the applicant team here. I'd like to clarify instead today some things I heard from Arrow Linen regarding the discussion of flooding. To be clear, there is no flood remediation. They are required by code to have stormwater retention, yes, but Prospect Avenue in the larger area has ancient clay combined sewer pipes, which drain both rainfall and sanitary sewage together. So even if they retain rainfall on their site, they're adding thousands of new toilets, showers, washer-dryers, and sinks that flow into the same pipes that flood in moderate rainstorms. Surrounding neighbors will have more groundwater, and we know what that is, back up into their homes. Without sewage upgrades, Arrow is in no way improving the situation, but exacerbating it. And what they've stated is, quite frankly, misleading testimony made under oath. To clarify, there is no 21,000-square-foot park proposed on the block by the applicant. There is a private backyard that should not be touted as a community benefit. Arrow's attorney has repeatedly alluded to a lower building massing that was reviewed with city planning but never presented to the public or the community board. We want to see this. We want engagement. Regarding deeper affordability and questions around HP's timing, I would personally rather wait a little bit longer for more permanently affordable housing to serve generations to come than have permanently luxury housing with ever-increasing rents versus some of the local landlords we've heard from today that keep things at a suppressed, under-market cost. There's only one bite at the apple, and we need to do it well and right. And council members, I've read your biographies and your legislative priorities, which are very commendable. You may not be involved in this slice of Brooklyn life. You may not be involved in this slice of Brooklyn life.
Thank you, time's expired.
Your constituents. So to be clear, we want housing on this site, but we want you to listen to the voices of local residents.
Thank you, Ms. Harris. Next, we're going to hear from Paul Tanish.
I thank you to the chair and to the committee members for the opportunity to make testimony. My name is Paul Tainch. I lived on Sixteenth Street, two blocks away from the proposed rezoning site, for thirty-nine years, and I've lived in Brooklyn for seventy years. I want to ask this committee to reject the application for a number of reasons, most of which have been stated. But I want to say that the city council, after much consideration and input from communities through New York, asked the City of Yes to try and provide some uniform guidance to rezoning, and that this new zoning provides ample opportunity for the developers of Arrow and the two lots to increase the number of units allowed by taking advantage of incentives that are included in the framework for developing near-mass transit and including affordable units. I think that doing this kind of spot zoning, a rezoning, is both unnecessary and, and actually can be very dangerous in terms of creating exceptions that then become the rule for the kinds of buildings that get built in the future. I do want to say, on one hand, people keep citing statistics, like how many vacancies there are in District Fifteen, for example, which, of course, is irrelevant if your school is the school down the block and it's full. A lot of people also cite the citywide vacancy rate as one point nine or one point four, I've heard people say, but the project developers cited a five point seven percent local vacancy rate. So I just want to be clear, when people throw numbers around, it sounds really professional and, and such, but this issue of housing and its impact on communities is actually much more complex. I'm trained as an urban sociologist, and I've studied urban neighborhoods for forty-five years. And we know from New York City history that scale matters, and out-of-scale projects can damage the fabric of communities. Jane Jacobs made a career out of pointing out the importance of livable-scale communities.
Thank you, time's expired.
Create these kinds of exceptions. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you, Paul. Next, we'll have Simon Bankoff. Simon Bankoff.
Good afternoon. My name is Samin Bankoff. I've lived in Windsor Terrace with my family for over thirty years and have owned a two-family house within the area of potential effect of this project for twenty-six years. I am a professional historic preservation consultant, and I'm speaking on my own behalf. This proposal will be incredibly deleterious to the Windsor Terrace neighborhood by setting up a precedent for sacrificing rational community planning for private economic growth. The neighborhood was rezoned only twenty years ago, which, at the time, DCP said to protect the predominantly low-rise character of the neighborhood, reinforce several avenue corridors for mixed use and provide opportunities for apartment-house construction. This is not an apartment house. These are towers. The current plan flies in the face of this sustainable, rational planning. In addition to overshadowing blocks of existing residential houses in darkness, the current proposal will serve to displace dozens of existing tenants from their homes, have deleterious effects in the local shopping district on Prospect Park West, which commercial rates will invariably rise in value and displace existing commercial tenants in favor of larger chains, which can afford the new rents. These business owners, tenants, and their employees represent one of the chief streams of ethnic and economic diversity in the area and will be negatively affected, and will be a potential, a dangerous and potentially disastrous precedent for other potential developments in the immediate area. I've counted five empty sites within a five-hundred-foot distance from the project site, and my list is not comprehensive. These large sites are currently zoned contextually in order to encourage substantial amounts of quality housing at a scale that's compatible with existing built environment, just like the ArrowLinen site. If ArrowLinen is permitted to blow out the existing zoning, these sites will be likely to be next, and the entire physical character of the neighborhood will be irrevocably altered. Mid-block residential blocks will look like Fourth Avenue disaster rezoning, which served to uproot a longtime Latino population and required a follow-up corrective action to make the new developments even vaguely terrible to pedestrians. Frankly, this proposal is for unconstrained growth in the neighborhood, and that's before one considers the effects of city, yes?
Thank you, time's expired.
Unconstrained growth damages the whole of a neighborhood and leads to serious...
Thank you. Next, we're going to hear from Betsy Kompas. Betsy, if you can hear me, please unmute.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Great. I just want to point out that I'm vehemently opposed to this proposal because there is no commitment from ArrowLinen or from their builders, who they have not engaged to actually live up to any of the promises that they're making to us. It is detrimental to the neighborhood, and I hear no commitment. And I am disappointed that Shaana Hanif is being courted and lobbied by them, and they have not engaged with the community at all. I have attended the meetings, and I have heard, not heard from the ArrowLinen people at all. They have been not paying taxes for twenty-five years, and now it is just profit over people. I would love to see fully affordable housing. I would love to have had them accept the Catholic Charities' proposal for fully affordable housing. We would love to see that. We would love to see housing that is in fitting with the neighborhood. I also am curious about why this is just left to Shaana sitting there and where the other committee members are. They should hear all of our testimony in order to make a responsible vote. I, I don't understand that process, and I don't understand why they are not hearing our testimony. We represent the neighborhood, and they should know what they're voting for. Thank you.
Thank you for your testimony. This panel is excused. The next panel that I will call up consists of Jeremy Kaplan, Marlene Bocato, Velma McKenzie, and Peter Slotska. We'll hear first from Jeremy Kaplan. Jeremy, if you can hear me, please unmute, and you may begin.
Yes, yes, I'm muted. Hi, I'm Jeremy Kaplan. I'm actually a CB seven board member, speaking on my own behalf. And I just wanted to speak a bit about the way in which we saw with the community board the behavior of the developer. And just want to reinforce again that the community board voted to basically ask that ArrowLinen pull the application, engage with the community, because we saw hundreds upon hundreds of testimony from Windsor Terrace residents that were against this rezoning. And it was, it was pretty surprising, actually, to see almost a ninety-five percent against this rezoning with a lot of very, very sensible recommendations. And seeing the lack of disregard for that and the lack of community input from the developer and the way in which they even came to the community board, or didn't come to the community board, and presented us, actually, the day that we voted, with a letter that was very condescending to us. It demonstrated to me that they had no real engagement with the community and that they disregarded us, and they, they saw us as basically peons or pawns, and that they had spent more time, you know, spending money on PR and, and trying to, you know, lobby people, instead of actually really engaging with the community. So I asked, basically, that we really listened to this process, that the community board said to pull this application and to do a task force. And I'm, I'm curious to hear from Councilmember Shaana Hanif, if that has come up, if ArrowLinen has discussed that. I'm very much want to engage in that and would, and would like to help as a community board member to proceed with that, because I think the community has great ideas. I think they're, they're clearly focused on having more affordability, and that's what the council member has been saying.
Thank you, your time's expired.
Everything is, is secret negotiations, and so I...
Thank you, Jeremy. Next, we'll hear from Marlene Bocato. Marlene Bocato. Marlene, are you there? Marlene?
Yeah, I'm here. Can you hear me?
Yes, I can hear you. Go ahead.
Okay. My name is Marlene Bocato. I've been a resident at four nine six Prospect Avenue for over forty years. I have two tenants. They live in five-bedroom apartments. They each pay eighteen fifty a month. That's eighteen hundred and fifty dollars a month. One raised a fifty dollars several years ago. We're not all wealthy homeowners like other people would like us, like you to believe. I wonder where all that lobbying money went. ArrowLinen has done nothing to this neighborhood, not one baseball team or any other support. Why should we adhere, why should we give in to their outrageous money-grabbing requests? We owe them nothing. They owe us a lot. Again, I agree with everybody who's against the proposal, the seven-story max, forty percent or more affordable housing. I'd like to just say something that I recently heard about Abraham Lincoln. He stressed government of the people, by the people, and for the people. Shaana Hanif, we are the people. We supported you, support us. And that's about all I have to say.
Thank you so much, Ms. Marlene. Next, we're going to hear from Velma McKenzie. Velma McKenzie?
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Great, thank you so much. So much has been said today. I think the only thing I would like to add at this point is, first of all, I am a homeowner that will be in the shadow of these buildings once they are built. I am opposed to the buildings as presented by Arrow Laundry. I was at the Brooklyn Borough U-Look review back on October ninth, and the thing, one of the things that struck me was there's two other projects that were being presented, twenty-one eighty-five Boyle Street and forty-five eighty-one Grant Avenue. What struck me was the number of people from the community that literally stood at the podium with these developers when the, when they were proposing and asking for the rezoning, because they, the community had, had been engaged, which has not happened with Arrow Laundry, which is not surprising. At the, the two, twenty-one eighty-five Boyle Street, the presenter, one of the things he says is that, this, he presented today also, the, the property is, the buildings are going to be between four and nine stories. One of the six-story buildings, they're presenting at six stories because, quote, "There are brownstones there," end quote, "It is more appropriate urban design," which is what we're asking for. We're totally fine building residential on that property. It's, I've expected it for years. But what we're asking for is more appropriate urban design. Twenty-one eighty-five Boyle Street and five eighty-one Grant Avenue are being respectful of the community that is currently there. Are we asking Arrow to be respectful of the community? We kind of don't expect it anymore. Arrow has polluted the land that they sit on. They have not cleaned up the spills. They have been dragged into court by their own employees for wage disputes. Arrow Laundry...
Thank you, your time's expired.
Arrow Laundry has left. They removed the, removed their...
Thank you, Ms. Velma. Next, we'll hear from Peter Slotska.
Hello, I'm at work, so I can make this short and sweet, but I too am vehemently opposed to this proposal. I was also impressed, I was on earlier and heard about the Coil Street development, where it did seem like the developers engaged the community. There's been no engagement whatsoever. There's been lobbyists and closed-door meetings with our elected representatives, who has been pointed out are supposed to represent the people in the community, and that seems to be absent. This project is ludicrously, as proposed, ludicrously out of scale for the neighborhood. I see developments all over the place, including the former Prospect Hall that, you know, they're at five stories. Look, everyone knows we need to build there. Everyone's fine. We've come at it as a community with a spirit of compromise. Of course, up the zoning, double the zoning, but scale still does count. Neighborhood character still does count, and we've been shut out of any real negotiations or discussions. And, you know, one development can't solve all of the city's housing issues. That's what City has is for, is to make every neighborhood kind of stretch a bit and really try to solve this together. But people are acting like this is a, a public works housing where we're going to solve everything in one fell swoop. But I would say one ill-conceived development can have an incredibly negative effect and impact that really does destroy the character of a neighborhood and, and has an impact, you know, above and beyond that ripples into many other neighborhoods. Look, we want to do this. We want more housing and inclusionary housing for sure, but let's do it responsibly in a way that respects the neighborhood and respects the wishes of the community, the people who actually live in the neighborhood. Thank you.
Thank you. This panel is excused. The next panel we're going to hear from consists of Alex Huer, Tony Malone, Alex Mazza, and Michelle De Laus. We'll begin first with Alex Huer. That's Alex H-E-U-E-R. Excuse me if I mispronounce your name. Alex, are you there?
Yeah, hi, can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Awesome. Everybody, thank you. My name is Alex Sawyer, and I strongly support the rezoning of the ArrowLinen development. So I don't live in the district. I live in the East Village, but as someone who's interested and excited about living in New York City for the rest of my life and raising a family here, Windsor Terrace is the type of neighborhood that I'd be quite excited about. But ultimately, we need more housing, and this rezoning project provides an awesome opportunity. As I've learned more about the project at past meetings, I've really appreciated the flexibility that the development team has shown in proposing a building that's shorter on, on the street and taller on the back. And I, I do think they're kind of accounting for, like, what's appropriate in the neighborhood. And I appreciate that this building will add additional affordable housing units to the neighborhood in a lot that is in, out of operation factory. Again, these are all net new units. And it's been encouraging to see the Borough President Reynoso and the City Planning Commission provide strong support of the proposal. And so I think that I've seen that the opposition stressed that we need more, fully affordable housing on this lot or, or much more affordable housing on this lot. But ultimately, that, that plan does not exist, and we don't have time to waste in addressing the urgent housing crisis in this city. So I strongly encourage the subcommittee to vote yes in supporting the rezoning proposal. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we're going to hear from Tony Malone. Tony, if you can hear me, please unmute, and you may begin.
Thank you. My name's Tony Malone. I live nine blocks from the ArrowLinen site in Council District Thirty-nine. I'm a musician. I'm a volunteer in a local democratic club, and I'm a member of Community Board Six, which is just a few blocks north of this project. My wife Leah found our rent-stabilized apartment twenty-six years ago, and that is the reason we've been able to stay and raise our family in this wonderful neighborhood. But other families are getting pushed out every day by the cost of housing. When our twins were born in twenty-twelve, we joined a local group for parents of twins, and now nearly all the other families in that group have moved out of the neighborhood because of the cost of housing. I was talking to a friend last weekend in the Little Pakistan section of Kensington, and he told me that many immigrants have moved their families to New Jersey or Connecticut while one parent stays behind and works in New York City. We need to build more housing here and everywhere in Brooklyn so families can stay together and grow and contribute to our community. The ArrowLinen site is a block from the subway, and there's plenty of capacity for more riders at my F and G station. Other cities have brought rents down by allowing more housing to be built. The research on this is clear. Borough President Reynoso's report on this project states, "Windsor Terrace is marked as having the lowest level of risk on the city's displacement risk index, making it a place that can accommodate new growth. New housing options will help alleviate rather than create additional market, market pressure in Windsor Terrace." And one other quote from the Borough President's report, "Catholic charities at no point has made an offer to purchase the site. It is difficult to imagine that such a proposal would only result in the loss of forty-four units without requiring the unit mix and average unit size to shift downwards." So you can read the whole report. It's great. But the upshot is that if we want to see more affordable housing units, and we're expecting someone to come in and come up with the funding for that, we might be waiting five years or ten years, or it may never happen. So I would much rather see sixty-three affordable units soon than hope for something better down the road.
Thank you, your time's expired. Thank you. Next, we're going to hear from Alex Mazza. Alex, if you can hear me, you may begin.
Can folks hear me?
Yes, we can.
Thank you. Good afternoon. My name is Alex Mazza, and I live across the park in Crown Heights. First, I want to thank the council and Councilmember Hanif for your efforts to make the city more affordable for all New Yorkers. I'm here, like so many other Brooklynites, because I'm deeply concerned about the housing, housing crisis in our city. Rent prices keep climbing, and too many families are being pushed out of their neighborhoods. To address this, we need more housing overall, and that's why I support the rezoning for the ArrowLinen site. This proposal takes an important step forward. It provides affordable... This proposal takes an important step forward. It provides affordable housing while respecting the character of the community with a thoughtful setback design. I understand concerns about the height, but we have to be realistic. We can either maintain the proposed height, or reduce the number of units, or shrink the size of the units to make it harder for families with children, or have fewer affordable units. But the only way to have all of these things is to maintain the proposed height. And to achieve affordable housing, we need more housing, period. And a key element of this proposal is its focus on flood mitigation. Having lived in Brooklyn in a broken apartment that experienced frequent flooding, at one point with over a foot and a half of water, I know firsthand how destructive and emotionally draining it can be. I lost many belongings, and it was deeply unsettling experience. By incorporating measures to address flood risk, this project ensures that future residents will have to endure similar hardships. This rezoning balances community needs and addresses pressing issues like affordability and climate resilience. We need developments like this to make our city more affordable for families. I'm worried about being priced out of the city I love, and I know many others feel the same way. So I urge you all to support this proposal and help us keep a more affordable and sustainable city. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we're gonna hear from Michelle De La Ouz. Michelle, if you can hear me, please unmute.
Hi, how are you? Thank you, Chair and Councilmember Hanif. I'm Michelle De La Ouz. I'm the Executive Director of the Fifth Avenue Committee. Fifth Avenue Committee is a forty-six-year-old nonprofit comprehensive community development corporation based a few blocks from this site that has been serving the local community boards for forty-six years. I'm here, I think, to provide a little bit more color in terms of the background related to affordable housing. And everyone has come together, I think, in saying that we need affordable housing. And, you know, whether it's the proponents or the opponents, everyone has said that. I'll just say that as the local nonprofit community development corporation that has recently completed two one-hundred-percent affordable projects and Community Board Seven in the last few years, the demand from local residents in Community Board Seven for affordable housing is incredible. More than five thousand people applied from Community Board Seven to our two one-hundred-percent affordable projects that we built in Sunset Park. You know, Windsor Terrace is absolutely in need of affordable housing. I know that the council member is working very, very hard to make the project more affordable and to increase the total number of affordable units and work on a number of the concerns that have been expressed by the community. And I'll just say that, you know, Fifth Avenue Committee has entered into community benefits agreements with a number of developers in the community to address concerns. And also to ensure that the projects live up, that the developers live up to the commitments that they make as part of the projects. Because I know that a number of folks have expressed concerns about, you know, those, any commitments being lived up to. And I can assure you that it is possible to do that.
Thank you, your time's expired.
Thank you.
Thank you. This panel is excused. The next panel I'm gonna call up consists of Diane Hawk-Jobson, Stefan Bouja, and Virginia Powers. Diane, if you could, you hear me? You may begin. Diane Hawk-Johnson? You may begin. Okay, we're gonna move on to Stefan Bouja. Stefan? Stefan? Yes, go ahead.
Good afternoon, councilmembers. Good to see everybody again. I was there earlier. Couldn't make it. Had things to do. By now, you've all heard the arguments for and against the proposed Arrow zoning, Arrow Lennon rezoning. And I can remind you of all of the aging infrastructure, how it's not equipped to handle the influx of new residents in the sewer or water system, or how the already overburdened schools in the area will be affected even more so. And of course, probably, not as mentioned, the parking situation in the neighborhood. Already tricky enough, would only get worse throughout the years and years, and let's face it, years of construction. So let the talk of the ground be for the others. That's why we're here, land in use. But there's one thing we're all overlooking, which is ironic because it's always looking over us, which is the sky. I moved to this neighborhood about fifteen years ago with my wife. What I love about this place is not just the great public transit and cute bakeries, but the sky above. I can walk out in the morning, and I can see sky. At night, when I take the trash out and put it into the NYC-approved bin after eight PM, of course, I can look up and I can see stars. I can see the moon, and it is thrilling. It's wonderful. You get a clear expanse, you get a clear expanse in the park. A fifteen-story building would ruin that illusion, and I think that's an illusion we all need from time to time. This is Windsor Terrace. This is not Manhattan. And one fifteen-story building leads to another, and to another, and to another, and soon, it's not, we don't have the lovely, beautiful Prospect Park. We have Central Park, which is surrounded and walled in, and is nothing more than a playground. And look, I want people to come here and live here. I want them to experience Prospect Bake West, which, as my daughter calls it, with its frankly unnecessary number of bakeries along its street. But I want these people to experience the view from below, because that will give them the sense of belonging and of community. The view from above--
Thank you, your time's expired.
Thank you.
Thank you. I'm gonna try Diane Hawk-Johnson again.
Yes, I'm here.
All right, you may begin. I know I mispronounced your name, so please excuse me.
I'm so sorry. My name is Diane Hawk-Johnson, and I'm speaking for myself and for Kevin Johnson. We are longtime Windsor Terrace residents and I, Ings County Democratic Committee, and a Forty-Fifth, Forty-Fourth Assembly District Delegate. We petitioned for her to get her name on the ballot as we believe she would represent her constituents. The Windsor Terrace South Slope community is unified in opposition to the proposed spot rezoning project as planned. I ask Ms. Hanif to represent her constituency, not developers, and not ignore longstanding objection to the project as presented. Here are the voices of the community most impacted by this project as proposed. And to quote the young man, "community-based development," which has sorely been lacking. What has also been given extremely short shrift has been the environmental concerns. For those not familiar, Park Slope and Windsor Terrace are on a slope which leaves Fourth Avenue and Fifth Avenue downwater of this proposed development. We are suffering from flooding now. I can only imagine what it would be like to be downwater of this. Traffic. Prospect Avenue is a parallel entryway onto the BQE.
Thank you, your time's expired. Thank you so much. Next, we're gonna hear from Virginia Powers. Virginia Powers? You may begin. Is Virginia Powers there? Ms. Powers, if you're on the phone, you may press star six. If not, please unmute. Virginia Powers, please unmute. Okay. We're going to excuse this panel and move to the next panel. The next panel consists of Kathy Park Price, Stan Leo, Thomas Naim Hujji, and Veronica Yerski. Excuse me if I mispronounce your name. We'll begin first with Kathy Park Price. Kathy Park Price, can you hear me? If you can hear me, please unmute. All right, we're gonna just take a second. We're trying to figure things out online. Give me one second. And thank you, everyone, for being patient and here and waiting to hear everyone's testimony. Okay, we're gonna try this again. I'm going to call on Kathy Park Price. Kathy, if you can hear me, please unmute. You may begin.
Hello?
Yes, go ahead, Kathy.
Okay, sorry about that. I was in another meeting. Hi, everyone. Good afternoon. Thank you, Chair Riley and Councilmember Hanif. My name is Kathy Park Price. I'm a resident of Park Slope, where I've lived for fourteen years. My two kids go to school in Windsor Terrace at MS four-four-two, which is three blocks away from the Arrow Lennon site. So I'm very familiar with and invested in the area as a neighbor and a parent. I'm here to testify in support of the two-hundred-and-forty-four new homes that will, would be built at four forty-one and four sixty-seven Prospect Avenue as part of the Arrow Lennon proposal. We have an incredible need for housing, and there has been very little new housing development in Windsor Terrace in recent years. This location has excellent public transit access, and enrollment has been down at nearby schools. So there is capacity for more students and the density that the proposal supports. Every neighborhood must do its part to address the housing crisis, and I urge you all to approve this project. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Next, we're gonna hear from Stan Leo. Stan, if you can hear me, please unmute.
Good afternoon. Thank you, Chair Riley, and thank you, Councilmember Hanif. I'm a young New Yorker and a renter, speaking behalf of only myself. And I'd like to testify in support of the Arrow Lennon rezoning. We're still short over passively units in New York City. And we all know that this shortage has made the city less affordable and rents higher. There's mountains of evidence that even market rate apartments, like the ones proposed here, as well as the affordable ones, reduce rents in surrounding neighborhoods. Severn medically here say that they support building more units, and that they support the city, yes. But you can't build a fairer, more affordable city if we keep saying no to everything. I've heard people say that there's not enough affordable units post rezoning. But how many affordable units will there be if we continue to leave this as an empty, post-it box? Majority of New Yorkers, including many working-class people who can't make it to a hearing in the middle of the workday, support more housing, including projects like this. Big thing, New York's housing crisis starts here, and I hope the council will keep that in mind. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Next, we're gonna hear from Thomas Naim. Thomas, if you can hear me, please mute, and you may begin.
Council, my name is Thomas Naim Hujji, and I'm speaking in favor of the proposal. I'm a resident of Brooklyn Community District Two and a lifelong New Yorker. I am deeply concerned about the housing crisis facing New York City. I grew up on the outer edge of the subway system and have faced hour-long commutes as far back as middle school. My family lived far away from our places of work and school, not by choice, but because the cost of housing in more centralized neighborhoods priced us out of them. We were condemned to long commutes, not by special interest boogeymen, but by decades of collective obstructionism by our fellow New Yorkers who already had the fortune of living in the core of the city with rich public transportation access. It is easy for people who already have access to the homes they want to reject more housing choices for future families, especially if they perceive their arrival as a threat to their way of life. And the politicians who want to keep our loudest constituents happy too have an incentive to suppress change. But this is not a tenable strategy to keep the cost of living affordable for all and to preserve the working class of New York City. The failure to keep building homes at the pace of new residents arriving means that we are all left to fight for the few homes that were built before the self-interested ideology that afflicts some of our neighbors took hold of city policy. We all want a higher quality of life, and we want to be able to live here without landlords and lenders confiscating the wages that most of us work so hard to earn. Building the additional diversity of homes afforded by this rezoning means not only can existing residents afford to stay put in the neighborhood, but more families get to call Brooklyn home. And it sends a message that every corner of the city, no matter how wealthy, has to be a part of the solution to the housing shortage. I encourage the committee and New York City Council to approve this application. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we're gonna hear from Veronica Yerski. Veronica, if you can hear me, please unmute.
Hi, good afternoon, everyone. Thank you for the opportunity to speak to you today and for listening to all of us so patiently. As a renter and a resident of Park Slope, I enthusiastically support the Arrow Lennon rezoning as proposed. And I'm thrilled that Councilmember Hanif has expressed support for it. I hope the committee does as well and approves it ASAP. It is a news to anyone who actually lives in our neighborhood or anywhere in New York City that the matter that we're in the middle of a housing shortage. I personally know of many people who have been priced out of the neighborhoods they've called home for many years, if not out of the city entirely. Park Slope and Windsor Terrace specifically have long ceased to be neighborhoods that working people and families can call home without winning a stabilized housing lottery or the literal Powerball lottery. We badly need more housing supply, market rate, or subsidized that would allow renters to gain even a minuscule reprieve against rising rents. As long as we don't have enough housing, landlords can raise the rents by however much they want. And our only choice, if we can't pay, is to leave. Leave the neighborhood, leave the city, or even leave the state. If this neighborhood claims to be for working people and families, we should be encouraging the building of as much housing as possible instead of complaining about how a thirteen-story building is a high-rise in a city of the Empire State Building and the Freedom Tower. Turning Arrow Lennon site into housing should be a no-brainer, and I hope it is the first project of many. Thank you for listening.
Thank you so much. This panel is excused. Before I call the next panel, we have people signed up online that did not sign up to testify. Please, you have to register to testify if you want to testify on this project, all right? The next panel I'm gonna call up consists of Max Davison and Matthew Denny's. Max Davison, you may begin. Max--
Hi, thank you very much.
Go ahead.
Thank you all for giving us the opportunity to testify today. I want to express my strong and unambiguous support of the Arrow Lennon rezoning project. We've heard a lot of data today about how New York is in a tremendous housing crisis right now that has been driven by both a lack of market rate and affordable housing. Projects like the Arrow Lennon rezoning are critical building block towards relieving our housing crisis. Additionally, given the magnitude of this housing crisis, scaling back the proposed redevelopment from thirteen stories is a half measure which will only harm working families. And to be clear, I really do support like, any sort of effort to increase the number and depth of affordable units on the rezoned site. But reducing the height of the proposed development will meaningfully reduce the overall number of affordable units at the site. I don't want to belabor this point, but, you know, a seven-story building where forty percent of units are rent-stabilized will generate significantly fewer affordable units than a thirteen-story building where forty percent of units are rent-stabilized. And then lastly, I would just like to make a broad point about neighborhood character is, Windsor Terrace represents one of Brooklyn's whitest and wealthiest neighborhoods with a median household income of a hundred and eighty thousand dollars a year. When we think about improving economic and racial integration in New York City, projects like this represent a significant opportunity to help meet the goals of New York City's fair housing framework. Councilmember Hanif, I hope we can count on your support for this project, and I want to thank the committee for their time.
Thank you, Max. Next, we have Matthew Denny's. If you are on the Zoom link, please use your raise hand function if you would like to testify and did not sign up, so we could call you on the next panel. If you would like to testify, I did not call you because this is the last panel that we have registered. Please use the raise hand function. Thank you. Next, we will hear from Matthew Denny's.
Hi, I'm Matt Denny's, and I'm lucky enough to be a homeowner in Flatbush, just down the hill from the set. And I'm here to express my strong support for this proposal. This is a great way to add much-needed affordable and market-rate homes to-- This is a great way to add much-needed affordable and market-rate homes to the neighborhood, and in the context of our housing shortage and affordability crisis, we need projects like this all over the city, but especially in neighborhoods like Windsor Terrace and South Slope where it's already particularly expensive. Adding new homes here will be a nice change from the current use of the site, and it will strengthen the character of the neighborhood by providing new neighbors with a place to live and adding customers for the many delightful small businesses in the area, which are worth biking up a big hill to visit, as I can tell you from personal experience. So I'd like to ask the council to please approve this project. Thank you.
Thank you so much. There being no questions for this panel, this panel is excused. Once again, if there are any members of the public who wish to testify remotely regarding this rezoning proposal, please press the raise hand button now. If you're in person, please see one of the Sergeant-at-Arms to testify. The next panel I'll call up consists of Conrad Gantz and Donna Schneiderman. We'll begin first with Conrad Gantz. Conrad, if you can hear me, please unmute. Conrad, if you can hear me, please unmute. If you are on the phone, please press star six to unmute. Okay, next, we're gonna move on to Donna Schneiderman. Donna, if you can hear me, please unmute.
Hi there, can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Hi, thanks so much for including me, I wasn't sure I was gonna be adding anything. There's been great testimony, I've been listening throughout the day while multitasking and doing some work, and I appreciate all the time that the committee and Councilmember Hanif has given to listening to all this testimony. The only thing that I want to add that hasn't been said already, or reiterate some of the things that we've heard, is that it has to do with transparency, that's been my greatest concern. I agree with everything everybody's been saying about the need for affordable housing. What I've been hearing, as I've been listening, is we have not heard specifically what type of affordable housing would be available, and that seems to be the biggest concern. I feel that once this, if this project gets voted forward and it becomes upzoned, I share some of the concerns other people have raised about predatory developers coming and looking to buy out some of the smaller properties and pushing out people who have been living in the neighborhood for a long time or who have access to affordable housing already in the neighborhood. So basically, I'm mostly concerned about not having those details about what would be affordable. I think we need affordable housing, not more luxury housing, and I think it, I also echo the concerns about Prospect Avenue, it is not a wide avenue. We have traffic issues happening there already, I can only imagine what that would be like with a building the scale of what we're talking about. So that's what I'd like to add, and thanks again for hearing all the very insightful testimony that's been offered today. I also just want to say, it is a shame that Arrow has not been engaging more directly with the community. I was also impressed by the other projects covered earlier today.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you. Last, we'll hear from Conrad Gantz. Conrad, can you hear me? Please unmute. Conrad, if you can hear me, please unmute. Okay, Conrad, you could also submit your testimony to us online. All right, so I'm going to stand at ease for 30 seconds. If you are online and you want to testify and we did not call your name, please use the raise hand function. If you are in the chambers and want to testify, just contact one of the Sergeant-at-Arms. Okay, I'm getting a notion that we're all clear online. Anybody here, last words? All right, thank you. There being no other members of the public who wish to testify on LU's 212 and 213 for the 441 and 467 Prospect Avenue rezoning, the public hearing is now closed and the items are laid over. That concludes today's business. I would like to thank the members of the public for your patience and your testimony. You all did a tremendous job today with respecting each other. I would like to thank my colleagues, especially Councilmember Hanif, who stayed to the very end to hear every testimony regarding this project. Extremely commendable, thank you so much, Councilmember Hanif. I would like to thank the Subcommittee Council, Land Use, and other council staff, and the Sergeant-at-Arms for participating in today's meeting. This meeting is hereby adjourned. Thank you. I think I broke this.